What is Carbon Health? Carbon Health is the home of good health. We are here as an urgent care primarily. We have three providers that work in this clinic. We try to make sure that our teams are pretty fluid so that way everybody can do everything. School physicals, work physicals, pre-employment physicals, workers' comp if the employer needs a drug screen ahead of time, we do that as well. Vision, hearing, weightlifting, whatever physical needs.
And then Carbon Health gives us a lot of the good resources in order for us to do a good job. I feel like having a lot of good tools here.
Their goal is to try to make Corona a happier, healthier community. And so we work really hard to try to make sure that we are as connected in the community as we can be. That Carbon Health is working very hard to try to make healthcare accessible to everyone. With the app, you can do everything with your healthcare here at Carbon Health. I think that by itself sets us apart from everybody. So we're hoping that we can draw our patients from Corona in instead of them going outside of Corona for their care. The idea behind the name is that we are all carbon life forms. Every carbon life form needs help. Carbon Health.
The Green Alley is composed of 34 alleys that were picked to be repaved. This grant was targeted by Caltrans to improve the quality of life of disadvantaged communities. It brings a lot of improvements to the city, including the ability to absorb water and recharge our local water table. It's considered a green technology. When it's really raining hard, this porous pavement will suck the water in. Whatever water was here has infiltrated into the water reservoir that's underneath the six inches of asphalt. This is like a long-term good technology so that we're more resilient to handle drought seasons because we'll be capturing water that will stay here locally and will serve the city well. And the Green Alley probably provide the most volume or area to capture rainwater. So the alleys have multi-purpose. You know, everybody would use them. The cars, the bikes, whoever wants to use an alley as a less congestion pathway to navigate the city. You're improving the community for sometimes communities that don't get a whole lot of improvement. The community has been very happy that we improved their neighborhoods. Beautiful alley.
Our white wine flavor this month is... Do you want to try simple?
And it comes with a girl. It's pretty pretty good.
So good grandma just asked me yesterday.
Cooking. I love to cook. You guys need a menu? My name is Sergio and we are in Tortas Sinaloa, City of Corona. Tortas is 44 and it has four meats. Tortas are the number one sales in this place. We do like 4,000 tortas a month. This is Sinaloa special and this is the cubana. So we have such a big menu, but we have barbacoa, we have carne asada plate, we have burritos, we'll call the breakfast, pepperoni rancheros, omelets, carne asada is one of the favorites, yeah. Three-pat tacos. Every single product and item from this place is homemade cooking, yes. My wife in Tortas Sinaloa, she's been in the company for 20 years. She makes every single day, she makes all these fresh waters. And we also have fresh juices, you can order wherever you like. I'm the one that's do every single recipe in this place. It's a homemade plan, yeah. We do it like maybe four times a week. Mexican dessert. I've been cooking for 45 years now and it's 2025. But when I came and opened this Tortas Sinaloa, I learned about the community and they're very kind people, very nice. Yeah, I love the people from Corona. So I put so much effort and heart into it. We are in 1520 West Sixth Street and we in the Gomez Chaffin Center.
Hello Corona!
City of Corona, you guys ready? Here we go, we're gonna get you on that dance floor.
Are you having a good time so far?
All right, what a beautiful summer night. Thanks for joining the City of Corona and getting together for all these concerts.
Thank you Corona!
You wanna get arms like me? Need to come in here and get in the weight room. I'm Marcus Williams and this is MW Athletics. As an NFL superstar, coming back to my community is really what I wanted to start MW Athletics for. You wanna do kettlebell swings? We'll get you right in here. I'll just do one of these with this. That's all you need. Footwork, speed, strength, fastest, most explosive athlete. Come in here, ready to work, and you'll get to where you wanna get to. And if you don't grind, you don't shine. And if you don't shine, you don't eat. The mission and vision behind MW Athletics to create the fastest, most explosive athlete in any given sport that they choose to be in, whether it's high school, college, or professionals. We are able to help them get the little details right so that they are able to go out there and perform at the highest abilities that...
Welcome, everybody. Could you please grab a seat? We're gonna go ahead and get started. Well, welcome everyone to our city council meeting. Corona resident Don Fuller is asked to give the invocation tonight. Mr. Fuller, come on up.
Howdy. No, everybody sit down. Not gonna be a prayer. It's okay. It's just gonna be a simple invocation, not gonna be a prayer. Wow, what a big group tonight. A big crowd. A lot of you are probably here because of Bobby Spiegel and his recognition. My name is Don Fuller. I'm kind of a regular city council meetings. I just offered to give the invocation. It's just gonna be a simple little welcome to the meeting. I wanna welcome all of you to an evening of participatory democracy. I'm glad you're here and I hope that you take the chance to participate. I wanna introduce you to some of the main players here. These are your city council members. On the left is Ms. Jackie Casillas. She represents District Number One, which is basically kind of the northeast portion of town. Next is Tony Dodario. He represents District Number Two, which is basically kind of the northwest portion of town. Next is Mr. Jim Steiner, who represents District Number Four, which is basically the southwest portion of town. And he's been the mayor for the past year. This city does not have an elected mayor. The mayorship passes around among the five council members, so the mayor position has no more power than anybody else, but he runs the meetings and so forth. And I think this is your last evening as the mayor. And next to him is Mr. Wes Speek, who represents District Number Five, which is generally the southeast portion of town. And that's where I live, so I'm one of his constituents, which means absolutely nothing whatsoever. And then the last one over there is Mr. Tom Richens, who represents District Three, which is generally speaking the center of town. It includes the Grand Boulevard Circle and the outlying areas around that. So those are your five council members. The two people up on the dais, the one on the left is Mr. Jacob Ellis. He's the city manager. You can think of him as kinda like the ranch foreman. He's the guy that kinda runs the ranch on a daily basis. And next to him is Mr. Dean Durleth, who is the city attorney. He keeps all of us out of jail. And two more people you need to know about. Right over here, we have Mr. Brian Young, who is the fire chief. So if your house is on fire, he takes care of it. And over here in the end, we have Mr. Robert Newman, who is the police chief. So if the reason your house is on fire is because it was arson, he takes care of it. And you'll notice that Mr. Newman, Chief Newman, always sits near the door, so he protects us that way. And there's always at least one other police officer in the room. And that gentleman is over there by that door. They will always be up and down on that side, not on this side. They're over there doing their protective duties. So I just wanna welcome you to the meeting and just give you a few little insights on that. There's one other little thing. If you wanna participate, you have to fill out what's known as the blue card. You get the blue cards at the desk in the back. You fill them out, they're very easy to do. And then you hand it to the lovely people over here at the clerk's desk. Sylvia Edwards is the city clerk. She's an absolute treasure. And so hand it to her and be nice to her also. And if you don't know how to fill out the card, I'm in the back of the room. Joe Morgan is in the back of the room. He's one of the best citizens in town. Usually Maddie Paxton is back there with me. I don't quite see her tonight. So anyway, we'll help you fill out a blue card if you need to know how. So that's the end of my invocation. Welcome to the meeting. I hope all of you stick around. I hope all of you participate in the meeting as it goes on. So that's it. That's the invocation. And now, Mr. Steiner has said, I'm supposed to lead you in the pledge of allegiance, so now you can all stand. And so you're supposed to place your hand over your heart. And we say, ready, begin, like they do in the Cub Scouts. So ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. See something new every, every meeting here. Okay. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Edwards, will you please read the special instructions?
Yes, Mayor. Individuals wishing to address the city council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the city council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications. And once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Mayor, there was a revision to Agenda Item 6.5. Exhibit Six was revised. And then also, for those needing Spanish interpretation for Agenda Item 10.1, listening devices are available and copies of the presentation are also available. Please come see city clerk staff for the listening devices or a copy of their presentation. Also, if you would like to provide public comment during this item, staff is available to assist with interpretations. Para los que necesitan traducción en español para el tema 10.1, hay aparatos disponibles. También están disponibles copias de la presentación en español. Por favor, acérquense con las personas del secretaria municipal si necesitan un aparato o una copia de la presentación. Si desea hacer comentario público durante el tema, estamos disponibles para ayudarle con la traducción.
Muy bien. Okay, we have one recognition this evening. I'd like to call Bobby Spiegel. Come on up. So Bobby is the CEO of the Corona Chamber of Commerce, and he's finally decided to retire. Congratulations. Don't run for city council when you're done. All right. So this recognition says, whereas since 2001, Bobby Spiegel has served as president and CEO of the Corona Chamber of Commerce, leading his team in advocacy, economic development, member services, communication, and community programs. The chamber represents more than 720 members and over 45,000 jobs across Western Riverside County. After 24 years of service, Bobby will retire on November 25th, 2025. And whereas a graduate, a graduate of the WACE Academy, and the WACE stands for Western Association of Chamber Executives, yes, I have cheat notes, Academy and an accredited Chamber Executive, Bobby has held leadership roles with both WACE and SCASE, which is the Southern California Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives. In 2025, he was recognized as WACE Executive of the Year. Under his leadership, the chamber had, has repeatedly earned the WACE President's Award and was ranked California's top three chambers by the California Chamber of Commerce in 2025. Very impressive, Bobby. Whereas born in Kodiak, Alaska, in 1955, Bobby moved to Corona in 1958. He began working at 14 and owned his first business, The Flower Shop. By 18, later managing companies in retail, construction, and service industries before joining his family firm, Corona Industrial Electric, Inc. Whereas Bobby's leadership journey began with the J.C.'s, where he had numerous positions and ultimately served as the 59th President of the California J.C.'s. He was named Corona Citizen of the Year in 1990 and has since earned additional honors, including recognition from the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, 2009, the Congregation Beth Shalom Legacy Award, 2011, Father of the Year from the American Diabetes Association in 2012, the Unforgettable Foundation Award, 2023, and, and the WACE Steve Rose Memorial Scholarship Award, 2024, and proclamations from state leaders in 2025. And this is the last one, you guys. Whereas he remains active with Congressional Beth Shalom Rotary, the USO, the Riverside County Workforce Development Board, and March Air Force Reserve Base. Bobby and his wife Karen have been married for 40 years and are proud parents of five children, a daughter-in-law, and three grandchildren. And this, actually, I could've gone on for probably five or six more pages, but we already know this is gonna be a long night, so I had to cut back a little, Bobby. All right. Now therefore be it resolved on behalf of the city council, we hereby gratefully, gratefully acknowledge Bobby Spiegel for his dedication he has shown and the manner in which he has carried out his duties as the CEO of the Corona Chamber of Commerce, as well as for his commitment and service to the businesses and community. Best wishes for a long, happy retirement, Bobby. And I just wanna thank you so much for being a friend for so many years and always having my back. So thank you.
Say a few words? I do, but now?
Sure.
I just gotta get my cheat notes, okay?
It's gonna be a long night, all right?
That was not my design. I didn't put that on the agenda.
No, but I still got the hook.
Okay. So Mayor, council members, and the incredible business community, thank you. Thank you so much. And to my beautiful wife and our family, thank you for standing by me. You are my rock and you allow me to do all the things that he mentioned in that proclamation. Receiving this proclamation is an honor and I will cherish it the rest of my life. For 24 and a half years, I've had the privilege of serving this city I love, working alongside remarkable leaders, dedicated volunteers, and businesses that truly define the spirit of Corona. Every achievement of the chamber has been a result of partnerships, collaboration with the city, our schools, the nonprofits, military partners, and especially the hardworking men and women who invest in this community every day. And Mayor, I can guarantee you're gonna hear from some of them tonight under 9.1. I am deeply grateful for the trust that you've placed in me, for the friendships built, and the unwavering support you've shown me throughout the career, my career. As I pass the baton, I do so with tremendous pride in what we've accomplished together and immense confidence that Corona's future. My official retirement date is Tuesday, November 25th. In the audience is Dr. Tim Gramlin, currently the dean of Jab School of Business with, at CBU, who will assume the role as president and CEO beginning this coming Monday, November 24th. Tim, would you please stand? Let the audience see who's gonna be the face of the chamber. Thank you, sir. I am totally confident that with, with Tim's leadership alongside our professional staff, our exceptional board members, and if any staffer here, any of our board members, if you would stand, let the people know who, who is representing the business community. And to our many dedicated volunteers, the Corona Chamber will advance and accomplish even more in the years ahead. I wanna say thank you again for this honor and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve this extraordinary community. God bless you guys. Thank you.
Take a picture, Bobby?
Yes, please.
Ms. Edwards, are there speaker cards from the public for the recognition of Mr. Spiegel?
Mayor, yes, we have two speaker cards for this item.
Okay, come on up, guys.
My name is Don Fuller. You met me a few minutes ago. I'm gonna tell you something about Bobby Spiegel. I would guess that Mr. Spiegel and I disagree on a lot of things. We probably have, he's nodding his head, yes. There are several things upon, I'm sure we would adamantly disagree. But there is one particular area that has occurred to me over the years that he and I are in lockstep. Absolutely in lockstep. And that is that each one of us, I am convinced about this about myself, I'm convinced about this about him, each one of us is absolutely without question ferociously in love with and devoted with and protective of our wives, the princesses who make up our lives. Now, I'm gonna tell you a little bit what that means to me, to give you a background for him. My wife and I have been married for 58 years. I met her when she was 18. We got married shortly after she turned 20. She has lived recently in the late stages of Alzheimer's. She lives in the best long-term memory care facility of which I know. She's been there for three years, nine months, and 11 days, not that I'm counting. She's in a wheelchair. She needs to be fed with a spoon. I visit her three days a week. I get there in the mornings and at lunch, I feed her with a spoon. And I love her ferociously. And so I know what that's like and I know how I can spot that with Mr. Spiegel. And he and I might disagree on a whole bunch of things, but I'm certain that we agree on that, that the love and the devotion and the protection of the magnificent princesses who we have been so fortunate to live with. I know I married so high up, Home Depot don't make a ladder high enough to measure how up I married, and I bet you feel the same way. And I think you should know that about Mr. Spiegel. So I'm gonna tell you a story he might think is a little embarrassing, but to hell with it. One night in a city council meeting, I was back there in the back someplace and he was back there as well, and I forget exactly the details. His charming wife was a member of the city council. And somebody, I forget who it was, you probably remember, you know where I'm going with this. Somebody came up and insulted his princess. From the back of the room, he yelled out and offered to go outside with him and punch his face out. Now, as it turned out, there was another fellow back there who I don't know. But the other fellow and I both went outside with Mr. Spiegel and kinda got him calmed down a little bit. And he agreed probably wouldn't be the best thing to do. But some people might think that's kind of barbaric. I find it highly commendable, cuz that's exactly the same way I would feel. If somebody talked like that about my princess, I would wrap a chair around his face.
Don? Thank you, Don. Yep, these are our council meetings. Joe, can you grab the mic? Thanks, Don.
Much to say? I just, I just wanna say, I, I consider Bobby, we're probably unlikely friends. Well, he, from the moment I met him, he's been a decent guy to deal with and, and, and the dude's got a big heart. And, and, and I've never thought for one second that he was, you know, was being disingenuous about something. We could agree or disagree on anything, but he's, he's a good dude. And, and, you know, when he says something, I think he means it. I've never, he's never, he's never said anything to me that, that I thought he was saying fake or was lying or, you know, was, you know, saying something that was convenient. He just, he is who he is and he believes what he believes. And I'm gonna miss him, you know, cuz like I said, I do consider him my friend. And so it's, I'm gonna miss seeing him around. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. No other speakers on recognition. We will move on. So our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, and/or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further considerations. Would my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion?
6.8.
Tony, 6.8. Okay. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public on pulling any items?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the consent calendar.
Okay. Can I get a motion for all items except for 6.8?
I'll move.
6.8, that passes 5-0. I'm sorry, sorry. Everything but 6.8. Now we're gonna talk about 6.8. Tony?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight something about this agreement. For, for those of you that get a water bill in the city, I think it's the water bill. If you pay $5 on the, on the water bill, it goes towards if you need emergency transportation, ambulance, or something along those lines. And that's kind of like what this is with our wild, like, wildland protection agreement. This is a payment that we make to the state in order to get the air, the necessary air support that we need when these, these massive wild, wildland fires occur. And the chief and I had a long discussion about this and, and to me, this is a really good thing. I just wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, the state's being a good partner with us and that our chief actually, and his staff went around and, and we're getting these agreements for several parts of the cities so that if we need fixed wing, rotor, rotor, or the big tanker drops, it is immediately approved and we get that, we get that asset and that, that help right away. So thanks, chief, for explaining this to me and making sure that I understood it correctly, but also, you know, getting all of these agreements in place so that the state can help us. Appreciate it. And with that, I'll move.
Okay. I'll second. Please vote. No one pulled it? Please vote. Okay, that passes 5-0. Communications from the public. Persons wishing to address the city council are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment only, which means it is limited to items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council that are not listed on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will appreciate your cooperation in keeping your comments brief. Please observe a three-minute time limit for communications. Ms. Edwards, how many speaker cards do we have from the public?
Mayor, we have 18 speaker cards for communication from the public.
Okay. So you can stay in your seat until the podium's empty, or you can line up behind it, whatever you feel comfortable with. And whoever wants to go first, come on down. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, city staff, and fellow Coronaans. My name is Yusuf Gani. I live in Corona for the last 26 years, and I also run a nonprofit organization called For the People Task Force. I'm so glad we have a full house, so what I'm about to announce will go and will address to everyone who's in need. For the People Task Force actually held the first food drive in November, on November 1st, but did the last one on last Sunday, and we're doing another food drive on 22nd of November, where we are planning to give out between 300 and 400 turkeys, along with all the other items for the holiday meals, and some other stuff. So if you know someone who needs help, who's in, for whatever's going on, please see us at Corona High School. It's going to start at nine o'clock, and we're going to be there until we run out of everything. So for that, please spread the word. Second thing, unfortunately, one of our vendors who promised us 100 turkeys, we kind of, he backed out. So we're still buying all the turkeys, but it's just putting a bigger hole in my pocket. So if anybody wants to participate in it, you can actually go on our website, on our Facebook page, and donate. Let's help those who are in need, and that's how we can celebrate holidays together, fortunate, unfortunate, and we can make Corona better. One more thing I want to talk about is this, that I have, I don't come to these meetings very often. But I want to thank each and every one of you who sit on that podium. I know it's not an easy job, and you guys here, it's a thankless job, so you guys only hear that you did this, you did this, and you did this. But I want to thank each and every one of you for everything which you guys are doing, and Corona is a better city today, just because of all the work you have done. So thank you very much again for every one of you on the podium, and all the city staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you Saturday.[717.62][717.62](applause) Hi, Tammy.
Hi. Sorry, I don't have paper today. I have my phone. I'm not used to reading from my phone. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tammy Friedrich. I'm a resident of Eastville, formerly Corona, and I am here today in response to the disturbing actions that took place in our community on Sunday. That day, many families were gathered at the Old Civic Center for positive and peaceful events. Sorry. A play, a basketball game, a remembrance ceremony, and more. It was a place of community and connection, yet at the same time, ICE and Border Patrol used the city hall parking lot as a staging area to target and detain our residents. Just steps away on Vicentia, a person walking down the street was tackled to the ground just for walking down the street. Families witnessed violent enforcement actions and no war, with no warning and no respect for our community. What makes this worse is that city property was used to enable this aggression. Agents showed disrespect not only toward our residents, but toward our public space. One was even seen urinating in the bushes in the parking lot, of which I have evidence. This is unacceptable conduct on public land funded by the people of this city. We must take concrete action to protect our residents. I urge the council to, one, adopt a due process ordinance similar to those passed in cities like San Diego and Vista, to ensure local resources are not used to facilitate, facilitate immigration enforcement operations. And, two, explore establishing a mutual aid fund to support residents who face unexpected detention, legal fees, or family emergencies revolting, resulting from these actions. Our public spaces should not be staging grounds for fear. Our community deserves dignity, dignity, safety, and due process. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Zoe, and I've been a resident of Corona for 13 years, and I want everyone in the room, including the council members, to think, how much do you value our lives, and our protection, and our safety? I say this as previously mentioned, Sunday, there was a massive ICE raid, these dashing ghosts, and this is my third time talking about this. I don't know how many times we have to come out here, plead for protection. It's getting worse. I was running errands, and I see this silver van run a red light. These people, these federal agents do not value our safety. We don't feel safe running errands, we don't save, we don't feel safe walking down the streets. How much do you guys actually value our lives? We just want you to think, to take action. This is long overdue, and it will keep getting worse, and we won't stop showing up until there's actual change. Thank you.
Thank you.[934.85][934.85](applause)
Good evening, council members. Maddie Paxton, 33-year resident of Corona. The first thing I was going to talk about was the For the People Task Force food drive. Yusuf already did that. I just want to thank them, because they always go out of their way to help the citizens of Corona. Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards, for that. I'm going to move on to something, just real quickly, is I want to bring up the topic of e-bikes and motorized things. Two times this week, we have, it got dark very early, and I had two people, I don't know, kids or whatever, dark clothes, no lights, running in and out of the streets by Centennial, on the sidewalks. Somebody's going to get killed. One, one was like a motorized scooter. It wasn't a, it wasn't an e-bike. But we're going to have problems if they don't, if parents can't understand that their kids should not be doing this. They need to respect cars and other vehicles. Okay, moving on, for community activities. The first thing I want to talk about is the police department's Kids and Cops, which is Sunday, the 13th. If you went in the main lobby, they're taking the donations and registering for people that have needs. It's 12 years and younger, it's at City Hall, and they need to have proof of residency. So, see the dates. And they're also accepting unwrapped toys to the police department off CODA. The second thing is about the fire department. Our fire department is having their next blood drive on Wednesday, December 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Corona Fire Headquarters. And to sign up, it's www.lstream.org/cfd, Corona Fire Department. And then lastly, the Corona Fire Department is doing the Spark of Love Toy Drive, to bring, they're accepting donations of unwrapped toys through December 24th, to drop off at all of the seven state fire stations and fire headquarters, and all toys will be given to the Corona Norco Settlement House, and distributed to local families in need. Thank you.
Thanks, Maddie.[1068.94][1068.94](applause) Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Kelly Montalvo, and I'm a Corona resident. I'm here tonight to thank the city of Corona for cosponsoring a beautiful day that we had on Sunday called World Day of Remembrance, a day in which we honored road traffic victims and first responders. We're very grateful for the day. We had a wonderful turnout, and I thank you all for that. I would be remiss if I didn't also add that I did witness the ICE operations that evening, and on a day in which we were honoring our first responders and victims of road traffic violence, it was disturbing and sad. Coming from a blended family myself, I hate to see my sons or my husband be victims of that type of racism. I'm not sure what the answer to it is, but I had to express that. Again, I thank you for World Day of Remembrance, and I hope to continue to grow that event. Thank you.
Thanks, Governor.[1133.38][1133.38](applause)
Hello, my name is Jazzy. I have been a resident for Corona for almost five years now. I have a deep love for this community, and after Sunday, witnessing what ICE was doing to our community, it's completely unacceptable. They are attacking people randomly in the streets. We're now, I've seen that there's maybe almost eight people that were kidnapped on Sunday from our city. Plus, the raid a couple months ago, that's now almost 15 people that have been, their family members, their workers of our community that are being taken. The federal officers right outside these doors were literally pissing on us, on our city. What is this city going to do? They should pass legislation, just like Chicago and other cities, that have stood up to the federal officers and not allowed them to use our land to attack our people. It's completely unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.[1211.49][1211.49](applause)
Good evening. Good evening, Corona. I, my name is Bill Berger. I have been a resident of Corona for a little over 30 years. I have seen most of you, if not all of you, at different Corona events. I am Santa Claus. I am a bunch of other things in this city. I know, it's just shush, but I'm not here for any of that. I'm here to remind us what our vision is. The city of Corona will be a safe, vibrant, family-friendly community. You belong here. I am good friends with a retired immigration officer, all right, Customs and Enforcement. We call them ICE, and most of the new ICE agents are woefully trained, poorly motivated, highly aggressive, armored, masked, unlabeled, and taking our citizens. They do not belong here, in contrary to our vision. They are definitely on the naughty list. I have been married for 33 years. My lovely wife of Irish descent was overseas with her parents being born in Tehran, Iran. A well-trained ICE agent would not rob me of my wife, but I have absolutely zero confidence in these new ICE agents. And if you could imagine wrapping a chair around somebody who's forethreatening their wife, Santa is not happy with the fear they currently live in, with a person whose passport says, "Place of origin, Tehran, Iran." I want to make a distinction yet again. A well-trained ICE officer poses no threat to me and my family. But until we can make a distinction between those well-trained ICE officers and the ones who, at sight of somebody who looks like they could be from Latin America, tackles them on the sidewalk while walking next to our, our fast food place, I don't feel that Corona is safe, vibrant, family-friendly, or that I belong. Unless I can hear at some point in the real near future, my city back me up on these things, I don't want them to be welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1397.38][1397.38](applause) Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Linda Olhava. 23 years ago, my husband, my husband and I purchased a home in Corona. We live in the 5th district. This is my first city council meeting, and therefore, my first time addressing this body. My statement, the statement of the city of Corona is to cherish our past and to protect our future. Corona citrus farming and packing was built largely on Mexican labor. As borders go, we should remember that California was a part of Mexico, and as a result of that, our state is rich in Mexican culture. In the U.S. and around the world, people who want power and to control the masses prey on fears and angers. These people creatively use these emotions to manipulate and motivate people to turn on fellow citizens. Politicians and special interest groups such as large businesses and wealthy, ultra-wealthy, use citizens' angers and fears to direct anger at the newest immigrant population or people who don't look like us. This has been going on since the dawn of our nation. Historically, this country, in this country, we've had problems with regulating this. Wealthy landowners enslaved black people. Our government rounded up natives, intentionally giving them blankets infested with smallpox, and those that survived were put on reservations. We implemented programs against the Irish immigrants' employment by creating NINA, Negroes and Irish Need and Apply, in the 1800s. Italians in the early 1900s were lynched in Colorado and Louisiana because they looked black. Germans during World War I changed their surnames so they wouldn't be persecuted by their neighbors. And during World War II, Japanese Americans on the West Coast had their businesses and businesses and homes confiscated, and they were put into camps. In post 9/11 America, olive-skinned people from the Middle East were all assumed to be terrorists. Sikhs of Indian ancestry were targeted and killed in Arizona and elsewhere. Our history in this country is not without its faults. Failed ICE operations in Portland, Los Angeles, Chicago prove that these sweeps are ineffective. They are being ruled illegal, and in my opinion, they are morally corrupt. I was in Lyon, France, excuse me, and in Poland last year. The Resistance Museum in Lyon took oral histories from survivors of the Nazi occupation. An innocent French 15-year-old boy was sent to town by his mom and was swept up in a Nazi purge. He was sent from camp to camp to do manual labor with little or no food. Somehow, he survived it. I know I'm out of time here, but I just want to say, these raids don't work. ICE is counterproductive. We're sending people who are U.S. citizens to seek hot, we're putting them in prisons. Our California legislature passed laws saying that these ICE--
Thank you, Linda. Welcome.
I actually have a presentation this time. Thank you.
What's your name, ma'am, for the record?
Victoria Hibbard. Lived here all my life, and this is my third time talking about ICE. But actually, this time, it was CPB, which was essentially an invasion of our city. Yes, they did stage at City Hall, that is their transport van, where they use undercover vehicles to snatch people, and then bring them to that transport van where they were taken to Los Angeles. And it is true that somebody did urinate. It was not an agent, it was actually someone they had kidnapped, and because there was no bathrooms, they had him urinate on public property. There is video that, I didn't want to show that, because that man has already gone through enough. I just want to let you know who we are. We are a community group that has been tracking these kidnappings. We're not armed, we don't pose any threat, but we did realize that Border Patrol agents are racially profiling our community. And they were literally picking people off Sixth Street. Just anybody that essentially couldn't either answer their questions, or didn't give them information when they asked if they were a legal citizen. And honestly, that day was very, very rainy, and they were driving insanely, running red lights, illegal U-turns. They could have killed anybody, anybody. Especially on Sixth Street where we have the Hawk Lights, I mean, so this is one of the videos, this is outside of the KFC. And you can see a car that's about to run a red light to get into the KFC parking lot to back up. So that's what happened on our streets. That's what people witnessed. That's what people were calling in for. Can you go to the next one, please? And this was the initial, first, you know, kidnapping at the Home Depot. They only took one person, because we were able to thankfully warn them when we heard the convoy was coming to Corona. But yeah, they just took whoever ran. One guy ran, they chased him, and they put him in that van. They did question some of the other day laborers, who did have documentation, so they left him alone. But they came back a second time, including a ICE agent or CPB agent that's-- that's well-known, goes maskless, and is known for being highly aggressive and waving guns in people's faces. Thank God we didn't have any guns waving in our face that day. I just really hope we can pass some type of legislation similar to Santa Clara County and Chicago where ICE would not be allowed to do any type of enforcement on our public grounds. And you're right, it got worse, Jim.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ward. I've been a resident of Corona since 1998. First, I want to thank all of you who work for our city. Thank you for the time and work you put in. Thank you for the support you give as you show up to so many events. It is appreciated and doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you. I'm here tonight to share with you the exciting news that for the first time, two giving machines are coming to Riverside County, specifically the Galleria Mall at Tyler, located at the inside entrance of Macy's. You're probably wondering, what is the giving machine? Instead of purchasing a candy bar or snacks from a vending machine, a giving machine is where people buy goods and services to those in need. It's a machine that enables a person to give rather than receive. 100% of each donation goes directly to nonprofits. Since 2017, the Giving Machine has raised nearly $50 million in donations. This December, Giving Machine kiosks will be in 126 cities, 21 countries, and six continents. Now, I'd like to share a brief clip of how the Giving Machine works. There will be five local charities benefiting from the Giving Machine here locally. Those charities are Meals on Wheels in Riverside, Megan's Wings, Catarina's Club, Path of Life, and U.S. Vets Inland. There are opportunities to donate locally and globally, like purchasing a goat for a family. So save the date, November 28 through December 31. Round up your loved ones, your neighbors, coworkers. Take a trip to the mall. Make your selection and help make a measurable impact locally or globally this holiday season. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Welcome.
Hello. I am so excited to be here, so excited. I've never been this involved in politics in my life. This is my first meeting. My name is Kristi Markwart. I live here in Corona and I have since 2021. I wish I didn't have to be so involved, honestly. And I wish love would prevail. I wish empathy would prevail. But right now, Corona should not support and contribute to making it easy for ICE to kidnap, detain, put fear into our communities. Our community is suffering and the law-abiding people are scared. I spend my free time, though I work a full-time job, doing patrols, making sure my neighbors are safe, checking online and sharing resources to make sure that my community is safe, which is like something the police should be doing, I feel like, or, you know, other city officials. But I'm out there. I'm exhausted, single-parenting, a teenager. Do you guys know what that's like? He is 16 with ADHD. This is craziness. But I'm out here because his dad is an immigrant. My child is half-immigrant. And the fear that we feel daily is palpable. And I don't think you all understand. I demand that you pass a resolution condemning these ICE raids and advocating for more removal, for their removal from the city. I also demand officers arrest ICE when they mask themselves, do not identify themselves, and stop and kidnap people without warrants. They are very brutal. And I would even love to categorize them as a terrorizing entity. They are not government agents. Government agents don't behave this way. They brutalize and terrorize peaceful people. I married into a Mexican family because they are the most beautiful, loving, kind, not to mention the amazing food. My neighbors made me the best food, the best. By controlling these ICE activities, it does a few things. It shows our council and our city cares. You can empathize. You listen to the community. And you will hold ICE accountable. And any law-breaking and suffering they have committed, it exposes ICE's cruelty, their dehumanization tactics. They must follow the law like everybody else. They are not above the law. We are holding you responsible to pass any kind of provision to protect our community and to hold ICE accountable. There is no mistake that ICE is a terrorist organization acting above the law. And it's unacceptable. Your silence is complicity. And you doing nothing will count in the next election. Your seat is depending on what you do now. Love, Ray.
Welcome back, Bobby.
Thank you. Bobby Spiegel, Corona Chamber of Commerce, 904 East Sixth Street. I just want to take a moment to thank the Corona Police and the Corona Fire. This last Sunday, we had one of our own members. The restaurant owner of Silver Dollar Pancake House was in a horrific single-car accident. And if it wasn't for the police department arriving first and doing first aid until the fire department arrived moments later. And what they did, the surgeons on Robert Hernandez basically said if it wasn't for what they did, he would have lost his arm. Today, he had his second surgery, or yesterday he did, on his elbow. And it sounds really promising that he will be discharged on Friday with full recovery anticipated. But I just want you all to know how much we appreciate our public servants, the police department, as well as the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is James Ford. I'm a resident of Riverside, although I was raised here in Corona. I want to begin by acknowledging our gathering here on unceded territory of the Tongva, Actua Chaman, and Piam Kwichum people. May their enduring connection and stewardship to this land be honored forever and inspire us to do better. Next, I'd like to share some important data to directly contradict the lies that are flying from our federal government. Kidnapped individuals, also known as detainees to the government, grew by over 20,000 to 61,200 people as of September 2025. Of these, 71% have no criminal conviction. And of the 25% around that do, the majority of them are minor offenses such as traffic violations. So when the government is telling you that they're going after the worst of the worst, they are lying. They are completely lying to us. And additionally, 23 people have died in federal custody thus far this year. This is compared to 24 people who died over the past four years. So we are seeing a very sharp increase in violence and death, both in the facilities and out on our streets. These numbers do not even include Silverio Villegas Gonzalez, the father of two who was shot and killed in Illinois by an ICE agent, nor does it include Jaime Alanis Garcia, who was killed in a raid, I believe, in Ventura; Carlos Roberto Montoya; and Jose Castro Rivera, who were both killed on freeway fleeing ICE attacks. I use the word "attack" with intention because I do believe that word choice matters. These are not just raids or targeted immigration operations. They have masked gunmen roaming our streets, speeding and running red lights in unmarked cars, pulling brown people off the streets with no probable cause, zero warrants, and complete disregard for our community. They actively instill fear in our streets. They wave guns, threaten, and even arrest U.S. citizens under trumped-up and fictitious charges. This past Sunday, as was mentioned in the presentation, around eight of our neighbors were kidnapped off the streets and, as you saw those videos as well. They are forced into unmarked civilian vehicles and they then enter a broken system of privately-run prisons. Corporations like Geo Group and CoreCivic have made billions off of these attacks. I would invite you all to put yourselves in the shoes of the people who are being taken. Imagine going to work, getting groceries, waiting for the bus, or just walking down the street and you find yourself on the other end of an assault rifle with masked men here shuffling you into a car. They whisk you away with no access to your family, no access to a lawyer, just for being brown or just for speaking Spanish. That's the reality faced by your constituents today. This isn't the America we grew up in, and yet it is. The U.S. government has been terrorizing Black and Brown communities for hundreds of years, and it is time we say enough to Washington and demand that they cease the racial profiling and cease their attacks on our communities. And it is imperative that we come together as a city to put a stop to these. We cannot shine alone in the darkness, and we need collective action. When I see tonight the turnout for this, it does bring me hope. It brings me hope that people and the community are ready to answer the call. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Marta.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I don't have a long speech. I just have an ask. I ask that you protect our community. How, I don't know. I'm not naive. I know there's not a lot that can be done against federal agents. But we can do something, even small things like someone mentioned creating a resolution and approving it stating that we are not going to allow them to use our public parking lot here in City Hall. We have to start somewhere, and it can be something small. Our community is hurting. You might not see it, but I see it. People are scared. I know they're not people who vote because they can't, but they're still part of the community. And they're a valuable part of the community because they work and they spend their money here. People are terrified. I am a citizen, thankfully, but never, ever did I imagine that I would consider carrying my passport around to prove that I am a citizen. Because I don't want to be detained and kept in a facility for days or weeks until they can, you know, investigate and see if I really am a citizen just based after being stopped and apprehended or kidnapped. Because it is a kidnapping when they're doing it, you know, with their faces covered and no badge. That is a kidnapping. You know, after being apprehended for the color of my skin. So Corona is almost 50% Hispanic, I believe. Is it higher than 50%, Wes? And let's be clear about it. It's the community that's being targeted, whether they're citizens or not. We are being targeted for the color of our skin. And I ask you, Tony, Wes, Tom, Jackie, and Mayor Jim Steiner, to do something about it. Start with something small. I know we talked earlier, Mayor, and it's difficult to come up with something, but we can start with something small and then work from there as we learn. Please take that into consideration. I beg you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marta. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, city staff. My name is Timothy Nguyen. I'm the chief program officer for Mercy House. We operate a whole system of care in the city of Corona for the homeless that are here. And I'm here to express our sincere gratitude for the city's continued partnership and support. Because of the city of Corona's commitment to meaningful, results-driven solutions to homelessness, Mercy House has been able to make significant impacts in the lives of some of our community's most vulnerable residents over the last fiscal year. With your support, our emergency shelter program, the Harrison Hope Center, has provided 13,698 bed nights of safe, dignified shelter in the last fiscal year. This is provided to individuals experiencing homelessness from the city of Corona. That's more than 13,000 nights of rest, safety, and stability for the people who would otherwise have had nowhere else to go. Our average length of stay was 61 days, giving our staff the time needed to build trust, connect our clients to services, and help them to make meaningful steps towards stability. In addition, your support for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program has been a cornerstone of our homelessness prevention and rehousing efforts. Over the last fiscal year, our program prevented or ended the homelessness of 227 individuals in 119 households. Those are families who remained housed, seniors who avoided displacement, individuals who were able to move from crisis to stability because of the city's investment in proven housing-focused solutions. Remember, this only accounts for our most recent fiscal year, the year ending in June 2025. If we were to include the people we helped from our entire partnership, which started in 2023, that would be even higher. But more importantly than the numbers, this represents real people, neighbors, parents, children, whose lives have been changed by the work that we're able to do together. None of this would be possible without your leadership, without your commitment to collaboration, and without your dedication to the working alongside the work from your city staff and our teams every day. Because of Mercy House, our staff and the hundreds, on behalf of Mercy House, our staff and the hundreds of Corona residents whose lives have been directly impacted, I just want to thank you for your partnership. Thank you for your trust and thank you for your unwavering support.
Thank you, Timothy. Good evening.
Evening, Council. My name is Brianna Wilcox. I live in Corona. I was born in Riverside. I've lived in this area for my entire life. I want to acknowledge our standing on unceded Tongva land. And I want to just remind everyone that no one is illegal on stolen land. Migration is a human right. And borders are just another way for state-enacted violence we perpetrated against people on both sides of the imaginary line. When I first started thinking about getting involved as a citizen here, I started asking people like, hey, what's the city council like? What's the vibe? What are the members like? And I was told not to go. I was told not to come here because this was a place where apparently like richer, older white people would complain about pickleball scheduling conflicts. Apparently, that was an issue at some point in the recent past. And that like maybe discussions around slightly heftier matters like people getting kidnapped maybe would not be heard. I don't think that's a fair assessment. The few times I've been here so far, you've shown to be very thoughtful, very considered. You asked very detailed questions and you thought about how could this go wrong? How could this go right? It's really encouraging, and I don't think it was a fair characterization of you. Corona is currently in a crisis. You've seen the evidence. We have unmasked and identified people running crazy in the streets, violating traffic law amongst many other laws. And each crisis is an opportunity to do not only the right thing, but to show to the people that you are willing and able to provide meaningful leadership. You have the ability. You have the heart for it. Maybe just not the right optics or the right PR if people somehow think that it's not worth talking to you. So my invitation is this. Show to the people of Corona who maybe haven't been involved before, maybe didn't think it was worth answering the survey that your professional surveyor tried to put out. We couldn't get many people to respond, right? Show them that you're willing to take action, get results, and then publicly and transparently communicate those results to the people here, right? People need to know what you're accomplishing for them. So we can start with the basics. Instruct the Corona Police Department to enforce traffic regulations. So when people claiming to be ICE are running reds, maybe they could be there. If they're claiming to be feds, maybe confirm their identification because we do have a lot of impersonators. If they're running around with no plates on their cars, that is technically legal if they submitted the correct paperwork to DHS. Now, multiple media outlets have asked DHS to provide this paperwork as evidence of like, oh, yes, we are going through the process. We are legally running around without plates. DHS has not been able to provide that paperwork. So we know these people claiming to be agents are doing this illegally. I am here if you have any questions. Our community is here. We know who we can point you to for concrete, simple steps that do not risk you, that do not ask you to be brave. We just ask you to lead.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. The reason for my visit today is I just want to bring awareness to a topic that's very important to me.
What's your name, ma'am, for the record?
My name is Flor. I have been a Corona resident. My name is Flora. I have been a Corona resident for the past five years. I'm a volunteer with the Animal Corona Shelter, and I wanted to bring attention to the babies that will be housed there throughout this cold winter. I'd like to start by saying the shelter officers and volunteers are wonderful, and we all work very hard and diligently to care for these innocent animals. However, there are limitations to the efforts made to keep the animals safe and healthy. Today, I want to bring attention to the unfortunate fact that these fur babies will spend the cold winter outdoors. I'm hopeful that we can come together as a community and raise enough resources to install covers or shades in an attempt to keep these babies warm and dry through the holiday season. At the very least, I'd like to remind our residents to not forget that there are several animals at the Animal Corona Shelter that are in need of loving forever homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe, you already spoke, so yeah, you just get your three minutes. Hi, Chris.
Chris McCoy, District Three, Nathan Howard. The first thing I want to do tonight is I just personally also want to thank Bobby. I remember when the tragedy of the Turpin kids happened, and the community came together and tried really hard to find a way of helping those kids. And Bobby and the chamber stood up and showed how much he cared. He tried to coordinate all those efforts to make sure that that money got to those kids. What's happened with the county since is not on Bobby, but I really appreciate everything he did. And we had a really heartfelt talk one night about that, and I was very impressed with his knowledge of it and what he did and how he was, he's always been willing to step up for community issues. The other thing I want to bring up, which is going to dovetail into 9.1, but it's not about 9.1. We are, the city is the landlord for the hub. We have heavy rain coming up Friday and Saturday. We have a brand-new business there, which is The Wind Down, just opened. Tam Green, you've all met her. Everybody from the city and staff was there during the grand opening that she held. This last weekend, the roof opened up like a sieve. She had leaks. She had to close on Saturday. She's talked to Joel and the city. They had some guys come out and repair on Sunday. They gave her a bunch of reasons why it wasn't a complete fix, and things need to be done, and a new roof needs to be done. She has not heard back since Sunday night, Monday. And we're coming around the bend now. We're coming around to the point where she's going to have to, you know, she's going to have to try to stay open in rain with leaks in her roof. She just doesn't have the resources to do that. And she doesn't know I'm here. She hasn't asked me to do this. I just, if the city is going to act as landlord and if we're going to move forward and do all these other things, we need to walk before we run. And we're not doing that for her right now. And I'm up here because she won't come up here. She's a very kind and nice person, but we need to support these new businesses that we're putting in to the hub, and we need to make sure that they're taken care of. And when she's not getting any communication back, and we have another weekend coming up for her, that's a big deal. And then finally, a discussion about making these agents who are, I don't even want to call them officers, making sure that these people, when they come in, they have a badge number on and they have no mask on, so there's at least a minimum of accountability. We can require that. Other cities have done that. There's no reason why we can't do that. That's the bare minimum.
Happily, I wasn't going to speak because I didn't bring my cheat sheet, but I brought me and my wife and people behind us that helped us with seeing things that the people that came over to the event for their service. And I didn't bring my cheat sheet, but I brought my heart, like I said. So we don't have to help us out, to feel what we're going through. I could see asking you, please help us out.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alan Vargas. I not only live in this city, but I put into words the amount of concern that went around our community. I've gotten 19 calls for service, which we serve this community proudly. And like many of our community, I believe that taking action is something that is in your hands because you try and fail. We are seeing our neighbors consistently afraid of this. We can't do that. We can do something, and hand to your city attorney to look at, to finally start taking action to protect our neighbors, sustain our political process. If my presence here means anything is public service means more than just being an elected official. All of us who are a part of MIGRA watch are public servants because we are serving our community with being harassed by ICE. I'm accountable one of these days. If it's not this administration, watch. He proceeds to tell me, oh, I know you ain't talking with your hair looking like that. That is the type of individuals that are, that we are paying for. And pepper spraying children, including ICE officers, or even kidnapping a law enforcement officer. If our law enforcement officers, our fire department is not safe from the terror that's being inflicted across this nation, then no one is safe. So I am ready to work with y'all to get this done. Now, the question is, do you have the willpower to do it? Because I am now kicking the ball in your court. Because we now have an item here that is actionable, that can be done. So now it's on y'all. So let's get to work because we got some work to do, especially for the hundreds of people who live in our city who are afraid to go out right now.
Will you, sir? Will you hand that to the city clerk, please? Thank you. You're up, Harvey.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
Guys, I've been holding your breath for about a half hour. My heart's just pounding. My name is Harvey Van Egmond. I own Harvey's Auto Tech in Corona. Lived in Corona for 27 years. We've had an auto repair shop for 34 years inside the circle. My concern is the conversations that the city has had for numerous years about revitalization. There's a property directly across the street from me that 15 years ago I tried to buy me, that 15 years ago I tried to buy for $800,000. I offered the guy that money. He took that offer to the city. The city paid $1 million for that property, and they paid $300,000 for the guy who was renting to get out of town. Since that time, the last 15, 17 years, that property has been vacant. Nothing has been done with that property. Now, there's a lot of conversation about the wonderful things that Corona is going to do with the properties. And I know there is going to be a conversation about pushing a lot of us automotive businesses out of town with no recourse. I take the example of the property across the street that has been vacant for 15 years. Nothing has been done with it. There's been no tax collection for that property. How is that good for the citizens of Corona? It's been vacant. There have been couches dropped there. There have been homeless people leaving trash. That gives me great concern about the plans for the rest of Sixth Street, for the dilapidation of the downtown. Corona so far hasn't done anything for that property and nothing for our community.
Thank you, sir.
And also, I want to make one other point. I've got a little time. I'm not scared to walk downtown. I think it's still a thriving area. I think there are a lot of business people here that I've already seen that I know. I've got customers that have come here tonight as well to talk about it. I'm not scared of downtown Corona. The only thing I'm scared of, let me make this point. The only thing I'm scared of is that walking guy. I see him everywhere. I don't know, I don't know if you guys see him, but this guy is everywhere. He's got the white hat and the white shorts. That guy scares me. Downtown Corona doesn't scare me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Don Fuller. Sylvia has a piece of artwork she's going to put up on the screen, and they have a separate copy of it to hand out to each one of you up on the dais. And this is a subject that I should have brought up before the city years ago, but it just occurred to me about a couple of weeks ago. And it concerns the North Mall, so I'm going to change the subject from other people have been talking about it. And I have a suggestion that the answer to fixing the North Mall and all of that is to straighten Main Street. And I'm passing out a map that I have made up, and it's up on the overhead right there. And I've gone down and looked the area over, and you can see I've made a map out of what I could get from Google Maps and drawn some stuff all over it. If you bite the bullet and straighten Main Street, all of the other things just start to fall into place. On the south end, you would have to do something about the bank building and about half of the building that has the wind down in it. But that was just recently started. On the north end, you'd probably have to do something about the building that has Baker's Dozen in it. The other stuff, you decided you're going to run a bulldozer through that anyway. If you straighten Main Street and put it back the way that it was, it makes everything else fall into place. Furthermore, the people getting off of the freeway at the 91 at Main, they turn south and go down Main, it becomes an entrance to the city. So you see on this diagram here, I have a couple of places for some pedestrian bridges. The one over Main Street could be designed to look like a crown, say Corona Circle City or something on it. So it looks like you're entering the city. Looks like you have an entrance to this place. And the development doesn't go just on one side of the street, which is what the North Mall project has been talking about. Development goes on both sides of the street. So you have an entrance to the town. You have a gateway to the town. And when you get off of the freeway and look at that, going through that bridge, up, which is south, you have this vista that goes up before you. It has a nice, big, wide Main Street all the way up. Now, I admit, this is kind of late in the game to bring this up. And I admit that I do not know how to run a bulldozer. So other people would have to do this. But I contend that if you bite the bullet and you straighten Main Street, it makes everything else much, much, much easier, and you end up with something that you can then show to your grandkids. Because several of you have talked about wanting to leave a legacy for your grandkids. So all I'm saying is, bite the bullet, do it right, and the rest of it falls into place. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Don. Welcome.
Good evening. Joe Morgan, 2063 Ren. I've been saying to straighten it back out, fix it. Somebody else, somebody broke it in the late 60s, you should fix it. So I'll say the same thing I said at the last meeting. I am concerned about ICE activities in Corona targeting minority residents. But I'm equally concerned about the city targeting minority residents. And, and, you know, so you don't have a problem picking on the Padillas and the Cortezes or Raj. You don't have a problem with that. You don't. You do it regularly. You don't mess with Calvert. You want his building so bad. You want that building at the Corona Mall so bad so you can build another couple hundred apartments. But I don't see the tractors pulling up to that building. I don't see you lighting fires next to that. So you guys are doing the same thing. You're doing the same thing, and it's shameless. Which brings me, on the topic of shameless, I want to talk to the official city weasel, Mr. Ellis. I remember when Tony got on council, you fought to have future agenda items and draft agendas. We were on the same side of that. So that people could know what's going on ahead of time, so that we'd have ample notice, and you'd have ample notice as well. So I've been hearing about how, oh, you guys are like, oh, my gosh, look at this 9.1. Oh, would you look at that? Would you just, look at what happened to just pop up on the agenda. We didn't know anything about it. Okay, so two things cannot be true at the same time. That you guys just popped up, you just saw it, just like that. It was like, wow, look at that, the agenda. I have no idea what's going on. Or that you didn't sandbag the council with this. You're a weasel. I believe you had your usual hub and spoke meetings with them. I think that. But I think it's on the council here to put a flag in the ground to either confirm that you, in fact, sandbagged them and put that nonsense on there, or that you guys did know about it. Because the two things cannot be, you know, you either, you either basically were derelict in your duty and irresponsible and a sneaky little weasel, like I said. The previous, the previous future agenda items thing never, never happened to mention it. City facilities free of charge, housing units approved by the city, exploited legalities requiring CUPs, El Cerrito pickleball, hey, that's on the agenda tonight. But you couldn't bother to put that, the taking businesses away from 40-some businesses, you're just stealing property rights from people? You couldn't, yeah, that wasn't significant enough? You're a weasel. You're a weasel, and you need to go. And you guys need to plant a flag about whether either you're lying about not knowing about it, or that he's a weasel. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Let's move on to public hearing. Ordinance amending various chapters within Title 15 of the Corona Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standard Code, California Code of Regulations, Title 24. Does any council member or staff report on this item? Ms. Edwards, a city clerk received correspondence on speaker cards from the public regarding this item.
Mayor, we did not receive correspondence or speaker cards for this item.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Vice Mayor and Councilman Richens, please vote. We didn't get Wes's vote. Fora with Councilmember Speak, absent. Okay, we're going to move on. I'm going to move a couple of things around here, and I'm doing it because I want to do the mobile home park first because they've spent the most time in this room for the most amount of years. So I want to get them up and get them out of here, get them home to bed. So. Does any council member want a staff report on this item? Ms. Edwards on the speaker cards from the public on this item.
Mayor, yes, we do have speaker cards for this item, and we also have somebody on Zoom for this item.
Okay, let's go with the speakers first, and don't let me forget the Zoom. Speakers, for Agenda Item 10.0. Here comes one. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Steiner, and members of the city council. My name is Benjamin Kelly, representing Met, Manufactured Housing Educational Trust. And as a representative of the Corona Mobile Home Community Owners, Met remains opposed to the proposed rent control ordinance before the council for consideration. Met and other organizations, including Corona Mobile Home Park owners, have submitted lengthy factual documentation opposing the need for the adoption of rent control, which does not support the findings outlined in the proposed ordinance. The ordinance findings that state mobile home parks provide a significant pool of affordable housing for very low and moderate income families, senior citizens, and disabled residents in the city is at best misleading. Mobile home parks make up only 2.2% of the housing stock in the city, including only one senior park. Hardly a significant pool of affordable housing that justifies ultimately spending millions of dollars implementing rent control for people who are not income-qualified and needing of any form of rent subsidy. Furthermore, mobile home parks are not income-restricted affordable housing. Low-income applicants do not qualify to move into mobile home parks and pay market rent. Current residents who live in parks qualified to move in and in most cases are not in need based on any measurable, means-tested instruments or qualifications. Supporting this is the fact that there are no mobile home park residents receiving Section 8 rental assistance and only one family receiving a monthly rent subsidy from the Met. from the Met Rental Assistance Program. There is no demonstrated need to provide below-market rents to all mobile home park owners. If there is need by some, it would be far more appropriate and responsible to be addressed on an income-qualified basis. Those in need receive help. Not everyone who happens to live in a very small special interest group who happens to have chosen the mobile home park lifestyle. We urge the council to not adopt rent control, but to refocus on identifying if there are truly needy families in the parks. And Met's happy to work with you. Thank you.
Joe Morgan, 2063 Ren. Golly gosh, thank you for trying to educate us on how mobile homes work. You guys had, these people had their chance for years, years, to come up with something to work. And they only, you know, really started really seriously whining about it or worrying about it just as of recently, you know, these many years down the road, when you guys are putting an agenda or you're putting an actual ordinance in place. So you really can't believe anything those guys say. They've been very disingenuous, very dishonest. And you can just tell by the sincerity in that guy's voice as he's reading from the script, you know, explaining to everybody that it's not deed-restricted, low income. Like, pretty much everybody in this room knows what that means. So we don't really need the patronizing nonsense. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hey, good evening. Steve Huesner, 777 South Meskell Street, Corona, La Linda, Space 123. This wasn't written down, but In God We Trust, like, 12 years ago. So I do believe God. This is God's will, and I thank all of you for having an open heart and really helping us. I'm a resident of Corona. And first of all, I want to start by saying thank you. I know I speak on behalf of all my neighbors when I say that the 3% rent increase cap will help us stay in our homes without the worry of whether we will end up on the streets. Not all of us, but some people, that's how important it is in our park that I know. But in addition to being here to thank you, I'm also here to beg you, please do not sabotage the rent stabilization ordinance by allowing a fair market increase on the sale of our homes. My home is the only real asset I have. I have invested a lot of money into it to keep it livable. And I, you know, I'm not going to list everything I've done. But the park contributes nothing to our place. And yet, when I sell my home for every $100 lot rent, it increases, the $100 lot rent increases, lowers my home's resale value by $10,000. So allowing for unspecified fair market rent increase defeats the whole purpose of stabilization. Who decides what is fair in the increase? It can't be city staff. The RSO already established that. Fair is 3%. It can't be me. I don't think any increase is fair. So it is the Board of Realtors, the park owner? I claim conflict of interest. The only fair amount of increase at the sale has to be 3%, in my opinion. If the fair market is set at 10%, within a short time, the city has allowed lot rent to become unaffordable after people try to sell their home. If I can't even sell it at that level of increase, this creates instability in an unpredictable real estate market. Please set the allowable increase at the transfer of 3%. Currently, our park, Corona La Linda, is charging way more than 10%. That's why there's mobile still for sale, lowering the price. And these people are, you know, living week to week, and they have to keep lowering the value because when new people move in, right now, it's way over 10%. So with the 3% at transfer of sell, it is a win-win situation. The park owner makes an extra 3% on the rent, and the mobile homeowner gets to sell, and the person selling the mobile gets to sell their mobile home without taking a big loss. So my wife asked what I wanted to speak on, and I think that's very important. If you could please give us the 3% transfer, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is March Batetti. I didn't expect to speak. However, there is an item on the agenda about rent stabilization for mobile homes that hits me deeply. I've been a resident of Corona for 25 years. And after losing my husband and found a recourse of moving into a mobile home, I've lived in that mobile home for five years and have seen my space rent go up $3,000 in that five years. That is quite a jump. And since I am retired, that's not an income that you can go and manufacture quickly. Thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you. Hi, Eugene.
Evening, council members. And I am Eugene Fazique from Green River Village. I have lived there for quite some time. I lost my job at Walmart on a medical leave of 25 years before. And then, right now, I'm growing older and getting wiser. And I don't have relatives that can support me in my old age. So my only income or ability to live in this community, if I can't afford the mobile home prices, then I will end up losing my home to the park management. And it's unfortunate that you lived there a long time. And as much as I paid to that park, I could have owned a piece of property as big as your ranches. So in the essence, that if you pass this ROS and give them the regular rate of fair market, then I will have a hard time selling my home. Because maybe they like my home, and I gave it a good price. But when they look at the fees that the park owner wants and for the amenities that they offer and then take away from us, it would put me out of business and on the streets. And that isn't what I'm looking for. So I hope the city council doesn't fail to pass this. And then, actually, the park owners end up only taking the only assets I have. So please, don't let us down by showing this loophole to sabotage what oftentimes otherwise would protect us from park owners' predatory tactics. And I thank you again for all your work and efforts for this city council members. Since the past ones, which I stated in comments before, of 2015, we've been doing this. But I want to give you recognition for helping us this last year or two. Thank you.
Thanks, Eugene. Hi, Don.
Hi, folks. Don Fuller, I'm a resident here. I have a question for the fellow that represented the Owners Association, whatever the name of it is. My question is, what's your billable hourly rate? I'd be interested to know that. See, I used to work for what, at that time, was known as the biggest PR firm in the world. And we had a pretty good billable hourly rate. And I spent about 25 years working as an expert witness. I had a pretty good billable hourly rate on that. And I've done a lot of video work, working for video companies, doing training videos. Had a pretty good billable hourly rate for that as well. So I'm familiar with that. I don't think you're here out of the goodness of your heart. I don't think you're here for free. I think you're getting paid something. And these folks here who are speaking up tonight, these are folks who are having trouble making ends meet. They're having trouble making ends meet. Inflation keeps going up. The price of groceries is going up. The price of beef and everything else is going up. And medical expenses are being, subsidies are being cut at the federal level. So these folks are having more and more trouble making ends meet. And you have the audacity to come in here and give up some facts and figures and stuff like that. I just wonder how much you got paid to do that.
Hey, Don, could you please talk to us and not the audience, buddy?
One other little thing. He really could work on his delivery a little bit because it's awfully dry and boring. He needs to kind of pump that up a little bit. So that's all. I just wonder how much he's getting paid to be here because he ain't here for free. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. All right. Is there one more speaker? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Beatrice Nunez. I've been living in Corona for 20 years. And when we first, my husband and I moved out here in 2005, our goal was to purchase a home. But at that time, the homes were so high. And we ended up finding a home in Villa Corona Park on Rampell and Magnolia. I just lived there for 20 years. We just finished paying our mortgage, which I'm excited about it. But now, I'm paying, I'm going to be paying to have my home there, $1,400 coming this year. For the past three years, they raised my rent $100 each year. And I think it's so sad that I've lived there for 20 years. And next thing I know, they send me the envelope saying, oh, as of January the 1st, you're going to be paying this much more money. I don't get a, thank you for being a resident. Thank you for, you know, for living here for 20 years. I love the park. It's a really nice park. And I just think it's so ridiculous that the way that they're raising the rent in our space. $1,400 I'm going to be paying. I could have been paying that for a home or something if I would have bought a house 20 years ago. That's just ridiculous. And I really hope that you guys could help us with all this. This is my first time here speaking. I'm a little bit nervous, but I felt like I needed to say something. And I'm here representing everybody that's going in this, it's in the same situation that, you know, that I'm in. Thank you very much.
You did a great job here first time.
Beatrice, real quick, I have a question.
Beatrice?
Sorry, real quick.
Vice Mayor Casillas has a quick question for you?
Just real quick. So you're going to pay $1,400, how much of an increase? Is that from your previous?
No, it's going to be $1,400, starting in January 1st.
That's the increase, or that's the total?
No, no, $100, a $100 increase, yes. So $1,400 I'm going to be paying. And I just finished paying off my home.
Congratulations.
I paid 20 years. And now, for me to be paying that much? I wish I could get out of the park, but I can. I can. I can't afford anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No other speakers? Nope, here we go.
Good evening.
My name's Alicia Loomis. I'm from Countrywood Estates. What she just said is really, you know, hits home probably for a lot of us. So she did just finish paying off her mortgage, which is awesome. But the problem with that is that she's probably getting near retirement age at some point, and she'll have a fixed income to live on, like a lot of people in my park. And that leaves such a minimal amount of you to buy food, to pay your utilities, any healthcare needs. So all of that is in consideration of what we're asking. And I appreciate so much everything that you guys have done, that you're continuing to do, that your minds are open, that you're engaged in this, and just ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hi, Annabelle. Maribel.
There's always confusion, Annabelle and Maribel. Hi, everyone. Maribel Nunez with the Inland Power Tending Union and I E CLT. And here supporting the mobile home park residents for this item. Just wanted to reiterate, to keep the rent cap for 3%. You know, diddle to everything people have said. Making sure we have clear definitions and really looking at the differences of capital improvements and pass-throughs. I know that's something we're working really hard in the city of Hoopa Valley to separate the bill because a lot of it could be inserted within the rent. So I don't know if I saw too much of it in the ordinance. So I really encourage to have conversations with Hoopa Valley as well. And then, in regards to the rent increases, you know, I know some of the parks or residents that live in the different parks had mentioned that they usually just get a once-a-year rent increases. So I think majority of the parks' residents or homeowners are okay. But as we're looking at this transitional phase, April 2nd to June 30th, I wonder if there's any way to kind of do a moratorium on rent increases? Just to make sure. Because I think we know there's some good actors on mobile home park owners, but then there's not some good actors. So if there's a way to explore the idea of a rent increase moratorium through this transition so that we don't have exuberant rent increases as we're getting and phasing in into this rent increase. And in regards to the gentleman that spoke about the, that's from Met that talked about the rent increases, I kept looking at it. And it's, there's a lot of requirements to qualify for their Met rental assistance. You have to be like 50% AMI to qualify. Either be 62 years or older, have a family of two, or have someone in disability. You have to be 40% housing cost burden. It goes further than HUD. HUD, for you to get Section 8, you know, you have to get 30, you have to be 30% of your, you know, housing cost burden. So they go beyond what HUD is asking. So it's a very high criteria. And maybe that's why there's only one person, I guess he was saying, that qualified. So I think that's why we need the rent increase to open it up for more people to be able to continue affording, living in these mobile home parks. And so, and they're very beautiful. But, so yeah, we're all about, you know, equity and fairness for seniors, low-income families. We're hearing about ICE raids. So I think more than ever, we need to keep costs down. Whether you have papers or not, as you all know, whether they can register to vote or not, they contribute in our communities, they pay sales tax, they participate in the community. So they contribute a lot to the city. And so let's help all communities. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Welcome back, Maddie.
There's going to be a third time you get to see me tonight. I just wanted to say a big time thank you because this has been in the works for a while. And I know a lot of effort has been put into it on so many people's parts. And the biggest thing is, you finally heard. You finally realized that this is a big issue for a lot of us. And as I've said in the past, yeah, I used to live in the big house, and I get it, things happen. And I am fortunate that I live in Villa Corona, which is definitely the nicest park. And something I've taken for granted is that I did sign a long-term lease. So when I discuss talking about it only being 3% and then every five years, they raise it by 10%, that doesn't apply to a lot of people. So please understand that. The thing that I need to make sure is that there's no way that they can do something sneaky, the park owners can do something sneaky and do a rent increase before this goes into effect and then turn around and do it again. I just want to make sure that is in there. The second thing is retribution. I don't know about some of these park owners, if there's going to be the ones that have spoken out against it, if there's going to be something where they require extra things to be done to their homes or some way of making it difficult for people to live there. Bless you, council member Wes. The, and I am one of those people living on a fixed income. And what the gentleman said isn't really true because we don't take into account that it's just rent that increases. Everything increases. So it really is a burden. I'm getting to the point where I'm going to have to get a job to be able to support just a basic standard of living. And, you know, at my age, which is old, it's kind of hard to do. I don't know that I have the stamina. And the last thing that I just want to men- And the last thing that I just want to mention, as I've seen done, been part of in Riverside, is just a reminder that this is hopefully the first cut. And that we do get the opportunity, once it goes, gets implemented, that we might have the capabilities, if we see how it goes, that we still have that capability to do revisions. Again, I can't thank you all, and I know I shouldn't be talking to somebody in the audience, but I will. Ms. Roper, I can't possibly leave her out of this. So sorry about that. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Happy birthday Maddie.
Welcome Lydia.
Hi guys, Lydia Huesner from Coronel Alinda. As usual, I'm advocate for all the residents of, most residents of mobile homes. My heart is very grateful for every one of you, especially Jackie. I really appreciate all that you have done for us and all of you for supporting us and listen to us and meet with us through the years of this fight. We, I did send an email to every one of you and Jackie was the only one to respond, but I'm assuming that every one of you have the time, if you have, and please take the time to read it because there are some loopholes on the, our result right now that will really affect a lot of residents. And like I mentioned before, you know, I'm here to fight for those that cannot. I'm here to be the voice for those that are not able to be here for many reasons. But the need is real, is there, is vital. And a lot of residents are at a high risk of losing their homes. We have lost a lot of residents through the years, ever since we started this fight because of no rent control. So again, my heart is very grateful and I wish the best of these holidays and all these big issues that our cities going through. My heart grieves for those people. And I didn't realize, you know, I'm Latina, I need to be careful. And I didn't realize how bad it is because, you know, I've been here for so many years and I'm a youth citizen, so I don't have nothing to worry about. But now that I hear all these things, it's like, it's very scary. And I hope that we as Corona community can come together to put something together to help our community to be safe and to have peace again and to be a happy community. I've been here in this city for over 20 years. I've been at my home for over, almost 25 years. And I really looking forward to, for you guys to consider our concerns. And we're trying to be fair. I don't know if you have noticed that, but we're trying to be fair. We understand the businesses out there to make business. But, you know, the greed is just too much. And it will be more if you guys don't stop it. And I really looking forward to see that you guys give us a rent moratorium. Because April 1st is still several months before that comes in effect and we might be affected by some of these predators. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other speakers.
Mayor?
Yeah, oh, we have Zoom. Thank you for not letting me forget.
For this item, we also received two emails for written comment in opposition of the item. And the council received copies of those emails and they'll also be part of the record. And we have two people on Zoom for this item.
Okay, let's hear it from them.
You are muted. The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
You are unmuted.
Hello?
Oh, hello?
Yeah, I got you. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hi, it's Julie from the UMA. I wanted to make one clarification before I get into my comments. There was an allegation at the last meeting that the park owner at Green River scheduled a meeting at the same time as the council meeting, and that didn't happen. The gentleman that was attending the council meeting ran the resident meeting earlier. So they weren't at the same time. So I just wanted to make that clarification. We understand the goal of supporting residents in Corona's mobile home parks, but the approach taken in this ordinance creates serious unintended consequences that will ultimately harm the very people it aims to help. The ordinance sets an artificially low cap on rent increases that cannot keep up with the pace of inflation. Every year this falls below inflation, it reduces the park owner's ability to maintain and improve their community. Over time, this leads to deterioration, closures, worst deals, or steep special rent increases, none of which benefit residents or the city. The requirement that residents must approve capital improvement pass-throughs is equally unworkable. In rent-controlled environments, residents almost never vote for increases on themselves, even for essential safety and infrastructure projects. This guarantees, that guarantees deferred maintenance and declining conditions affecting both the parks and the surrounding neighborhoods. The 36-page ordinance will also push out your mom and pop owners who have served Corona for decades. They will be overwhelmed by the regulatory burden and risk that is now Corona, that is not how Corona traditionally treats longstanding local businesses. Finally, your own business and housing leaders, the chamber, builders, realtors, and apartment owners are united in opposition. And this should tell you that, tell you something important, that Corona had alternatives, but this ordinance is not the right one. So for these reasons, we respectfully urge you to reject the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pauli. You got one more? Hello?
Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, my name is Veronica Garcia and I serve as the Housing Practice Group Director at Inland County's Legal Services. We provide free legal services to income-qualified residents of both Riverside and San Bernardino counties. And I just want to be clear that I'm not here to advocate for or against the ordinance tonight. My purpose is to simply share some information and observations from families and individuals we serve, especially here in Corona. And over the last three years, I E C L S has assisted nearly 550 households in Corona with specifically landlord tenant issues ranging from notices to vacate, habitability concerns, rent increases, and the risk of displacement. And a significant portion of those households include seniors on fixed incomes, individuals with disabilities, multi-generational households, and of course, mobile home residents, who are some of the most vulnerable to this housing instability. And across our caseload, we see some of the same repeating themes. Tenants who are unsure about what different notices mean, particularly in mobile homes, whether or not they did something wrong, how much time they have, and whether or not it's a no-fault or at-fault situation. And these are consistent issues and the confusion around notice rules or coverage can escalate conflicts that might otherwise be avoided. And we found that clarity, whatever the rule may be, can reduce conflict and misunderstandings. And the goal would be for notices to be easier to follow, fewer misunderstandings that require escalation into legal action. And it brings residents to better outcomes when they have to transition to new housing. And will allow property owners more confidence that they're complying with the laws. And I think this is true regardless of any specific details of the ordinance. But we do see that certain types of protection, such as those that apply across all rental units and include mobile home parks, can make the rules easier to follow and for the community to understand. In many communities, we also see the importance of relocation assistance, especially in no-fault situations. The cost of securing new housing right now is unattainable for most families. And with the first month, security deposit, moving expenses, it goes far beyond what seniors and families on fixed incomes can afford. And I hope that's something that's taken into consideration when you weigh in the pros and cons of this ordinance. And in our experience, amounts, minimum of two and a half times the rent, provide a more realistic buffer that will help to prevent homelessness and allow some stability. Finally, across the Inland Empire, we have seen an increase in homes and mobile home parks purchased by investment groups or equity-based owners. And many of the long-term residents have received no-fault notices, moving out and then they watch the home remain vacant for months while it's renovated for resale. And this can be extremely destabilizing and create a lot of confusion, again, for any of those long-term residents and particularly seniors. So when we look at local housing rules, we hope that they're clear, easy to explain to clients, and hopefully will result in fewer emergency moves, fewer last-minute crises.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Okay. No other, nobody else on Zoom?
Mayor, we have one more person on Zoom for this item.
All right, let's hear it. Hello?
Mayor, members of the council? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good. Vicki Chally for the Manufactured Housing Association Trust, mayor, members of the city council. Just to clarify things you've heard this evening. Mobile home park residents, particularly long-term residents who own their homes free and clear, are not at risk of losing their home. They own a very valuable asset. Mobile homes in the city, in the city's mobile home parks have increased well over 70, 180%. 58, 180% is an example. A home sold in, 1990, mobile homes sold in a park for $45,000 in '21. It resold in '23 for $125,000. Additionally, mobile home park owners have been incredibly generous in providing rent subsidies to any needy residents in their community. And that's why we encourage you to provide need-based assistance rather than blanket assistance. You even had speakers come before you this evening that said, no, they don't need the help. It's everybody else they're worried about. At any rate, it's important to also recognize that mobile home parks have owner-occupied mobile homes in them. No outside investors come in and buy out those homes and lease them. That just doesn't happen in the mobile home park industry. The mobile home park industry provides incredible resources, including free legal counsel and any other, for anyone in a mobile home park complaining about any issues. So I think that I will reiterate what my colleague Benjamin Kelly, we tried to reiterate earlier. We oppose proposed rent control ordinance. We support need-based assistance. And I note that you do that in your tenant-based rental assistance program that the organization providing that thanked you for. So I know you're familiar with that type of a, of a need-based program. We urge you to reevaluate that and not cost the citizens of Corona millions of dollars to administer a program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else trying to chime in Sylvia?
Mayor, we do not have anybody else on Zoom.
All right. Thank God. All right. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Jackie, yes?
Yeah, first I have a couple of questions. And maybe the team can, can help me out here. There was a question about the rent increase, like the timeline, the before April and the after. Can, can we talk about how the timeline of the policy implementation and what will be allowed before and what can be allowed after? Please. Sorry.
Sure.
I should direct that to you.
That's okay.
Sorry.
We can address that. So somebody asked for a moratorium. The rent control ordinance is essentially a moratorium. So there's nothing in between now and the day it becomes effective in the beginning of January because it takes two readings and then 30 days for it to become effective. There's nothing that we can adopt to further restrict rent control or rent increases between now and then. The other thing to keep in mind is they can't, if they do adopt one, if they send out a notice now, I believe it's a 90-day notice they have to give before a rent increase goes into effect. If they do that, they won't be able to then do another CPI rent increase under our ordinance for another 12 months after that. So it's not as though they can get, they can sneak one in right now and then do another one soon as the ordinance goes into place.
That's helpful for folks to hear. That probably lowers the trepidation. I appreciate that. Can you also speak to the cost of the program? We heard millions of dollars. Is it going to cost us millions of dollars to implement this?
That one, I think I will turn over to Karen, who will be, her department will be administering it. But I, it's safe to say that millions of dollars is a bit of an exaggeration, if you can imagine.
And while she's coming up, I, I didn't want to, there was a comment about pass-throughs that all pass-throughs had to be voted on. And that's not, that's not what we agreed to. So I want to make sure that's, you can clarify or, or maybe Dominique does, either one.
Hello Dominique.
Good evening. So to answer the first question about the cost, it's not going to be millions of dollars, I mean, unless you're talking about hundreds of years potentially. But if we're talking about on a, on a year basis, most of the costs are going to be covered through fees that are administered to, that'll be collected from the park owners and the homeowners. So it will not be 100% revenue neutral, but it will be very close is the intent. And then the second question about pass-throughs, can you remind me of what the question wants?
That was yours Wes?
Yeah. It was that, and I think it was somebody on the, on the Zoom call had mentioned that all pass-throughs would be, have to be voted upon and that was only for, for new amenities versus?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yes, thank you. So I think the issue there is about the capital improvement rent increases. So we said that there will have to be a vote of homeowners for new capital improvements. So if a park is adding an amenity that did not exist in the park before, then they have to poll the homeowners if their intent is then to pass through the cost to the homeowners. But if they're just trying to rehabilitate something that already exists, a homeowner vote is not required.
It's also important to point out that a capital improvement, and somebody asked for definitions. I believe we have 40-plus definitions in this. So I think we've more than, we've over-defined things for sake of clarity. And one of the largest definitions is what is a capital improvement? And it's important to remember that a capital improvement doesn't include their standard maintenance and repair. So if they're letting it become deteriorated, it's because they're not, they're not doing proper maintenance and, and repair and that's not subject to the capital improvement.
One more question, Mr. Durlith. Like all ordinances, once, if this is voted on in past, can revisions be made in the future?
Always.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Then those are the it for questions. I just have some comments, but I don't know what order you want to take them in.
Why don't you take over with your comments since you're already talking?
Well, I just want to say, you know, that the goal from the onset was always to build a Corona-specific policy that provides protections for residents who have been asking for assistance since before any of us were on city council. This has been a really long process. It took an entire year to research and establish the foundation that Corona had the right to essentially, the grounds to pursue rent stabilization. And then it took another year on top of that. That, you know, included an ad hoc committee with myself and council member speak. It included numerous workshops with both mobile homeowners and mobile park owners and their representatives. And ultimately, while I understand that not anyone can say that they got 100% of what they wanted, I'm really proud of the balance that we struck because we really wanted to have, again, a Corona-specific policy that kept the costs down, allowed for this program to be managed in-house because there makes no sense to pencil rent stabilization that then increases your monthly fees. I'm proud of the 3% cap and I'm just proud of this ordinance. And again, if we see it in practice and there's huge issues, those can be addressed in the future. So I'm, I'm in support of, of this ordinance and I appreciate all the work that has gone into it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, with honor, I move to approve.
One second. Jackie and Tom, please vote. Mayor, if you don't mind, we do have an ordinance, so we have to read the.
Proudly.
Oh, there it is. You're right. You got it Jackie?
Where's the words?
It is.
These, right here? Okay, got it. Oh, it's actually quite short. Introduced by title only and waive full reading for consideration of ordinance number 3422, first reading of an ordinance adding chapter 5.47 to title 8 of the Corona Municipal Code, establishing mobile home park rent stabilization provisions.
Thank you. And has everybody voted? Passes 4-1, councilwoman speak opposing. Okay, we're going to knock out 9.2 real quick, then we'll get to the big one. Pickleball at El Serito Park options update.
Pickleball at El Cerrito Park options update. Ms. Finch, Community Service Director, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm here tonight with an update on the pickleball at El Cerrito Park project. And our ask of the council tonight is that you provide direction on your preferred option for CIP FC twenty twenty-six oh five, which is the pickleball facility at El Cerrito Park. So just to go over some of the background, a lot of this information is kind of just similar to refresh your memory on what we had presented back when this item first came to council in August. So as you may recall, during that presentation, we talked about the growth in pickleball that has been occurring over the last, mainly the last five years that we've noticed here in the city. Overall, pickleball right now is up forty-three percent in usage from between twenty-three and twenty-four, and then over three hundred percent in the three years prior to that. In our park and rec master plan, it was identified as one of the top four key outdoor features that residents would like to see in the community, with the others being splash pads, dog parks, and pump tracks. Our park and rec master plan calls for a total of twenty-three pickleball courts throughout the city to meet our level of service guidelines, which is one for every seventy-three hundred residents. Currently, we have seventeen pickleball courts. Twelve of those are dedicated to pickleball only, and an additional five are multi-use courts. So that leaves about six courts that we would need in order to meet that threshold of twenty-three. Here's some additional background on tennis. Demand for tennis is also growing. It's up eight percent, according to USTA data. Our park and rec master plan calls for eighteen tennis courts in the city, and we are there right now with nineteen courts. Those are located at seven park sites throughout the city, which achieves our desired level of service guidelines. The location for these tennis courts are at El Cerrito Park. We have two there. We have three at Eagle Glen Park. An additional four tennis courts at Mountain Gate Park. Four more at Kellogg Park, two at Mangular Park, three, I'm sorry, two at Promenade Park, and two at Auburndale Park, which are in the process of being rehabilitated with a CIP project that we have at that site now. Just as a reminder, the courts that are at Eagle Glen Park are approximately one point eight miles away from the proposed project site, which is El Cerrito Park. And then this just gives an overview of where our pickleball courts are located in relation to the tennis courts. So to give a background on this project as a whole, as you know, we proposed new pickleball courts at El Cerrito Park in the FY twenty-six CIP budget. This project involved replacing two tennis courts with pickleball courts and building four new courts at the vacant site across from the tennis courts, which would give a total of twelve courts, and the project cost was one point one million, roughly. In June of twenty twenty-five, during budget adoption, the city council voted to pause this project. In July of twenty-five, the council, council member Richens asked to reconsider the project, so it was brought back to council on August sixth for reconsideration. The original alternatives that were presented at that August sixth meeting include option one, which we have before you, which is to do nothing, leave El Cerrito Park as is. Option two A, which is to convert only one of the tennis courts at El Cerrito to pickleball courts. That would give a net of four new pickleball courts, but a net loss of one tennis court. Option two B, it would be to convert both tennis courts at El Cerrito to pickleball, which would have a net court of eight pickleball courts, but minus two tennis courts. Option three is to convert just the vacant parcel across from the tennis courts to pickleball, which would give a net gain of four pickleball courts and no net loss to tennis courts. Option four is the original CIP, as I discussed earlier in the presentation. And then option five, which was the recommended option, which we called the compromise, which is to add eight pickleball courts to El Cerrito Park, but retain one of the tennis courts and bring one tennis court back to Border Park. This would have a net gain of six pickleball courts and no net loss of tennis courts. This is an overall summary of all of those options with the pros and cons. Sorry, let me go back to that, with the pros and cons, as well as the cost of each project. The pros and cons vary based on each project, but overall, the pros for the options with the tennis court version is the cost. Tennis court conversion is the cost. This is more economical to convert tennis courts to pickleball courts than it is to construct new courts on vacant land. The cons are that these conversion options would remove one or more tennis courts from El Cerrito Park. And of course, all of these projects are either within the budget or close to the budget of one point one million for the CIP. So the feedback that was received during that meeting, this is just a recap. There were differ, different views provided, both in support and opposition of the proposed projects from the tennis and pickleball communities. The council also expressed varying levels of interest for options three, four, and five. And at the end of the meeting, the council asked us to go back and continue to pause the project, evaluate the impact of new, the new pickleball courts that were constructed at the Eagle Glen Golf Club, identify any alternative options for the project, which include utilizing the space in the northwest corner of El Cerrito Park and returning Border Park back to tennis courts. So for one of the items that the council asked us to look at, which was the impact of the Eagle Glen Golf Club new pickleball courts, we did have staff go out and evaluate the activity at the Border Pickleball Courts. Just to give a little refresh of this project, back in September of twenty twenty-five, Eagle Glen Golf Club opened seventeen new pickleball courts at their site. This is a pay-to-play site, so it's not free courts, but they are seventeen brand-new courts that are over there for the pickleball community to utilize. We did have staff go out and do actual player counts at Border, both in July, prior to the opening of the Eagle Glen Courts, and again in October, after the courts opened. Staff went out for three weeks in July and measured participation on Wednesday evenings and Saturday mornings, and then they went out again for another three weeks in October to measure participation. And actually, we found that participation in October had actually increased. So there was no reduction in activity at Border. The average players for Saturday went from fifty-five players on Saturdays at nine AM in July to sixty-four players in October. And on Wednesdays, it went from fifty-nine players in July to sixty-two players in October. So for the new options, again, council asked us to evaluate some new options. Before I get into what those options are, I just wanted to provide an overview of the El Cerrito Park site, because the options that I'm going to be discussing do look at varying levels of activity at each of these areas that are highlighted on this slide. So area number one is the northwest corner of the park. Area two is the potential additional parking site. Area three is where the existing tennis courts are at El Cerrito Park. Area four is the vacant parcel, and area five is where the current basketball courts are. So our new option number six would be to construct twelve new pickleball courts at the El Cerrito Park tennis courts and vacant parcel, which was the original site for the proposed project for the CIPs, which gives, which gives twelve courts there, and converting six pickleball courts at Border Park back to tennis courts, which is what the site originally was. It was two tennis courts here. There is an option for where those remaining four pickleball courts are at Border Park to retain those courts, those four pickleball courts, or to convert that back to basketball, which is what it originally was before it was pickleball courts. This option would provide a net gain of two to six pickleball courts, depending on what the council decides with that area where the basketball courts were previously located, and a net, there was no net loss to tennis courts. It would be just basically moving those tennis courts from El Cerrito Park over back to Border Park. The new option number seven is to construct the twelve new pickleball courts at the original project site, which is the tennis courts at El Cerrito and the vacant parcel across from it. This would also entail relocating those two tennis courts to the northwest corner of El Cerrito Park. So there would still be tennis at El Cerrito Park. It would just be in a different section of the park. And because this would add a new amenity to that park, an additional amenity, there is a, a option here to add additional parking, which we believe could provide up to fifty additional parking spaces over in the northeast corner of the park. This option would give a net gain of twelve pickleball courts and no, no net impact to the tennis courts. New option eight is to construct eleven new pickleball courts on the vacant parcel at El Cerrito Park and the adjacent basketball courts. Because we would be constructing pickleball over the basketball courts, it would be proposed to move those basketball courts up to that northwest corner of the park and then construct that additional parking, because again, there would be an additional amenity added to that park. This would have a net gain of eleven pickleball courts and no net impact to the number of tennis courts. Option nine is taking El Cerrito Park off the table altogether and looking to Butterfield Park. Butterfield was selected because our park and rec master plan requires that pickleball courts, or recommends that pickleball courts be constructed a minimum of three hundred and fifty feet from homes or ideally five hundred feet from homes. We do not have any park sites in the city, other than El Cerrito and Butterfield, that provide that distance from homes. So Butterfield was proposed as another location for pickleball that meets those, those distance requirements from residential areas. This option would give a net gain of ten pickleball courts, and it would have no impact to the number of tennis courts in the city. So this slide here just gives a overview of the pros and cons and the costs for each of these options. Just to go over this briefly, for option six, which is to construct the twelve pickleball courts at El Cerrito and then convert Border back to two tennis courts. The, the pros for this is that this is the closest to the budget. Due to the conversion of the tennis courts, the estimated cost is about one point two million. El Cerrito is the preferred location for pickleball by the pickleball community. It maintains the current number of tennis courts in the city, and it alleviates the pickleball impacts on the border neighborhood. Cons are that there could be some potential impacts to parking at El Cerrito Park. It's a heavily-used park, and adding a, a popular amenity like this could impact the parking there. And it also removes the tennis courts from El Cerrito Park. Options seven and eight have very similar pros and cons for both of those. Costs for both of these are significantly higher due to the construction of the parking area that is part of these two options. But the pros for these are that the conversion of tennis courts for option seven would save a little bit of money over option eight. Both options provide the preferred location for pickleball for the pickleball community, and it ma, they maintain the current number of tennis courts and keeps the tennis courts at El Cerrito Park. Cons are that it adds another use to a very highly-programmed park, and there could be impacts for that. Sorry, let me go back. And then option nine is the Butterfield option. Again, cost for this is above budget. We have two point three million, just over that, estimated at the project cost. Pros for this option is that it does not impact any other park uses. So going to Butterfield, we do have the space to be able to build pickleball there without impacting any other amenities at the park. It maintains the current number of tennis courts in the city, keeps the tennis courts that we have at El Cerrito Park, and Butterfield provides that distance from the homes, which I discussed earlier. Cons are that this is not the preferred location for pickleball by the pickleball community. They have expressed dissatisfaction with the site. So this slide here just gives an overall comparison of the costs for each of these projects, going through options one through five, which were presented at the August sixth meeting. As you can see, the costs for these are much lower because they all involve conversions of existing courts. When we get to option six, again, that one is, is within the range of the budget, but options seven and eight are significantly higher. We have the breakdown here of the actual court construction costs, as well as the parking costs, parking being more than half of the total project cost. And then Butterfield, again, is higher than the budget at two point three million. And then this slide just shows the overall cost per court comparison. Again, when you convert the existing courts to pickleball, we do have a significant savings there. The options that have the higher cost per court are areas where it is proposed to construct courts on vacant land. So if council were to consider any of the new options presented tonight, options six through nine, there is a funding gap for each of these. Again, option six is the closest to the budget with just over a hundred thousand dollar funding gap. But when you get into options seven or eight, that gap gets significantly larger. Option seven having over two point eight million in funding gap and option, I'm sorry, option seven, two point eight million, and option eight, two point nine million. The gap does drop a little bit for option nine, but it is still at just over one point two million. So if the council were to consider those options, we do have some potential projects that we would ask for some direction on to be able to potentially reallocate those fundings, or that funding. These projects are listed here. It includes the Auburndale Park Amenities Improvement Project, which we have one point five million currently budgeted for that. The improvements at Promenade Park are just over a million dollars budgeted. We have several park playground replacements that are budgeted at eight hundred and fifty thousand. River Road Park improvements at five hundred and fifty thousand. Promenade Park field lighting at four seventy-five, and park shade installations at just over four hundred thousand. So again, this is the presentation with the updates. Our ask is that the council provides direction on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards in the public on this?
Mayor, yes, we have five speaker cards for this item.
Okay, come on down. Joe?
That's just straight-up rude. I can't believe you'd do this. I mean, these people, you, you could sit there, the last pickleball discussion took two, three hours. You got nine alternatives up there about pickleball. No, nobody gives a shit about pickleball. These people are here, they brought everybody together and waited. I can't wait for something that's been up here for ten years. But you could put this in order and handle it with a respect. This is the, just example of the disrespect and dismissive nature of this city. This is a consequential issue. You want to take these people's property and take these people's livelihood, and then you kick it to after some nonsense about pickleball. Nobody gives a shit about pickleball.
I would say, Joe, that you are absolutely wrong because we had two hours of public comment from pickleball and tennis community last time. And they've been coming and coming and coming, and they've been working hard behind the scenes. So yeah, I thought, and I knew it would be quicker tonight. Sir, go ahead.
All right, talking about livelihood. Hello, council and mayor. My name is Antonio Naya. I live directly next to the Border Park pickleball courts. I want to be very clear. This has been an ongoing issue for over a year. I've sent multiple videos and recordings during this time, including one recently. I sent to each one of you, showing the constant yelling, the nonstop popping of the pickleball paddles and the crowds parking all over our homes. This isn't occasional, this is every single day occurrence. Our neighborhood has been patient. I personally reached out many times, hoping something would improve. But honestly, nothing has changed on our end. The noise still hits our walls, we still lose parking to nonresidents, and the disturbances start early and run all day, like you said, night and the morning. And now, the city is building more pickleball courts in other areas. But this one hasn't been relocated. Pickleball is growing fast, and that's fine. But it was a mistake to put a high-traffic, high-noise sport right inside a quiet residential neighborhood, full of people who work all day and deserve peace when they come home. Tennis never created anything like this. Pickleball is loud, nonstop, and draws large groups. It simply doesn't belong in the middle of homes. We're not asking for anything unreasonable. We're asking for balance and relief. Please prioritize relocating these courts or enforcing real limits so our homes, our actual lives, aren't disturbed every day. I sent you guys lots of videos. I'm at home, literally like right here, and all I hear is just paddleboards all day long. I live directly behind it. You guys are talking about making distance, making new courts or whatever. Why didn't you guys do that with this court? We live in a really, really crowded neighborhood. There's a school, there's parks. We don't need nonresidents coming into our area and taking over our parking, taking over our homes, yelling. I want to go home and relax after a long day of work, not come here. But it looks like this ain't going to be my last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for sending that video too, by the way. I appreciate it. Good evening.
I, I don't have much of a voice, but my name is Alice Wagner. I've been a resident of Corona since the mid-sixties. So I've been around a while, and I'm one of the dreaded pickleball people. I, after hearing all of the serious things you deal with, I know pickleball is very low on the totem pole, but it brings a lot of joy and social interaction to people of all ages. I empathize with the gentlemen from the neighborhood, and that's why we're trying to find a more rational site for pickleball. I also want to say Larry Barriel, our Corona pickleball ambassador, was unable to be here tonight, but wishes he could have been. And that's all I'll say. Now I'm going to try to talk really fast. After considerable time, energy, and money were put into developing a Parks and Rec master plan, some two-plus years ago, we're finally moving forward on pickleball facility for Corona citizens. The options being considered include Butterfield Park, due to frequent windy conditions there. Due to frequent windy conditions there, it's not conducive to daily pickleball play. It would be money and effort wasted to build pickleball courts there. All other options proposed involve repurposing tennis or basketball courts at El Cerrito Park, which adds to the cost of replacing those courts elsewhere in the city. 18 tennis courts are apparently in our, our city. But let's see what those look like. Photo one shows a court at Mountain Gate, perhaps our busiest tennis site. It has looked like this for years and is just plain embarrassing. Photo two is a court at Auburndale Park. Those courts aren't suitable to walk on, much less play tennis on. Finally, photo three is Mangular Park. Is this what we consider adequate playing conditions? No wonder the tennis players are concerned. What they have now isn't great and they certainly don't want to lose any decent courts. Have all possible sites in El Cerrito Park been considered? Are there other options besides tennis or basketball courts? The heavy use of this park for soccer and football creates a very crowded venue and a parking nightmare. With or without the addition of pickleball in this park, these overcrowding and parking issues need to be addressed. Please slow down and consider all possible option, options for the master plan's pickleball facility before, before voting on options that are only repurposing tennis or basketball courts. Thank you.
Thanks, Alice.
My name is Mike Wagner. I've been a Corona resident since 1961, seen a lot of changes, and we're undoubtedly going to see more. I would like to first off, thank Donna and Moses and their staff, all the work they've put in, the research they've done. They've done a great job putting up some options as to what we might or might not be able to do. Secondly, I would like to disagree with the gentleman who said there's just no one that gives a shit about pickleball. There are a good number of people in this town that give a shit about pickleball and that's why the other gentleman was complaining about all the noise. There's a lot of us and it is a noisy game. As you heard from the proposal tonight, and it's various options, I want you to please keep in mind a couple of things. First of all, no one is looking to take amenities from one group to give them to another. Most of the options you saw tonight involve repurposing tennis courts to pickleball courts in one manner or another. Several possible combinations were shown. If tennis courts are converted to pickleball courts, there will likely be new tennis courts built to replace the lost ones. That means more cost to the city. This can triple the cost of the project, not a fair reflection on the pickleball community, nor fair to taxpayers. We are the fastest-growing sport in America and we deserve our sports amenities just like all other groups. What about a different approach? One that is not included in tonight's proposal. Rather than concentrate on only court space, let's look at any possible open space. If the undersized soccer field at El Cerrito were to be repurposed as a pickleball site, several advantages may arise. Replacement tennis courts are no longer needed. No demo is needed. Minimal grading at the site because it's already flat. Minimal electrical work as stadium lighting already exists. There's room for 12 to 14 courts and 30 more parking spaces in a heavily impacted park. No tennis courts were taken. But wait, did we just steal the soccer field? No, we repurposed an open space to create the pickleball complex the PRMP says we should have. The soccer and football programs can simply modify their schedules and move those games or practices from this field at El Cerrito to any of, any number of Corona's other parks. Many of them have days of little or no use. Some lights are turned off while El Cerrito Park is busting at the seams. This can be done without losing facilities. Simply make better use of what is out there. Pickleball wins, tennis wins, soccer and football play on. Isn't this worth a look? Can we maybe wait one month and have this option checked out? We all deserve that.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, thanks. I'm a resident of Corona, I have kids that play tennis, I play tennis. We, you know, it's limited, there's limited resources to go out there and play tennis. And, you know, we go where we can to find courts. And so I go to lots of different courts and then we try to get in there and play. And one thing you guys are not considering is a tennis court can be overrun by pickleball players. And you could fit maybe four times amount of pickleball players in a tennis area, but it only takes like two or three people that want to play pickleball to take up the entire space because there are tennis courts and they go, I can, I can play, you know, pickleball where there's tennis, but I can't go and play tennis where there's pickleball. So we need to err more on tennis court sides. Think about what's going on here. I mean, this is, think, think about the games it's playing, think about the dynamics. I mean, I don't think these studies are working out too well. They're not really like empirical, people don't know what's going on there. So, so many times I want to go play tennis, big old giant area that could support 12 pickleball players, and there's two pickleball players taking up that entire space because they can play tennis, they can play pickleball on a tennis space. And they're always doing it. And so if you're going to make pickleball courts, put them right next to the tennis courts. That way, when I go to play tennis and there's people in the pickleball, in the tennis courts, say, hey, there's pickleball right there. So it's a little bit more obvious, you know, don't overrun and take up 10 times the space you need so I don't have any space. You know, they need to think about different options. And then I think the pickleball court should be right next to tennis courts. So you can say, hey, don't take up my court, go right there because it's right there. So it's a little bit more obvious. It's, it's really a pain in the butt. I mean, it's really rude for somebody to come play, and it says on the signs, tennis use only. Nobody listens to that. Nobody. So that's just my piece. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Sylvia, I thought you said there's only five speakers.
Hi, Lydia Hitzner again. I'm a pickleball player and I play a border and I'm a very happy senior. And I really, really wish and pray and hope that you guys don't take away your border courts. I think that Corona seniors have the right to be happy and to feel young again. I do. Due to fibromyalgia, I have a lot of physical limitations, believe it or not, and people sees me and they don't know, but God, I know how hard it is for me to move, especially in winter. Cold is my enemy. And I really enjoy playing a border. I'm there three times a week. And, you know, I can understand what the gentleman was saying. I'm there at 8 o'clock in the morning and we wait for 8 o'clock so then, you know, we don't disturb the neighbors. But I think that there's a good option. I heard about no sound pickleball balls or something like that. So maybe we can do that, you know? I, I heard it before and I haven't done any research on it, but let's, let's let our seniors in Corona be happy and feel young again. You know, I never heard of this, ever. And now that I have the opportunity or that most of seniors or people retire with disabilities have the opportunity to enjoy life and to enjoy our elderly years, I think it's something to consider. There's a, you know, a crowd that, that are younger than us, but then, you know, the point is I don't want to lose my pickleball courts. I really don't. And if there's a solution, I would like to be part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lydia.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Mike Munoz. Just to give you some context here before I get in, if you indulge me for a minute. My parents moved to Corona in 1973, so I've, I've been a product of Corona. And in 1977, my parents started CYTL, Corona Youth Tennis League. It changed into Corona Youth Tennis Foundation, simply for the reason why I didn't have anybody to play tennis with back in, back then when I started playing tennis. And so they started that league so that I would have someone to play tennis with. And that league has since grown. I think now in 2020, it kind of went away and it was at Kellogg Park. The other thing I want to let you know is that I am a product of Corona School District. I'm a product of these tennis courts. And something that hasn't been brought up tonight is that there's actually been a net loss of tennis courts in this city. Border Park, because I actually used to practice my serve on those courts, those were tennis courts originally. They went over to pickleball, which I'm all for, by the way. And by the way, I love both sports quite a bit. And I do believe that Mr. Wagner spoke earlier, and quite eloquently I might add, about solutions. So I'm, I'm really happy to see that I think there's a middle ground to be had here. I think that we can make both communities quite happy. But I am approaching this from a different standpoint in that I'm also the head coach at Santiago High School. And I have seen hundreds and hundreds of kids that come through my program. And Corona tennis as a whole, not just Santiago, but Corona High School's had a CIF championship. The various schools within our area have gone to CIF quarterfinals year after year after year. And that's not in a vacuum. That's because we have places like El Cerrito Park. You know, what I'm advocating for this evening is keep the two courts. If you want to move them within El Cerrito, fine, but our Santiago players, many Corona players, what they'll do is they'll warm up on those courts and then head off to Orange Counter and head off to these tournaments. And they're representing Corona, they're representing all of us. And a lot of these young tennis players, they will someday convert to pickleball at some point. I play both sports. Pickleball not as well, but I'm trying. So I'm open to all of it. So I think that there is middle ground to be reached here. I hope you consider that. I loved option eight and I loved possibly moving the courts at El Cerrito, but keeping them at El Cerrito. So to be clear, I'm advocating for keeping two courts at El Cerrito and finding a way to help the pickleball community. And also one fun fact, the USTA is trying to reach 1 million additional players by 2030. So yes, pickleball is a growing sport, but so is tennis, both so much. So thank you for consideration. I appreciate your time and I'm out. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Carlos Tejadas. My third time speaking at city council. I'm here representing the tennis players at El Cerrito. Tennis has been a huge part of my life. I wouldn't be the person, player I am today if there weren't sufficient public spaces available for me to play. I worked my, I worked my way to captain of my high school team. That wouldn't have been possible without public courts. I wouldn't have gotten a scholarship at USC if it wasn't for me playing tennis, making it to captain, if it wasn't for public courts. It's one of the most popular sports in the world. The United States has the most players in the world, that's about 25 million from this last year, 2024. Our courts is just as crowded as the pickleball courts. If I'm not waiting for tennis players to get off the court, I'm waiting for pickleball players to get off our courts. It's the same issue. On El Cerrito, I currently train with some of the Santiago, Santiago High School kids. You'd be taking away these courts from one of the best teams in Riverside County. If it's not the best team in Riverside County, it's one of the best teams. These kids work hard to do the same, same exact thing I did. Get to captain, be good at tennis, get a good scholarship at a good college. 50% of those 25 million in the entire US of total tennis players use public facilities as their main place to play. It costs about $3,000 to have a, to have a country club membership. Okay, so 58% of all those total players are under the age of 34. We know tennis is a young man's sport. I'll do the math for you, that's 15 million players in the US. 10 million of those 15 million are under the age of 25. Most of those young people don't have the money, don't have the resources, their parents don't have the resources because they're paying for their college, their kid's college tuition to pay for private facilities. Public tennis courts, as the lady from pickleball said earlier, are already poorly maintained. And the fact that new pickleball courts are getting built, it just doesn't really sit right with, I don't think that sits right with anyone. I, I don't know how that looks. You're driving good tennis players away from Corona. Again, we have the most, we have one of the best high school tennis teams in all of Corona. You're going to try to make them go to Riverside, go somewhere far to have to play. Doesn't sit right, you're going to add more traffic to the area from the pickleball that I can tell you right now, there's already barely any places to park in that park because of the soccer games, because of the baseball, because of the football, basketball, everything that goes on there. It's already a very busy space. You would definitely need to add parking just to make that feasible. There's plenty of extra space at El Cerrito. Talked about that, add more parking. I don't know, just in conclusion, you shouldn't pit, you shouldn't pit pickleball and tennis people against each other. We're both a good community. Like, like the last gentleman said, a lot of tennis players go to pickleball, a lot of pickleball players play tennis. This is both of our issues. You shouldn't be pitting us against each other. We should all have our own public spaces to work out. And I know that's your guys', it's a job to figure out, so thank you.
Thanks, Carlos. All right, looks like our last speaker, maybe?
Hello. My name is Wyatt Williams. I'm a passionate tennis player and these courts have made a huge difference on my tennis career. I plan to play for the Santiago tennis team in the spring. I practice on these El Cerrito courts in or from three to even five or six days a week. With the absence of these courts, it could significantly affect me and my future teammates. It would give us less of an opportunity to practice, which could also affect our season this spring. If these courts end up being removed, it would make the other courts more crowded. And these other courts also only have a 45-minute time limit to practice if they're being used and they're full. This is not nearly enough time for any of us tennis players to practice, as I usually practice for hours at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Solomon Perez. Nice to see you again. But I just wanted to come up here and kind of address just the imbalance here. I feel like you guys are really listening to the pickleball players when it comes to their complaints and their concerns about how they want to play and how they want their courts. But have you really considered the tennis players and how we want our courts, about how we want to keep them? Because it feels like three more options got added and we're back here, what, a couple months later, the exact same thing? And for what? For more money to be spent? But I also just want to bring up the school, the school next door. Have they been contacted? Have they been talked to? Because obviously we hear some residents in the border courts complaining about the pickleball courts. So have you contacted the school? Because that's going to be a noise complaint for the school if pickleball courts are placed there. If anything, I want to definitely keep the two tennis courts there at El Cerrito. And if, you know, you feel inclined to put pickleball courts, place them way off in the corner, closer to the freeway, away from the school, away from residential areas. And just really keep that in mind because kids' education is important and we don't want them being disrupted by the noise or else we'd be getting them coming in complaining instead of the residents of border. So, thank you.
Thanks, Solomon. Harvey, Harvey's Auto Tech compelled to talk about pickleball. 20 seconds. East Sixth Street Park. Build pickleball courts, build tennis courts. There's enough room there. Done. Solve the problem.
Okay, I have a solution. Put the pickleball in the back. You already need parking, so that really shouldn't be added to this and leave the tennis players alone. I live near there, I love to see all the activities. Let's bring some more activities, but leave the tennis courts alone. Okay? Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right. Seeing no other speakers, let's see, where are we at here? Any questions from my colleagues? Questions, comments? Go ahead with your comments.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I've been pretty steadfast about wanting to fix this solution and I'm glad that there was a bunch of speakers here again today. Yeah, or yeah, well, the proposal, I think, there's a couple of things missing here. But most importantly, this can be achieved without taking something away from a Any questions for my colleagues? Questions, comments? Go ahead and with your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been pretty steadfast about wanting to fix this solution. And I'm glad that there was a bunch of speakers here again today. Yeah, or yeah, well, the proposal, I think, there's a couple of things missing here. But most importantly, this can be achieved without taking something away from a different community, right? So we don't need to take away from tennis to give to pickleball. Or more importantly, we don't need to take away from some of our spaces for some of our other field sports. I'm baffled that we're, we've got eight options at El Cerrito. This is already a very busy park. And you add pickleball to this, it's going to be a parking nightmare. Options one through eight are parking nightmare is the con. Right? It's not going to be good. Yeah, so I think that one of the things that we have to look at is we all have to take a look at a lesson from our own personal finances. When you want something, you have to save for it sometimes. And while we have set aside about $1.1 million, I think the problem is, is we're trying to shove pickleball at a park that it doesn't belong at. We've had a couple options to, or a couple times that we've now built pickleball courts, they've been rushed and they haven't worked out well because they haven't been thought through. And so what needs to be done here is we need to have more time to come up with an actual solution. Pickleball deserves great courts. Tennis deserves great courts. Residents deserve not to have to be bothered by the sound of pickleball. So there is a solution. Option number nine, putting them at Butterfield. We can mitigate wind, but I am not advocating at all to take away from some of the other parks that were listed in this presentation, some of the upgrades that we are doing to some of these parks. The solution, I think, is twofold. Number one, we need to save the amount of money to build an actual pickleball facility. And I think Butterfield is a great option. I think we can mitigate the wind, but staff needs time to figure that out. And I'm sure they could work with USA Pickleball or whoever the, whoever the organization is that oversees pickleball and come up with a good solution on how to mitigate any perceived wind challenges. That's option number one. And option number two is, in order to do that, we have to save money, which means it isn't going to happen anytime soon. And to help the residents at Border, because I don't want to take away those courts until we have something built, we need to institute the silent paddles. Not everybody is going to be happy, but that's a compromise that at the end of the day makes a win-win. I would like to see beautiful courts built at Butterfield for pickleball. If you put pickleball at El Cerrito, then when they're built, we're going to have droves of residents coming in saying, parking is a nightmare. I'm not willing to deal with that. Not willing to take away from somebody else. Let's put it at Butterfield. Let's save for it. And let's institute quiet paddles at Border. That's the only win-win that I see. Those are my comments, man.
Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody that spoke and for how many times you guys have come back. And I, when this first came up at Butterfield, I was the one that said, this is not going to work because it's windy. I have, grew up here. I played baseball, I went to my kids' softball games there. Unless you're building a building, there's no way to avoid the wind. And if that's the case, you're talking, you know, millions more. I 1,000% agree with you. The parking at El Cerrito is a nightmare. And if you're going to add something, you're going to have to take something away or move it somewhere else. So I do like the idea of finding a way to either move, you know, the soccer field to a different field in the city. There are, we have other fields that are not being, you know, fully utilized. I think I've talked about that in another time. I do think that the folks that live next to Border Park need some relief. And I don't want to keep putting that off. And I think that they've suffered enough. And whether or not people use these paddles or use the balls that don't make noise, who's mitigating, I mean, who's going to be, you know, doing it anyway? I think that the solution here is, I like the recommended compromise with one exception, one that we move the tennis court to the empty lot. So that gets its own court kind of away. And then you have all the pickleball players playing together. And then that court that's next to the homes, either that goes back to basketball or goes to tennis. So I'm in favor of option five with the option that we find a way to either study additional impacts of what the parking would be at El Cerrito, whether that's moving, you know, moving soccer or doing something else there. You're right. I mean, I've driven by there on a Friday night, it's a mess. And if you're adding in, you know, pickleball, when we're talking 64 players at a time, there isn't 64 parking spaces. So whether that's expanding the parking at El Cerrito or finding another solution. But I do think we need to move forward in some ways, just so folks get, you know, some kind of relief. And we've been promising pickleball additional space that you not want to take away from tennis. And I like the idea of having tennis courts in different parts of the city like we always have. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have questions because of these two yahoos. Donna, is, is staff currently looking at reprogramming El Cerrito Park to be less congested? Is that something that's taking place right now?
It is not. So we did some traffic counts at El Cerrito. The peak usage is really Friday nights. That's when the Friday Night Lights group is out there. They use that park heavily for soccer, I'm sorry, for football. But that is not a consistent use that we see at the park throughout the week. It's Friday nights where you see a huge spike in participation. So if pickleball were to be recommended for that site, we have talked to the pickleball community about potentially not doing organized play for pickleball on Friday nights because that's where we would have significant impacts, where we believe significant impacts would be for traffic.
But the other six days of the week are more manageable, right?
It's much lower, yes. It's much lower than Friday nights.
Okay. And then my other question, can you put up option five again, just so I can see it? That's kind of where I'm at. So for El Cerrito Park, do you see how there's the four pickleball courts on the left? Can you take the four pickleball courts on the right and put them where the tennis court is? And then the tennis court where the, where those four, like switch them?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay.
Isn't the tennis courts going east and west now? And that's a problem for tennis players?
It would be going east and west.
Why would it be a problem?
The sun.
Sun? Okay. Never mind. Yeah. I didn't think it through. With that, I'm option five. I also agree with Tony. I think when you buy a home, you have a reasonable expectation of some peace and quiet. And so I would like to see quiet paddles instituted as well. And those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Jackie.
You know, when I was in favor of the, well, first of all, thank you so much for your continued engagement. I know this is your third meeting. There are numerous hours that have been invested in educating us and sending your public comments, in emailing, in reaching out. And, you know, it's all part of democracy. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for being here tonight. And I really appreciate your engagement. I was in support of the pause because I wanted to see the impact of the Eagle Glen Courts on the use of the pickleball courts. And it seems like it hasn't made an impact. My main concern is budgetary. And so since it hasn't made an impact, clearly, you know, the, I'm in support of moving forward and in continuing our pursuit of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So this is a really intentional document that took a lot of time and a lot of work to assess the needs, the spaces, where we wanted to be in the future. And so that's the guiding document. And the guiding document says, you know, these are how many courts we need. And that's, that's where it's all coming from. So I wanted to be very clear about that. So since the use has not gone down, I'm in favor of, you know, no longer pausing on this and delivering on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. That being said, I am not in favor of increasing the cost of this project. And of the options before us, I'm actually in favor of option six, which would give the Border community their, the courts back to tennis. And I would be in favor of seeing that empty space maybe converted back into a basketball court. I'd want to know what the, where the Parks Master Plan lies on, on the quantity of basketball courts. Are we short any? Are we, are we over? What would be the best use of that graded out spot?
So Park and Rec Master Plan says that we need one additional basketball court.
There you go. This option serves everything. It stays, keeps us on track for the Parks Master Plan. It gives the pickleball, the Border community back their part, converting it back to tennis, hitting the goals for the basketball court. And it gives us the necessary courts in El Cerrito to hit the Parks Master Plan for pickleball. And it does not break the bank. I'm in favor of option six.
All right, thank you.
What was the cost of option six?
$100,000 more.
$100,000 more? Okay.
Yeah. So the pickleball leadership of their community has, have been very involved with some of the discussions. And yeah, Border Park, or I'm sorry, Butterfield, that would be great if it wasn't that windy. And I don't know what the wind options are. I don't know how they could be mitigated, but I do know that the pickleball community said there's no way in hell that you could do pickleball there. I like option six as well because it's cleaner. It solves the noise issue at Border Park. Yes, you could do option five and keep a court at El Cerrito, but then you're getting into the quiet paddles, which the pickleball community hates quiet paddles because it's just not the same apparently. But yes, you could do a quiet paddle pickleball court at Border Park or quiet paddles during this timeframe. I don't know how it would work as far as enforcement. I think that's probably the challenge. That's, that's why I think it's just option six is a clean. No one loses anything. Yes, the tennis players at El Cerrito will have to go to Border. And yes, the Border players, pickleball players will have to go to El Cerrito. But Donna, so, but with option five or six, is parking going to be something that's, or is it just a Friday night thing that we can somehow try to control?
We believe Friday night would be the evening where we would have the biggest impact. And again, we have talked to the pickleball community to see if there's willingness to, not to organize play on that night. They have expressed some openness to that, so we can continue those discussions.
I mean, I don't know how we police that.
Can we lock, can we lock the courts on Friday nights from like 4:00 PM on?
If that's the direction of the council, we could do that.
I'll, I'll go to option six. I'm down with that. And I do like the idea of pausing on Friday nights, Friday evenings.
Or we could see what happens first.
We're not going to see, let's not kid ourselves. They're going to continue to play. And at nights during the year where it's lighter, darker, they're going to continue to play. No matter what the word is, lock the gates, call it a day. We're already taking away from the tennis players. They're going to, they're going to continue to play and they're going to jam up parking. It's going to be a nightmare.
Okay.
I like that, I support that.
Option six?
I'll do that.
Six with, with the pickleball courts being closed on Fridays.
Friday night.
Well, Friday, Friday evening, when there's, when there's an event or something at the soccer field.
Okay, make that motion.
I'm not in favor of that option. I'm sorry, I stick to my option six with, with the tennis, with the basketball court. I'm not in favor of regulating the time. Just to be clear. So if that's the motion, I just want to be clear about my vote.
Anyone else has anything to say? Okay. Then let's go.
So the motion is six with that gray spot turning into a basketball court, but you want to lock the gates on pickleball in El Cerrito on Friday nights. That's the motion on the floor.
Yes.
And then there's a first and a second for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Mayor, we're going to need a voice vote for this item. Councilmember DeDario?
No.
Councilmember speak?
Yes.
Councilmember Richens?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casillas?
No.
Mayor Steiner?
Yes.
And the item passes.
Okay. Let's move on to 9.1. All right, so this is, so obviously this one is very controversial. And amateurization is, this is the first I've heard of amateurization on Thursday night. And I think that's the case with all of us. But I wanted to, I wanted, let me look here. I wanted to first have Mr. Joel Belding present this item to us. Yeah, you can sit down. We got a few minutes, guys, so you're not standing the whole time unless you want to.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So just to preface this, the spirit of this presentation is really just to talk about a tool that some cities have used to accomplish changes in their downtown mix or in land uses overall within their cities. It's just a tool that city governments have to better guide the development of their cities. So the specific ask before you tonight is simply to hear the presentation and then provide direction as you feel appropriate to staff on this topic. No specific recommendation to implement or to start a process at all. So the 2022 Downtown Revitalization Plan, which is really sort of the foundation for a lot of the work that we do in the downtown area, in addition to the overall citywide strategic plan that's built on tremendous public outreach, has provided a lot of guidance to staff and ideally to the city council as terms of focusing our daily efforts to make sure we're all pointed in the right direction and accomplishing the major goals that the community is really expecting to see from the city. So there are additional tools outside of, there's about a dozen that are listed in that Downtown Revitalization Plan. That's a list right there, catalyst projects, which we have, fixing the zoning, which was done at the end of last year, enhanced safety sense of place, funding, additional housing, and in addition to a couple other elements there. But there are additional tools outside of that Downtown Revitalization Plan that we thought might be helpful just for the council to understand going forward as ways to assist or amplify or alter what's happening in the downtown over time. So one of those items is amateurization. And looking at just a select range of uses that are in the downtown today, some auto repair, vehicle rentals, those are the most prevalent of these types of uses. They're considered non-conforming. So the zoning today does not allow them to be a new auto repair business to open within the downtown area. And that decision, it's not a recent decision, that goes back actually 26 years with the adoption of the very first specific plan for downtown. That really sort of charted a new course of shifting it from sort of an anything goes downtown to a really focused downtown development plan focused on revitalizing, bringing back that active downtown that serves the residents, that provide shopping and dining employment opportunities, the types of things that we're actually close to accomplishing now between the South Mall, the North Mall, and then a lot of the other projects that the city's working on today. So these are targeted simply because they are not permitted by zoning today. And they've not been permitted by zoning for more than two and a half decades. But we still have those uses in the downtown. So this amateurization process is a way that the city could look at to address some of those. So those uses, when they were originally pulled out of there, it's based on this misunderstanding that certain uses are impediments to new investment. So if you want to bring in new employment, new housing, the adjacent land uses are really as important as the new development on the specific site in terms of creating cohesive neighborhoods, cohesive downtowns. And so that when the city council two and a half decades ago decided to remove those, it was under that conscious decision of certain land uses are inappropriate for the direction that we want downtown to head in. There are also other, two other uses that are listed, massage and hotel. I can't speak to the particulars in this city, but in some cities, short-term stay motels are sources of increased criminal activity, additional calls for service, as are massage parlors. And so that's probably why those particular land uses were at some point removed by a city council from this downtown area, simply to address overall potentially blighting conditions. So auto repair, that's the most prevalent of these non-conforming uses within the area. We have 14 sort of spaced evenly across the core of Sixth Street, which is really where we're focusing city efforts with the street modifications and with some of the catalyst projects. That's really the core of the city activities, the focal point for city activities to revitalize downtown. And so if these uses are impediments to new investment, then then looking closely at how best to remove that impediment or clean those uses up is a tool that could be valuable for the city to examine. Auto sales, also another, this is more limited, but we still have these. Again, the city council two and a half decades ago decided that these were inappropriate. And subsequent city councils, every time the downtown specific plan came back, had that chance to reopen the books, declined to because I think there's a consistent understanding that certain uses are inconsistent with the overall future of downtown that we're hoping for. Car washes too, that's, there's one very close to the center. And then again, motels, there's a number of motels strung along Sixth Street where there could be additional calls for service. There could be some problematic elements or activities happening at these motels that could deter, uh, new uses or new development coming in. So there's a couple ways that non-conforming uses naturally transition. So one is just land value, market conditions. There's customer support. If people stop going to a business, it'll close. Under the current zoning standards, it would then transition to some other allowable use under the downtown specific plan. There's direct acquisitions. If the city had extra money, they could go directly purchase some of, some or all of these uses and then expedite that transition to a fully conforming downtown from a zoning perspective. Or you could entice private development to come in there and start acquiring some of these sites to help that transition. Amortization provides that third category of tool where the city could recognize that these businesses still have a useful life, but set an established time period, a predictable time period to start that process of phasing them out over time. And again, this is a legal tool. It's a zoning tool that every city has access to. It's something that's used nationwide. There's plenty of examples of cities in California using this for targeted uses, either in downtown areas, uh, a city of Culver. The city of Culver City, for example, used it to eliminate oil wells that were present in their downtown area that were really impediments. It's also been tested in the courts. It's a, it's a known, a known and understood tool that could work. So I'll walk you through various components. It's a very targeted approach and you have to go through a lengthy process to understand each individual business that you're including in this amortization process. It's not a one-size-fits-all sort of agnostic program. You have to understand each business, whether it's owned or leased, the, how much investment they've put into the building, how old the building is, how much further productive life you have in that building. And then you have to understand and sort of establish a case as to why these particular uses are some, in some way harmful to the downtown or to the overall operations for the area. And it's really case by case for each business. It's a very localized understanding if you do move forward with this. And then there's various components that are required within these ordinances to be effective and to be implementable. There's an established timeframe. There's an administrative appeal process where individual businesses can come to the city council and explain why they should be exempted or be given additional time. And there's also, I, I just want to point out, so the non-conforming businesses today under the current zoning standards, and this is really a, a universal thing that cities view. If a business, let's say there's an earthquake, a building is significantly damaged, there, there are provisions where they could not rebuild. If there's a fire that significantly damages a building, they again would, would have to cease operations.
Please, guys, let them talk. You'll get your chance.
And then if there's also, if a business closes, let's say it's, uh, searching for a new owner, an auto repair place closes, it's closed for six months and one day, it loses its non-conforming status and then could not reopen as an auto repair. It would need to convert, that land use would need to convert to something that's allowable within the downtown specific plan. There's also, uh, at the end of the process, assuming where, where cities have implemented this instead of timeframe, there's a, an established time, uh, an established process at the end of that amortization cycle where you're providing notice. There's a recorded document that goes against title. So if it does change hands, all future buyers are fully aware of this amortization process that is started. There's enforcement tools that the city could use for businesses that then refuse to close after, at the end of that amortization cycle. So there's a list of pros and cons. Again, there's lots of cities that if the city council wanted to explore this, there's lots of cities to, uh, where we could interact with to understand how their processes have worked, what they would change if they could start it again from fresh to really learn and craft a particular program that works best for Corona here. And again, the, the point to really highlight here is it's not an, it's not an ignorant process. It very much involves working with every single business to understand their particular needs, their particular investments in their site and their long-term plans. The cons here obviously would be legal challenges from the individual businesses that are included in that amortization process. And it does have a direct and negative impact to those businesses because it forces them to leave their sites. That's something, that's, there's no hiding that fact. It is a direct impact. And then it's also a long-term process where this city council would say hypothetically, start a 10-year period to amortize these out. Then some future city council would then have to deal with the actual closing of that amortization process where individual businesses could be here 10 years from now arguing for their, uh, delays in their amortization process. So if the city council ever wanted to consider this, they would provide direction to staff on which uses would be included in that. And then things like how long the time period be, should be. And it's not a one-size-fits-all time period. For each individual use, you could establish separate timeframes. There's triggers for immediate termination where the city could, after year two, could approach a business and directly buy them out if they didn't want to wait the additional eight years for them to close. And then there's appeal procedures that you would set up to, to understand if a business has some particular issue that requires special attention, the city council would have the ability to modify the process just for them to recognize that use. So I'll skip over this. I don't think we're at the point where we're requesting direction from the city council. But I've sort of touched on the highlights here. I know we have a lot of people that are interested in speaking about this. And again, this is just presented as an idea, a potential tool that the city council, it should be aware of as it moves forward with the overall downtown revitalization. So I'll conclude my presentation right now, but I'm certainly available for any questions that you might have.
Well, I just had, um, one for now, but, so this agenda item is only intended to see if we want to further explore to understand this more?
That's correct. And it was really, and I know certainly circulating in the community, I've gotten a lot of, uh, questions about, well, what are you going to do? You know, people are very interested in what's happening in downtown. They recognize that there are certain uses that are not consistent. And so the, a, a lot of the time I hear, what can we do about these types of uses? And so it's sort of circulating in the community and certain segments of the community. And then, so it's just, there are other tools that are available outside of the tools that we're using today and that are contemplated in the Downtown Revitalization Plan that we're just here to make the council aware of.
But how is the public supposed to know the difference when they see the agenda item come out on Thursday night? That this is just to see if we want to learn more about it versus we're gonna implement it tonight?
Sure. So this was presented, the staff report, it, the, it was really sort of a cover memo. It wasn't designed as a typical staff report that had a specific stack for recommendation. The recommendation could have been direct staff to start this process. So we structured it as just provide your input and that the staff would be, me, would be providing information to the council about this particular tool. And so I ideally read much different from the typical agenda item. And then certainly through this presentation, uh, I, I hope that it's clear that this was an informational item only for council consideration rather than specific request for direction.
No, I, I understand. It's just, this happened a couple times. It seems like where everybody gets worked up prematurely. They might get worked up at some point, but it seems prematurely if all you're asking us is, do we want to learn more? That, that's not the way that I, I really take it. But let's hear from my colleagues real quick and then we'll go to the public.
You know, I, I want to say about the, um, the tools. You know, we've been hearing about, um, for instance, there's a, a methadone clinic that's downtown. And it's, um, you know, this is a tool that is, uh, that folks use when they're battling substance abuse. And I get that it's essentially, it's, it's technically a medical, it's a medical use and it's in our medical zone. I mean, it's down the street from, or not even down the street. It's a couple doors down from the hospital. But it, it was also a couple doors down from our library. And so I know I have personally asked, um, the city manager and staff to, to learn more about the tools that we could use as a council. Because right now, we don't have anything to address something like that. The methadone clinic is, is a medical use in a medical zone. But we need to know all the tools that are available. And I appreciate the clarifying questions, um, Mayor, because we're having a whole lot of difficult conversations. And there's a, there's a lot of, um, um, there's a lot of rightly placed sensitivity around changes that are occurring, um, but also changes that have been asked of this council and previous council for, um, areas that have been ignored for, for decades. So, um, I, I, I appreciate the clarifying questions. I, I don't have any more clarifying questions, but I did want to piggyback off of your comments to share that, you know, we've, we've, we've gotten questions about, what are you guys doing with that? And like, we don't, we don't have a tool to address that. So can we learn more about what's out there? So I appreciate it. And to be clear, you're presenting, you're not recommending. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Tony, anything?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Are you just looking for comments at this point or are you looking?
Do you have any questions of him before we go to the public? Or any, do you have any thoughts on this? It's the first time we've heard, this is the first time I've heard of amortization. Okay, so I don't know what the hell it even means. So I'm, I'm trying to figure that out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, um, specific questions, but I do have some thoughts on this. But I, 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 I would imagine that we've.
You can wait if you prefer. I just ask if you had a question or comment.
I have, I have comments and some thoughts, but I'm really interested to hear what the community has to say.
Okay, Wes, anything?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I, I, you know, I had never, I knew this was a thing. I didn't know that we were talking about it here. First time I heard about it was on Thursday. And I've done a little bit of research, so I don't really have any questions. I think I have, I have, actually have a lot of questions about the, the land uses that are in the, that are listed in the table that are for the, the downtown revitalization specific plan and how it's been applied over the years. And I know that we've been pretty good about, like, if there's an automotive use. I think there was a oil change place, was that the, the car wash? That they went out and somebody else tried to go in and, and establish something else? And the city said, sorry, you, they closed for six months, you can't come back. And, but at the same time, it says you can't have veterinarians. And I know that we've put veterinarians on Sixth Street. And so somehow that squeezed through. And the fact, I think in the 1998, we said no more tow yards and impound yards in the city. And we still have one of those too. So, you know, I, I have a lot of questions, you know, and, and related to, A, how the, the 98 plan, you know, were, what we've done in the meantime. And I agree with Jackie that I think that there are some opportunities for us to look and see how this would work. But at the same time, the folks who are in this room are, they're naturally, I, I would be here too. I would be sitting in that audience right now if I had a business on Sixth Street that was potentially non-conforming. But I will say they, you know, as I, thank you for pointing that out in the beginning here, those uses have been non-conforming since 1998. So, you know, I, I think now is a time for us to explore what this really means and, and, and find out non-conforming. Maybe there's a way to be conforming without running someone out of business and, and, you know, kicking them out of town that, that offer a great service to, to the, to the citizens of the city. So that's it. Thank you.
You have anything, Tom?
Yeah, I have, I have a question for you, Joel. And you, if you don't know the answer, just tell me you don't know it. Under amortization, um, like, take the car repair people, right? And I'm sorry if I butchered your names. But, uh, under amortization, can you rezone another section of land for them to move to? Do you know if that's a possibility?
So to another part of the city? Certainly.
Yeah, so I'll give you an example. Over by Sixth Street and the 15 freeway, there's vacant land over there, right? So if you, if you're gonna tell people they need to wrap it up in 10 years, can you rezone that land so that they have a place to go to? Would, and can, would that fall under the rules of amortization?
So that would be outside of that amortization process? That would just be a zoning decision?
Okay. But it's possible, right?
Yes.
Okay. Go, go ahead. I'll wait.
I just, I, I wanted to point out that we, I looked in the 98 plan and there was amortization plan in 98, but it was only for signs. And the city was providing, providing a thousand dollars to, to those community, if, uh, if those folks changed their signs within five years. So it, there's a, there's a process and there, there was a, um, an incentive to do so. So sorry, I just wanted, I forgot to mention that.
I was gonna bring that up, Wes. Thanks a lot. On page 281. The, my, uh, my other comment is, is I, I took a deep dive into amortization this week just to study it, not just for the city of Corona, but for cities across the United States. And I've, I've learned and it's a very effective tool. It's, uh, from major cities such as Boston, New York, Milwaukee, Minneapolis, they've all used amortization to improve their cities. To smaller cities, the, the most recent cases I found in the last couple of days was, uh, Placentia used it in their downtown. Probably the most effective use of, uh, amortization was the city of Series up in Northern California. They really, uh, I don't know who those guys were, but they did it right. So, but with amortization, it's, it's, with amortization, people walk away upset and people walk away with their livelihoods, um, either relocated or gone. I mean, that's, that's just a cold reality of it, right? And that's why a lot of people are here tonight. And it would be foolish not to recognize that. And I'm proud of you all for being here tonight. You're, you're stepping up, as you should, so you're commendable there. I, uh, I just don't feel that in the progress of the downtown revitalization that we're there yet. I don't think this is a trigger that we need to pull. I think we need to come out with renderings of what the north side's gonna look like. I think we need to show the citizens abroad, not just you guys, but all of Corona citizens, where we're going with the north side, a little bit more progress in that arena and then start the process of looking into amortization. So those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and go to the public. I know you've been waiting and thank you for being patient.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Sanford. I moved to Corona, bought my first house, uh, 16 years ago. And when I came here and I was looking, one of my colleagues said to me, well, I hope you like churches and parks because there's lots of them there. And I thought that sounded great. What I didn't know at that time was that Corona has a very, very strong car culture. And what I mean by that is that we started off with our circle originally. And 20 years later, 30 years later, we started with the Corona Road Races. And we started having racing and auto aficionados be populating here as the citrus industry kind of moved out and, and that kind of thing happened. I used to sell auto insurance down the street here. I can't tell you how many households have collector cars. How many households have grandfathers, fathers, sons, grandsons that all work together to rebuild or restore a vehicle? But they don't have all the tools they need. They don't have all the services available to them. And it's really important that since we are a car culture community, that we support that. The one thing that I found since I moved here, I came from Orange County. I've been driving for 44 years and I got to tell you, I've never had a car less than three years old. I've, I've always had cars that have needed help. And I have really struggled to find an honest mechanic. Well, when I got here, I had somebody refer me to Harvey. I started using him with my cars. And I can't begin to tell you how refreshing it was for Harvey to drive my car around for three days and go, Lisa, I don't know, you just, it didn't happen again. And for the next 10 years, that same car didn't happen again. But Harvey wouldn't take a dime from me. And I think it's really important because he's instilled those values in his children. His children are here tonight. His grandchildren are here tonight. We're all here to try and keep Sixth Street kind of the way it is. Absolutely, we could beautify it. Absolutely, we can pretty it up. He's painted his building. People have put plants out. You know, there's lots of things that can be done to make it the aesthetic that we're looking for. But the idea of kicking a business out after 34 years, somebody who's built his life, setting it up so that his family could take over, i- i- it's, it's crazy to me that, that we would even be considering that. So I know that this isn't an ask right now. I know this is you guys trying to just figure out, do we even want to know about this? Think about the fact that the communities only flourish when there's variety and there's availability. People need to live where they work and work where they live and support the community, pay the taxes. We need different types of people. We need different types of businesses. And to say that an auto business is not going to help, that doesn't make any sense to us. So just, um, consider that when you think about this.
We will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hi, Chris.
Hello again, Chris McCoy, Nathan Howard. There's the old saying about walk before you run. And this is so far out. I'm gonna ask you to just say no to this tonight. There's no reason to explore this, there's no reason to look at this. This is a tool, agreed, but this tool is a sort of Damocles, that you're gonna hang over every single business's head. And they know that there's a deadline. We can't even keep the roof from leaking over a local business that we just installed in the hub. We still don't have an air conditioner. Okay? We have to fix the air conditioner at the Circle City Tavern. We're nowhere close to being able to walk down and do these secondary opportunities, which, by the way, I want to make sure that it's clear, that's what this is all listed as in the downtown plan, in the downtown revitalization plan. I read that whole thing today, just to look through it, to see if amortization is listed anywhere. And it's not. There's one sentence that mentions zoning when it's talking about the core, when it's talking about the hub and the North Mall. Then there's one section that says, any businesses, when it's talking about these secondary opportunities down Sixth, where it says economic development is gonna work with these property owners and talk to them, to help them get loans, help them find developers, help them do all these pieces to develop, that is a long process. By doing this, you're basically saying, in 10 years, this is gonna be done, or you're gonna be out. And if not, we're gonna condemn your property, basically. There is no, this is absolutely a threat. This is not friendly, like it's in the revitalization plan, when we all were like, "Hey, this is great. This is what we're doing. This is awesome as a city." What this is, is if you authorize this tonight, then you know damn well what the schedule is gonna be on this. In three months, they're gonna come back with a report, or a report or less, and then they're gonna ask you for ideas, and they're gonna move forward with that, and then they're gonna move forward again, and we're gonna have an ordinance in six months to a year. And then you're gonna have 10 years, and these folks are out. When we can work with them, our economic development can work with them, and we can do what's already in the damn plan, the plan that you all approved already. This is a tool that is not necessary, and it's a tool that is a threat to every business on Sixth. Because they didn't mention restaurants, but they're talking about fast food restaurants in the staff report. Go look at it. That's a big concern. There are five restaurants down there for those of us that actually live downtown. So what's gonna happen? Are we gonna decide that those are all not aesthetically pleasing? Are we gonna throw those out? And I, Tom, I talked to you about this. What's next? Well, I want to put in more five-over-ones, so I don't find single-family homes aesthetically pleasing. That's the only requirement on this. It's ridiculous. I'm gonna ask you to put a pin in this for two years, let them show you that they can develop the actual properties they have first, and then we can come back and look at this. Right now, this is a ridiculous ask. Absolutely ridiculous.
All right, thank you.
Photo number one, please. My name is Paul Angulo. I am the business owner for Bear Complete Car Care located at 927 West Sixth Street. May I please have photo number one? I am here today opposing the proposal to amortize the automotive shops on Sixth Street. I am here today representing my employees, our customers, the landowner, and lastly, myself and my family. Photo number two, please. Bear was established in 1955. This year marks our 70th anniversary. Our business on Sixth Street has been serving the Corona and surrounding area for over 60 years. Today, we have served over three generations of Coronans. For me, it is a great privilege and an honor to have young members of our community come through our doors and tell us that their grandparents used Bear, their fathers and mothers used Bear, and them themselves, as young drivers, use Bear for their vehicle service. I have been employed with Bear for over 24 years. A business like Bear is never sold to investors, it is handed down through family and employees. Just under three years ago, Tim O'Donnell handed the business over to me to carry it forward. Our business, be it small, is mighty and thriving today. Our projected total gross sales for this year end will surpass 3.2 million. If this proposal passes on day one, it will cause employee turnover, because after all, who wants to be employed at a business with no future? The auto repair business is not a get-rich-business. We share our earnings with our employees, and for myself, being a new business owner with little capital, this proposal would force me, at the end of 10 years, to either close down, or in a haste, move to a location that may not be adequately suitable. 10 years comes like tomorrow. My belief is that the automotive shops on Sixth Street can coexist with Corona's renovation efforts. My plea to the board members, please help bring relief and peace to me and all my colleagues here today by voting against this proposal. And if this proposal should move forward, I ask that the 10-year deadline be changed to 25 years, giving new existing business owners like myself adequate time to start a savings fund to finance a search for a suitable facility that could meet our current business needs. Thank you for your time. May God bless all of us here, and may God bless America.
Thanks, Paul.
Hey, Paul, I just wanted to say, I don't know if it was you or if it was Tim, but thank you for the restoration of the Bear sign. It's beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Thank you for that.
Welcome, sir.
Yes, hi. My name is Tim O'Donnell, and I am the owner of that property, excuse me. And I'm sure that he said everything I was gonna say, but because of my hearing, I couldn't hear him, so if I repeat him, so be it. But I just want to reiterate the importance of the specific location, because you see, people come to us because their parents and their grandparents told them that they could trust us. And not only that, they came to us for nostalgia in the iconic Bear Repair Shop. That's, we're probably one of the only ones left. And so they come there, and they can reminisce about their grandfather getting their '62 Chevy repaired there. And so in 1955, as Paul said, and in 1968, I came on board. I was an ambitious 20-year-old. I was mentored by Corwin Jones, as you saw, sitting down in that one graphic. And he mentored me, and I admired him so. In 1976, he gave me the courage to open my own shop in Norco. I also, then in 86, I took over the Corona Brake and Wheel on Sixth Street and changed the name to Bear Alignment and Brake. And so here we are, on our birthday, 70 years. And the important thing is, is not only the customer likes our work, of course, and, but it's nostalgic part of it, where they come to that specific location. And the one thing I might say about the city of the circle, I came here, it was a beautiful little, that is the most iconic historic circle in all of California. And I know we're getting kind of progressive and trendy and want to make an awesome Corona, but we cannot forget our history. And about an hour ago, some guy talking about straightening out, yeah, that's for me. Thank you, please.
Thank you, Tim.
Good evening. My name's, my name's Tom Seeling. I'm, you're my councilman. Good. Now I know who that is. I have been in Corona since 88, and I worked for the Corona Norco Independent and the Corona This Month magazine, in which time I interviewed Harvey when he first opened his business, and I've been a customer ever since. The mayor said, "We may be getting ahead of ourselves." Well, yes, we are. We don't even know that the downtown Main is, and I'm supporting of it, downtown Main is gonna work as, we haven't even gotten past the first stage yet. So we need to not even think about expanding out east and west, because I've seen, literally, North Main, it got stalled for, what, 2006, and it finally broke ground in 2016. My wife lived here since 63, so the whole Corona Mall was gonna be the downtown. The center of gravity is east and south of Corona these days. Yet, we don't know that this is going to work the way we want it to, so we shouldn't really be going ahead and planning for moving down east and west Sixth Street, because that's never been downtown. Downtown has been the center inside the circle. So we're getting ahead of ourselves here. I want to say that, sorry, I'm doing, I'm doing speed run on notes. We have middle-class success stories that are adding to the tax base, that it's kind of special abilities. You can't move them just anywhere else. I mean, we're not gonna put them up Main, we're not gonna put them down Third Street, we're not gonna replace the old City Hall with a mechanic, because, you know, even the cop shop that we just took down, it doesn't work. And these businesses are not oil wells, so it's not a, "This looks ugly, let's get rid of it" sort of thing. These are active parts of our community. So there's a lot of "couldas" that are used, that these could require extra service, they could. Well, the downtown revitalization could be a success, and I hope it is. But we're planning three stages down, we haven't gotten the first stage done yet. So it's almost to quote Dr. Ian Malcolm, "It's as if they were so focused on that they could do it, they're not, didn't even bother to think whether they should be doing this." Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Tom? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ann Van Eggman. I'm co-owner of Harvey's Autotech. I have lived in Corona for the last 27 years. My husband and I have raised six children, most of whom are here. You guys can stand up.
They're like, "Please, no."
Tell your children, too.
Welcome, family.
We have six grandchildren, one on the way.
Are they here, too?
So we are a growing family. My father passed away last November at the age of 89. While he was still alive, he traced his ancestors to the ship that came over right after the Mayflower. My ancestors were part of the American Revolutionary War, and my dad was proud to join the group, the Sons of the Revolution. When I was in fifth grade, we had to do a speech on historical character during the revolution. That was probably the last time I did a public speech. I chose Patrick Henry and ended my speech with his famous line, "Give me liberty, or give me death." What is liberty? What did our forefathers fight for? Private property rights, for one. The right to make a living and to do so on your own land. The government doesn't have the right to come in and take your property for your own use. If they can do it to us, they can do it to each one of you. We already fought and won a war against a tyrannical government. What the city council is proposing, or at least the ask before, to do to the local businesses is theft. We have lived under the threat of eminent domain for years, but this is something much worse. This is destroying our livelihoods with no compensation. It is un-American. My husband has worked 34 years at an auto repair shop in Corona. He employs 11 people. He services thousands of cars in Corona. He keeps people safe on the roads. He has worked six days a week for over 20 of those 34 years. He's put in countless hours to build a business, a legacy that should be passed to our children and possibly our grandchildren. And the city of Corona deserves to have an alternative to the dealerships.
Thank you, Ann. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm gonna ask that Ms. Edwards, please enter into the meeting minutes. I did wear a collared shirt tonight. My name is Rory Connell, and I'm here because what you're discussing tonight isn't just exploring policy, it's changing a whole corridor within our city. The stretch between Leighton and Elsabranca is more than unusable, and it's functioning, thriving automotive corridor. The keeps the city moving, 34 automotive businesses, 34 businesses that are automotive-based are on the Sixth Street corridor. You see national brands, like Big O Tires, AutoZone, Jiffy Loop, brands with big expensive attorneys. And then you see small people, like Harvey's Autotech, Raj, Amit, people that I went to school with, who have thriving, independently-owned businesses here on Sixth Street. But what you're doing really is erasing more than just businesses. Corona has an automotive culture, one that's built in our DNA that we've earned. The first vehicle to go over 100 miles an hour happened on the Circle in Corona. One thing I'm very proud of is that I got to ride around the Corona Circle with Carroll Shelby and a Shelby Mustang. Brands like West Coast Customs had TV shows here, Berry Speed Shop had TV shows here. We are known for our automotive culture. Global brands like Ibach Springs, Curry Enterprises, Gibson Exhaust reside here. Corona has a foundation that's rich in automotive culture and craftsmanship. These brands build and bring people from these shops into their manufacturing facilities. The businesses in this corridor are part of that legacy. They've invested their lives and their livelihood in supporting people and keeping them safe on the road at affordable prices. At a time when the economy isn't great, right? It's not easy. These brands still survive, and they still thrive. And they're still serving this community. And I'm asking you to please take a look at the impacts that this has on the community. This is very important. Corona is the automotive center of the universe in my world. I live and breathe cars every single day. I have traveled the world because of what I've learned to do with cars in Corona. I ask that you respect not only the history, but these people and their businesses. Please, take a look at what you're doing. This is very, very important to our community. You're asking them to leave before asking them to conform. None of you, I imagine, expected this when you ran for city council. None of you. Prove yourselves first at the mall, then explore how we can clean up the rest of Sixth Street, but ask these people to work with you before you ask them to leave.
Thank you. Hi, Dale.
Hello. How are y'all doing?
Well, fantastic. Can't you tell?
Two weeks ago, I came here and I talked about transparency, or lack of it, or perceived lack of transparency. A year ago, you went to one lane each way, and I asked you, Jacob and others, "Have you interviewed all the property owners, the business owners on Sixth Street?" Because I had had property owners that told me they were never contacted. But I was looked at and treated like I was an idiot, like, "Of course, we talked to all the homeowners." Trying to make me feel like an idiot. I don't believe all the business owners have been contacted. I don't brag about this much, but I retired from Hughes Aircraft Satellites. When you build a $400 million to $600 million contact, and you hit a launch button, there's a plan in place. It's not herky-jerky. It's not, "Make a turn here, or what are we gonna do here, or we got a problem here, how are we gonna fix that?" There's a plan. It doesn't look like there's a plan here. If you talked to all the business owners, did you tell them that this amortization was a possible result? Was that left out intentionally? If you have a plan to make that a walking street, and I've talked about this, a lot of people don't want to walk by a tire shop or a repair shop. Is that the environment for a walking area? No, it's a business area. So if you disclosed it to all the people that own businesses a year ago, that this was a potential, their opinion might have been a little different. Or did you really not talk to everybody? I think that's what the deal is. Fixing this street, the downtown, is the equivalent of a satellite to the city of Corona. It's a lot of money, it's a lot of involvement, it's a lot of labor, it's a lot of decisions. But it sure looks like the plan is half-baked. When you have this many people show up, they're concerned about their living, their employment, and their businesses. and their businesses. This gentleman worked on this this week, spent some city funds. Was it done in the direction of one of you, or was it in the direction of the city manager? If it was the city manager, why did you do that without talking to the council first? I don't understand that.
We did, Dale, I did mention that we wanted to explore ways to address, like, the Methadone Clinic in the downtown.
Okay. That didn't address the car deals. I guess I don't have anything else to say, except Laguna Beach, I consider that a nice downtown. And there's some car repair shops on Pacific Coast Highway. There's some car sales place on Pacific Coast Highway.
Thank you, Dale. Appreciate it. Hi, Manny.
Good evening again. It's getting late, so please excuse me if I don't make a whole lot of sense with this. The first thing that I thought when I started reading this is, "Yeah, it would be kind of nice to make it a little bit prettier." But, then all of a sudden, I heard this voice screaming in my head. It was my mother's. And she's yelling at me, saying, "Would you please finish one project before you start something new? And as a reminder, we have five huge, ongoing projects right now. Let me remind you, we have not finished with the McKinley Street yet. We have not completely finished with the hub. We definitely have not finished with the mall. We have not finished, begun or started with the city park. And I've heard rumors that we're going to be bringing North Gate back also to Main and Sixth. Those are huge. And what have we done? We've also limited our lanes down from two to one. I'm thinking in my head, "Mom, you're right this time." I just can't see the fact that we're gonna take on something new. My suggestion is take all this hard work and put it on a nice shelf somewhere and visit it again down the line. Let's take at least a couple of these off the table before we start something new. That's my personal opinion. And it still comes back to, I've been asking, the vision. I know the vision for the city is, "You belong here," but I want to know who the target audience is. Because who do we want to attract? I mean, all we're doing is renovating. And I do understand that it's nice to renovate cities. I used to live in Santa Ana and had the privilege of going down there recently, and their downtown used to be really bad. And it looks nice, but they have preserved a whole lot of the way it originally looked. So, it was modern, and it was also cleaned up, but preserved the old. So, I'm, to my opinion is, I don't know where this came from, but not now. Later. Let's get something accomplished first. Thank you.
Thanks, Manny. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Michaela. I live in District 2. I'm born and raised in Corona. My mom was born and raised in Corona. I've seen the city change a lot. I remember when there was baseball fields over here, and I played tee ball here. Dos Logos did not exist when I was a kid. Crossings did not exist when I was a kid. And I mention all that because as a person that's proud to be from Corona, I've seen it change. And over the last, I guess, couple of years, I've realized that I am supportive of the change that's happening in our downtown, the hub. Me and my friends, you know, now we're talking about, "Oh, we're actually gonna go out and dine here. There's cool stuff happening." And I'm seeing all the cool stuff the city does, but then I realized that I actually have never come to council and said how much I am supportive of those efforts. And I'm gonna get to the point here, but I feel that's important context here. So, I saw this item today, and to me, I read it as, and I had to keep reading it throughout council, because if you walked in, you would have thought that we are voting on some sort of plan today, and we are not. It sounds like you all are voting to explore a process, a plan of a plan. And, you know, I, you know, unpopular view in here, but I think that's worth pursuing. I think it's worth seeing what's possible, having a discussion about it. And maybe it's foolish of me to think that the city council can walk and talk at the same time. I think we can, you know, work on the hub and the downtown and all these other cool projects we have going and explore other plans for the future. And so, I hear what the businesses are saying, and I agree, that's frightening. You see this on the council agenda, I'd probably be here too, you know? But, I think it's worthy to ask staff to be creative, to see what's possible. What are ideas out there? What are other cities doing? How can we ask council to do great things if we don't even allow them to ask staff to look at other ideas? So, I do support the council voting to look at what this might mean, what a plan for amortization may be. And I hope they get input from businesses and from other cities, and they bring it back, and we have another discussion, and we have the businesses here again, and you have hopefully maybe people like me coming to you and giving their perspective. So, thank you all, and yeah, you guys are doing great work. I love what I'm seeing in my city. And I think if these changes continue, you know, it'll give folks like me a reason to actually spend our money here, right? And that's tax dollars coming here, so we can have great parks and pickleball courts and all that stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Leona Cruz. I've lived in Corona for about the last eight years. So, I'm not a 30-year resident, I'm not a 50-year resident, but I have lived here for eight years, and I can tell you, I love Corona. And one of the things I absolutely love is where I live, my granddaughter and I can walk to three different parks. And so, thank you for committing to green spaces. Thank you for committing to finding ways to revitalize. Thank you for having places that we can, as Michaela said, we can go and eat and sit and enjoy. And it's amazing to see the potential. And all I want to say, I'm not here to tell you, "Look into amortization," or "Don't." I'm here to tell you, thank you for listening to the community. Thank you for really seeking to hear what is needed and being willing to make hard decisions with the input from the community and finding a way to be progressive and move forward and still honor the history of Corona and ensure that we have many, many local businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Vargas Jr. I've lived in Corona my entire 40 years of existence. I'm a third-generation, born and raised in the city of Corona, with my great-grandparents coming here in 1915. We've seen a lot of change in the city of Corona. I personally, over the last 40 years, like Michaela said, played ball here in the fields. We used to play around in the orange groves behind Albertson's. We played where Santana Park is before it was a park. I'm here today as not an automotive shop owner, but as the owner of a company that services the equipment in automotive shops. A lot of these shop owners here, at some point in my career, I have helped them out, whether it be relocating lifts, new equipment, servicing, anything like that. I really hope that we make a wise decision not to amortize the downtown, or the outside of the downtown area. And we do look at other cities that have done it. The city of Orange, in their circle, they've done a lot of building there, they've done a lot of reconstruction, and they currently have some automotive shops that sit outside of the Orange Circle. Chapman Automotive and Snow's Automotive are two just to name. Nothing was changed in that area outside of the circle. So, I'm asking, please, let's take that into consideration and keep these people's livelihood in place. These aren't chains, you know? I understand American Tire Depot is on Sixth Street. They are owned by a private equity firm, and their whole goal is to buy shops, get equity in them, and sell them off. These are people that live in this town. My kids go to school with Harvey's grandkids. These are people that we see every day in town. So, let's keep them in business. Let's find a way to factor them into revitalization, much like we could have done, or what we should do with Cortez. Let's factor them in to the revitalization. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jackie McCray. I'm here because I heard what was going on tonight. I've worked in Corona for 44 years, although I live in Riverside. My brother-in-law owns Jerry's Brake and Wheel, and it was owned by a customer of mine before they passed away, and he bought it several years ago. As I was sitting here, listening to this gentleman talk about the legal stuff and the things, you've already figured it out, that when you go after the business owners, if they don't cooperate, what you're gonna do. And as he was speaking, all I could think about were the women and the men that came up here and spoke about the terror from ICE. And right now, the way you guys are running Corona, that's what I look at. You may be starting out with the automotive businesses on Sixth Street, but what's gonna keep you from going after beauty salons, nail salons, restaurants, because you don't like the way that they look? Shame on you. I hope that you listen to everything that everybody is saying and take into consideration. You would not like anybody to give you a 10-year notice on having to move out of your house, would you? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening. Tony Fanaldi, longtime Corona resident. Okay, so, quick story. Back in the early 90s, so, I've lived in South Corona, in the area where Santiago High School is, for a long, long time. There was a neighbor of mine there, he owned a five-acre parcel. It was a packing house. It had a railroad spur that went in front of the place. Wes, you're shaking your head, so you know the facility. And it's just weird that all of a sudden, California bisected it. So, what did the city do? And of course, I don't think any of you were here at the time, so it's not, none of yours' fault, but history repeats itself. This is the problem. So, what happened? California bisected it. So, what did the city do? Of course, eminent domain. They split the property into two parcels. One of them's houses now, they finally built those last few houses 10 years ago, maybe less. The opposite side is the lower part of the ball field for Santiago High School. Anyway, that poor old guy, Warren Desper, that's all he had. He was a truck driver, he retired, that's all he had was that five acres. Yeah, the building was ugly, that's why they took it. And I didn't think too much of it at the time. Maybe 10 years ago, I finally spoke to the city engineer, you know, the gentleman used to sit where Savat is, not Savat's fault at all, but he used to sit there at the time. Guess what? They purposely, the city manager purposely made California go through, so they could take it under eminent domain. That's what this is. It's no different. Yeah, it's worse, because at least that poor guy got 300 and something thousand, which was not even a drop in the bucket compared to what the property was worth a year after all the houses went in. Think about it, you know? This is wrong. These are your neighbors, these are your local businesses. Whoever came up with this idea, forget it. Fire them, whatever, I don't care, but it's wrong. Wrong, 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 all the way around. Please.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Amit Kumar. Born and raised here in Corona, so, been here for over 40 years. I'd like to start with a little story, you know? My father came to this country, early 80s, and he set roots here in Corona. For people that have been here long enough will know my father and our siblings, since we have all grown at our gas station and auto shop right here on Sixth Street. My parents worked day and night, seven days a week, to establish what they have now today. Our old childhood was just there, watching them on the hard work, you know, the lessons that we learned, that, you know, the work ethic that we got from them. And now, we have switched hands, it's come into, the torch has been passed to us. And our dream was always to keep passing that torch. We, you know, we have a few gas stations with auto repair shops in Corona. We've been in the community for so long, we've given so much to this community. Corona is our home, you know? My siblings, myself, like I said, we were all born and raised here. This is home. We've given everything to Corona. For this to come in, and now, the way that it came into, you know, it was just so, like, just sneaking, and to jeopardize what our families, all of us, you know, be it my minority owners and everybody else that's here, how much we've worked for just to get the rug pulled from underneath us, you know, it's very disheartening. So, I just hope that this doesn't pass, and you all just rethink this through, that, you know, the history, what's here, you know, the relationships, and just the livelihood of not just us, but all the people that we also employ, you know? A lot of people also depend on these jobs, and the way that the market goes now, or the way things are, you know, it's very tough to find a job too, and a lot of these people are very grateful that they have something to go to. So, I just really hope you guys think this through and not let it go through. And just remember too, that most of our businesses on Sixth Street that are falling under this, when COVID happened, we were essential businesses, and now you guys are considering taking some of these essential businesses away. So, that's another thing that I hope you guys really think hard about before you guys make any moves on this. I'll end right there.
Thanks, Amir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, I had to take a few little notes here, because I had an appointment on coming tonight until I saw what was going on. So, Mayor, council members, and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a 34-year resident of Corona, and I retired after 24 years with the city. This potential for the amortization proposal presents serious concerns of fairness to me. These are long-term owners, decades. They've invested their life dollars into their business, and going forth to even consider this proposal would cause forced shuttering of businesses, or, you know, if you went through with that, large cost to relocate. The locations were legally set up at the time, and later, the rules have changed, and now they're being penalized for that. These business owners contribute support to the community. They sponsor Little League teams or school teams. Your kids may have played on one of the teams that they sponsored. They provide trusted service. Shortly after living, or moving here, we needed car work done, and I was referred to Harvey's. Thank you, Harvey. But, they came through, and they did the quality work for me, and I feel, I felt I could trust them based on their reputation, and never, along the years, have they let me down. Multiple vehicles. I value doing business with businesses that have longevity and reputation, because they are successful in what they do, and that should not be ignored as well. Do I agree that the businesses along Sixth Street, not just theirs, but a lot of them, need a little facade improvements? Yes. But, I think a better option than doing amortization and canceling out their businesses 10 years down the road would be to maybe sponsor a program with the city, like they've done before with the signs somebody mentioned, sponsor a program that will help them to revamp their site, to be tolerable and pretty enough to walk by. I don't mind walking by them, but anyway, maybe instead of giving them a 10-year death sentence, you work, you know, if you decide to go forth with this whole procedure, you work as a buyout at fair market. And these people have placed their life savings in their businesses. As a family member of a family-owned business, I can tell you firsthand, when that business is forced to close, ours was due to a large rent increase. It affects the economical status of all the employees and families combined. I mean, our home took a six-figure income hit a year. That was a huge hit. But, anyway, these people deserve better than what this is.
Thank you, man. What was your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Denise Burns.
Thanks, Denise.
Thank you.
Hi, Chad.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Your friendly Neighborhood Chamber Chairman Chad, say that 10 times fast. I'll be brief, I just wanted to share, you guys are in luck, because as the chamber chair in our chamber, we really do support our downtown redevelopment, and we love new businesses coming. And we love new businesses coming in, unique eateries and restaurants, things like that. So excited about that. On the same token, we're excited about the businesses behind us who are here tonight. And you heard so many great things I don't need to repeat. But I can tell you that as a chamber, we are here to support them. And as I hear this, you guys did a, we had a presentation earlier of so many options for pickleball and tennis. There's gotta be more options. So I don't fault anyone here for looking at options and what tools. If I were in your place, I'd wanna know all the tools available. And some like this may not make sense, but some that we find may make sense. So I understand that this is part of the process of looking at those options. And I think some folks behind us might have some options. When I think of the categories of people, as a business owner, our family has chosen to start and exit businesses, there might be a group of people or business owners who might have an exit, they don't have an exit strategy or a succession plan, and they may be wanting to move elsewhere. So there might be some folks who would be interested in something like this. Then there's the middle category, where maybe they haven't thought about it or they don't think that there's an option or an opportunity. And maybe they would consider it if they were given options to pursue or follow. Then there's the group that this is a legacy, and they have no intention of leaving or closing, and that they'll fight tooth and nail to stay. And I would imagine they would get that support from, I know everyone in this room. And I think that there's probably an opportunity for a strategy, many strategies, based on each one of those buckets. And there's probably another bucket out there. I just wanted to let you guys know that we're here for you as well. We have great relationships with a lot, you know, people in this room. And we're here to help you as well as great partners. So there's gotta be other tools that may have not been pursued, and we have a great interest in pursuing those. With that being said, I'm excited to share, Bobby kind of stole my thunder, to introduce our next presidency over our chamber, Dr. Tim Gramling. He'll be speaking next. So I'm excited to bring him up here and allow him to speak for his first time, which is pre-his official capacity, which starts next week. So with that, thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard, Mr. Gramling.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Greetings to the Council, City Manager, Council, and to others that are present here tonight. As you can tell, there's clearly a lot of concerns. And what I wanted to do was make an appeal directly to each of our council members. There's an amazing thing that happens in this community particularly, which is when we look at solving problems together. One of the things I stand ready to do and would ask is that the Council, would you be open to the chamber facilitating, perhaps coffee with folks like Rajkumar and Amit, to talk about what's happening in the service stations, what the needs are now, and what a plan might be in the next 10 to 20 years? Would you be open to the chamber facilitating, perhaps sitting at Silver Dollar with Mark Vogel and talking about what a plan might be and where there might be some opportunities? Revitalization is always very difficult. And I understand this Council is determined not to be the Council that let it go to another Council that pushed the can further down the road. I understand that. And this chamber stands ready to partner. And I hope you would be open for us to facilitate these conversations that can help us find solutions together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Hi, Kathy.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council members, Mayor Jim Steiner and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kathy Armstrong, and I'm here to urge you to reject the amortization of non-conforming properties, especially those that include longstanding mechanic shops and other automotive businesses. I grew up in an auto shop. My father started with one small garage, working late nights with nothing but determination and a deep belief in serving his community. Over the years, through hard work and honest service, he grew that single shop into multiple auto shops and eventually a car dealership. That experience shaped my entire life. People often talk about mechanic shops as if they're dirty unwanted uses. But I saw something very different. I saw entrepreneurs, people who followed their passion, learned a trade, and used it to build a life for their families. I saw dignity in the work, pride in solving problems, and the value these shops bring to a neighborhood. My father was able to provide for his family of six and so many others who were employed by him, including all the teenage boys, they were cute, that were living in our neighborhood. That upbringing influenced my own path. Today, I'm an entrepreneur and a co-founder of a successful manufacturing plant here in Corona on Maple Street. I chose that path because I saw firsthand the meaning of productive work. The smell of factory or the noise of machinery doesn't bother me because to me, it represents jobs, opportunity, and the heartbeat of a local economy. Amortizing these properties doesn't just remove buildings. It removes livelihoods. It removes the very types of small businesses that built people like my father and ultimately built people like me. Instead of pushing out longstanding shops and industries, we should support them, modernize them, and allow them to continue contributing to our community. Please consider the human stories, the economic value, the spirit behind these businesses. They deserve a better future here in Corona. Thank you.
Good evening, Grace.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you so much. My name is Grace Clark. I am a longtime resident of Corona, although many of you, including Bobby, have told me I'm a newcomer. I moved to Corona in 1980 because I could buy a house for less than $100,000. And so I have owned two homes in my lifetime, both of them here in Corona. 10 years ago, I had an opportunity to start my own business, and where did I choose to do it? Here in Corona. I could make more money if I went into Orange County, but who wants to sit on the 91 freeway for three hours a day? So consequently, I opened my business here, and I have the pleasure of living, of working, well, kind of living, in one of your revitalization areas, Sixth and Main, in the Horvath Building. I employ six people. By trade, all of you know, I'm a CPA. So that's how I'm going to speak to you, is as a CPA. So when you look at putting these businesses out of business through a revitalization and through an amortization program, have you taken into consideration the sales tax that these businesses collect that you will no longer get? Because now they will probably be forced to either go out of business or relocate maybe to a neighboring city like Riverside, who will then get the sales tax that you'll no longer get. And my phone went blank with my notes on it. You say that you've spoken to the residents, that you want to listen to the residents as to what we want. I've been here for 45 years. None of you have ever asked me what I wanted, and I've not been part of any focus groups to find out what you want. I have had lunch with Jacob. I appreciated that very much. And I've met many of you through many different times. But nobody's ever asked me what I wanted to do in the downtown area. You say you've talked to the property owners on Sixth Street. Well, they just said that they were never asked what you were gonna do with Sixth Street. So, you know, I wonder, well, who did you ask? It's not easy to relocate these businesses. You're talking about heavy equipment that has to be moved specially. These are buildings that aren't easy to put up. This is a very expensive proposition to ask them to move. It just, there has to be a better way. There has to. Because you guys are bright people, and I know that there's a better way to do this. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thanks, Grace. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dalesio Nunez. Everybody knows me by Andy. I own a business in Sixth Street, Nunez Upholstery. I've been there for 42 years. And the reason that I'm there, you know, up to these days is because when I was 26 years old, I'm going to be turning 70, I was renting a place that later became my place, was owned by a mayor of Corona. And as soon as I became the owner, an ordinance was passed that I had to tear down the building and put it up to code. It took me several years to do so. By the time I did so, I mean, I was not allowed to do my upholstery business because the zoning was wrong. And today, now we're facing this new proposal. I mean, it's been my livelihood. I raised my kids, five kids. I have employees that, I mean, that are, I mean, supporting their families thanks to the business. And I consider this very unfair. I don't want to use the word that I would like to use. But this is absurd to try to do this to us. You know, some people are talking about not being able to walk to Sixth Street. Well, it's not because of the business. I came here to Corona in 1970, March 3, 1970. And I knew Corona, and I know Corona from the very beginning and how it has evolved. I mean, Sixth Street has been the same. Businesses out of business, mechanics, and small shops. And now proposing this, just talking about displacing us without an option, not thinking. I had the honor to meet the mayor. He went to my shop some time ago. And I asked him, what plans do you guys have for small businesses? And he invited me to sit down with him one day and talk. But I mean, I want to take this time to just to ask you to really consider the unfairness of this proposal. I mean, the street could use some improvements. I mean, improvements could be made. But I mean, taking all of us out of business without a choice, I don't think this is fair. So I ask you to consider this matter and really think deeply and think like you're in our place. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you. Good seeing you again. Good evening.
My name is Jesse Nunez. I'm one of the five kids you mentioned earlier. I'm also hoping to be the next owner of Nunez Upholstery in Corona. Like you said, he's been in Corona for 42 years. He's already dealt with this, something like this before. Whether you guys know it or not, we are actually a big part of the community. If you are a police officer and your seat's ever been torn, we've repaired it. If you're a firefighter and you need repairs on your seats or any of your, we've repaired it. If you're taking your car to a dealership for any sort of upholstery issue, there's a good chance that we've repaired it. Something like this will definitely impact us in a negative way. We're not this big corporate shop who could afford to buy a new building and a new location. It just really sucks that, I know it's not, it's just a thought, but the fact that it's a thought really bothers me. It's a tool that we could use, but a nuclear bomb is a tool that we could use too, but we try not to do it, right? I plan to keep this business going as long as I could, hopefully pass it down to one of my kids. But with proposals like this, it really does scare me for the future of businesses like mine. I would have never found out about this if it wasn't for Paul, if it wasn't for Harvey telling me on Monday. No one, none of you guys, him, I don't know what he does, has ever spoken to us directly about anything going on on Sixth Street, the one-lane highway. No one has spoken to us. So I'm trying to figure out who you're speaking to, because it wasn't Wes. I mean, if you're speaking to owners, it's either my pops or myself. But I have not seen no memos. I have not seen anyone come in, talk to me, shake my hand, or anything like that. Like my dad said, we've done work for you, Mayor. And it is disappointing to, you know, hear that this is a thought that could put a lot of business like myself. I get it. Our building's not nice. I always refer to the little ugly shack in the back. But just because our building isn't nice doesn't mean our work isn't good and doesn't mean that we're less important than anyone else. But yeah, that's it.
Jesse, you are important to us in this community. The purpose of tonight was to get our, if we're gonna decide if we want to even think about it.
Right, I understand that.
That's when they go, after we decide, that's when they would go to the businesses. They haven't gone to them, yeah. There's no reason to, because they're either gonna move forward.
For me, this is super short notice.
Please know that you guys do great work. Harvey does great work. I've used you guys, I've used a lot of you in this community. We do appreciate you. We don't hate automobile places. That's one of several that were listed as non-conforming. So we're just, we're talking through this, man. You guys are making great sense, too.
But 100%, I understand. Like I said, this was a last-minute thing for us. And I'm glad you guys clarified that it's an idea. Again, I hate the fact that it's even an idea.
It's an idea in the industry, that's all it is.
I get it.
And I'd never heard of it before. Thank you, man. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gary Koskay. Lived in Corona since 1990. And this is actually the first time I've ever come to any meetings, so it was that important. I know, I've known Harvey for, pretty much since I moved here. He impressed me the first time I met him as being a man of incredible integrity and honesty. And one of the things that drew me to Corona, and it's kept me here all this time, I'm retired now, is that that feeling of community and that feeling of honesty and integrity within the city, within the police officers that are here, with the business owners like Harvey, you don't find that in other places. And I've worked a lot of different cities and worked other places, big cities that have a lot more money, and they don't come close to what's here in Corona. And I think that's the thing that people are saying here, is that basically, I appreciate that you're looking at those things, but progress can never replace propriety. And propriety, dealing with the integrity of the community at large and what I and others here as a resident can avail of ourselves, is really important. And like I said, I've known Harvey for a long time. There's many times that he's told me, look, don't do this, or you can make this repair yourself. I mean, where do you get that kind of business? Or go to this guy over here, or if you need this, go to here and talk to so-and-so. You can't get that anywhere else. So it's, I like the idea, and I understand that you're looking at these things, but that's what's, one of the nice things about Corona really is, is that it's still a growing, larger city, but it's still a small city. And that hominess and that connectivity is really important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, this picks up well. Hello, council members. My name is Michael Van Egmond. I am son of Harvey Van Egmond of Harvey's Autotech. I didn't come here with a speech planned, but I just wanted to share a couple of my thoughts. Growing up in Corona, going to different businesses, going to the grocery store, it is crazy the amount of times I've been recognized and people have gone, are you one of Harvey's kids? And I've gone, and they've said, oh, he's a great guy. I've known him longer than you've been alive. You know, I love Harvey. And I'm just like, cool, you know? I've always liked him. I didn't have a choice, but... The more I've worked at his shop, the more I understand. I understand why people like him. The number of times I've had people, you know, complain about dealerships or, you know, complain about what else is out there. And the number of times I've seen my dad bend over backwards for a customer or for someone calling in, you know? And hearing on Friday about this proposal that threatens not only the business that, of course, my father worked very hard to build, the businesses all along the street that I know they've worked hard to build and that I've met plenty of them myself. And they're upstanding guys, the ones I've met, anyway. But also, I believe is a detriment to thousands of citizens who'd be forced to find business elsewhere, most likely outside of Corona, ending up in Riverside at dealerships, you know? Again, probably we have hundreds of customers that have been customers for 30 years. And I just can't believe I read a proposal. I understand it's just a, it's just a thought. But to read a proposal that says, hey, we think that these things are ugly, and, you know, I painted that building myself. So I think, I don't think Sixth Street is the prettiest. I think nobody here would disagree with that. But I think that ways of, you know, of holding businesses accountable and, you know, having their sons paint their businesses too... too, I think would be a better solution. So that's my take on the matter.
Thank you, Michael. Welcome.
My name is Jonathan Van Egmond. You know who I am. Harvey's my dad. And I got to start off with, you know, Jim, what you just told Jesse is a load of crap.
Really?
Hey, this is my time.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
You can speak when I'm done.
You're right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
What you told Jesse is that you care about the opinion of the small businesses in the downtown. I don't believe that one bit. You just said that you would wait until you've made a decision on this type of proposal and then you would discuss it with us. If you cared about our opinion, you would ask us before considering to pass a proposal like this. You just told my dad on Monday that the downtown is a shithole.
I did say that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not because of our businesses.
I guess it was.
It's not because of the automotive businesses. It's because of the vagrancy. It's because of all the businesses you've already kicked out of our town. If you think that businesses are going to want to develop in our city, then don't turn it into a wasteland that they can see, hey, where did all the businesses go? Oh, let me ask why? Oh, they were booted out of town with no compensation. That's not right. And yeah, of course, who cares for you guys? If you pass something like this, yeah, 10 years down the road, it's some other council's problem. Well, you don't want that weighing on your conscience, because I'll be thinking about it the rest of my life. They did something like this back about 100 years ago in Russia when the Bolsheviks played out their communist revolution. It appears that not much about government has changed, except that their methods are a lot more slippery and sneaky now. They don't do it with violence. They just do it with economic destruction. So I urge you, and Jim, I hope that, you know, you can take it personally, sure, but I hope you look yourself in the mirror and say, am I really doing what's best for the loyal citizens of this town who have invested their time and their efforts for decades and made promises to the people of this town that we could use this place to live and grow our families? And what, we're supposed to just wake up one day and have to move on in place of what? Some trinket shops selling useless garbage that nobody even needs, most likely shipped in from China? You want economic growth in this city? Keep the businesses that provide real American services that are based in the history of this town. Build a museum, you know? Lean into the automotive side of this business. That's what we have going for us. Why would you kick us out to create a cookie cutter 15-minute city? Thank you for your time.
Come on up, Harvey.
Harvey Van Egmond, Harvey's Auto Tech. I first want to say thank you, Jonathan, for holding back of how you really felt. I appreciate that. I was planning to toot my horn, but I've, something I've found out, I've learned a lot tonight. And it kind of knocked me down a little bit because I've been wondering how much business Paul does, and I've heard he does more business than me. So I'm coming for you, Paul, okay? I appreciate what everybody has said. I do have a couple of comments I want to bring into this. All of our kids have worked with us at the business. They've learned a lot. My wife homeschooled the kids, but she also had them at the schools in town. She homeschooled them. I've worked, schooled them. My wife and I have been running this business for many years. I want to talk about all the other businesses, okay? 30, 40, 50 years' worth of auto service businesses, you've seen these people. They've been on Sixth Street. They continue to serve Corona, keeping families safe. These businesses are thriving and growing. And we deal with the trash, the vandalism, the homelessness and the graffiti on a daily basis, okay? Who's down there Monday morning when there's graffiti on the side of my building, painting it? I am. My kids are. My employees are, okay? We're keeping it clean. We're keeping the weeds off of the property. We're keeping these buildings from being boarded up. The attitude that we are the downtown problem, automotive, that's a slap in the face, okay? To many who work here, run businesses and live here, okay? We're the ones that are keeping it decent, okay? In addition, the city, as people have said, the city gave absolutely no warning of this elimination proposal. That in itself is disgusting. I welcome the idea of downtown revitalization, but I have been hearing these conversations for 25 years, as long as I've owned this property. Kicking out businesses with no plan, with only, will only turn the downtown into boarded-up buildings, graffiti-covered, weed-grown properties and a ghost town for those businesses left behind. Instead, guys, give us a design plan, okay, to beautify our businesses with a vintage automotive feel, like Norco, Horsedown USA. How many people have said Corona, Circle City, Race Town? But simply kicking out hard-working businesses is bad for business owners, property owners and the community of Corona. If you guys, and I've talked to all of you guys, I didn't talk to you, Mr. Ellis, I guess you're almost the one I should have talked to, because none of these guys knew anything about this, okay? I've talked to all of these guys. We need to take a stand against this. We need to come up with a better plan for everyone.
Thanks, Harvey.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sean Shakar. I am the owner and operator of Best Auto Sales. I am the dealership located across from the city park. To kind of give you some backdrop, we're a family-operated business that's been in operation since 1996. My brothers are in the background right here. My father started this entire operation. It's been handed down to the, to the sons at this point. We specialize and focus on commercial type of vehicle. You may have driven by that strip. We focus on commercial type of vehicles. And we sell these type of vehicles to various businesses within the precincts of Corona and abroad and internationally as well, too. And we have, when we have clients coming into our facility, they generally stay at a nearby hotel, visit various restaurants, including the famous Silver Dollar Pancake House down the street, and also patronize various business establishments here as well, too. Our dealership is putting the city of Corona on the map. We are the, we are generating the image that we are the center of commerce. But this proposal, I know, once again, you're merely thinking about this idea undermines all of this. And it, more importantly, it destroys the trust in the business community, particularly here in the city of Corona. Many of us have been invested into this downtown for well over 20, 30 years. I spent the majority of my life here. I graduated from Centennial High School. I've been part of this community for a very long time, and I share the concerns that you have about downtown Corona. We are at the front lines. All these businesses that have spoken tonight, we're on that strip. We've been there for a significant period of time. We share the concerns that you have, and we want to be part of the solution. We're not the problem here. We see what's happening every single day, and we're invested just as much as you are to see the success of downtown Corona. And what we're asking here tonight is not to consider this idea whatsoever. This idea is disastrous, but rather, give us the opportunity, engage the business community here, work with us, empower us, give us the tools and resources and the manpower to change the downtown. We are ready. All of us are ready, but we're not ready to step down. We're here and we want to be here. We want to see the success of Corona. We want, we care about Corona, and we want to see this work all together. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Larry McCray. I own Jerry's Brake and Tire Pros on Sixth Street. From 2000 to 2006, I owned half of the Big O tires there. I bought Jerry's in 2006. It's family-owned, not a big speech guy. There's a couple of things. My, my building, when I bought it, it's a one-use building. I had to pay double the down payment to the SBA because it's a one-use building and has a lift in it. So when you consider trying to sell it or turn it into something else in 10 years, I mean, unless you guys want some indoor pickleball courts, might be on your guys' deal, something over there. But it's a one-use deal, so I don't know. Other than that, everything these guys said has been great. I'm really grateful for what you guys did here tonight, because I know a lot of these guys, but you just brought us together. And you want to fight? You got it.
Welcome back, Marta.
Good evening again. I know it's late. We all want to go home, so I'll be short. I already put up my hair, so that means I'm ready to go home. But anyways, I asked Joe to go before him, because I don't know what he's going to say or if he'll remember anything I say afterwards. But anyway, so I think everyone has pretty much said what we all feel. And even though my business is not on the chopping block, unless you decide there's too many Mexican restaurants on Sixth Street, I'm here to support my neighbors. Harvey's my neighbor. Nunez is my neighbor. I know Paul. You know, they're, we're all part of the same community, the downtown community. So I hope that you take this idea, put it in a box, lock it and throw away the key. Because I really don't think that this is a good business model, pushing out businesses that have survived this whole period of nothing being done downtown. And now that something is being done and they, they could be a part of it, we could all be a part of it, they're getting pushed out or they might be pushed out. So please, just get rid, I mean, fine, you explored it, not a good idea, get rid of it.
Thanks, Marta.
Thank you.
So before Harvey's was, was Harvey's, I worked at Hamburg Ford. We used to eat at Eduardo's before it was Eduardo's. Okay, what's clear to me about this discussion is you don't know anything about a local economy, a local service economy or the community. And I'm really sick, I'm sick, sick, sick of being talked down to and gentle-parented by you, Ms. Casillas. It's scary. I realize there's a lot of changes. I know, friend, you're feeling big feelings. You need to stop with that. You need to stop with that. And with the little smirk, okay? You're disrespectful. Jim, saying that the downtown looks like a piece of shit, you're going to call him a liar?
No.
Yeah. Stop it. It's disrespectful to the people that are down there. It's nothing but a bunch of bullshit, South Corona, Orange County transplants, like most of the council, that didn't grow up here. Yeah, you, when'd you come here? You're the oldest one here. You're the one, you're the one of the most tenure here, Wes, right? But, but everybody lives in South Corona, Sierra de Loro, looks down to Sixth Street, and every Hispanic female is a prostitute and every Hispanic male is a drug dealer. Most of the problems that happen on Sixth Street is because of you guys on the council. You blighted the place. You pulled all the big businesses out, you as the city. And then you're strafing the people in the lifeboats that survived the sinking. And you don't have to examine whether strafing people in lifeboats is a good idea. You don't have to examine that. It's unethical. It's wrong. Killing businesses. Tony, you were all over the fact that we might possibly, just in a slightest possible way, discomfort Ganal and the use of their private property. But the fact that you're willing to explore stealing these people's businesses with no compensation whatsoever is frankly disgusting. The fact that you can't say clearly right now, stop this bullshit. Stop it. And, and Jim, I can't be more disappointed in you that you're like both saying out of one side of your mouth, well, you didn't really need to be here. We didn't really need to tell you, but I'm really glad to hear what you have to say. The weasel guy over here didn't want anybody here. And I'm frankly disappointed in Joel here. You know, I was talking about our mutual friend yesterday, or today, about whether they've used this in Riverside or not. He said, well, they did something similar, but they actually offered relocation money. We don't have any place to relocate. That's another thing you guys don't seem to know about the automotive trade. There are no other places to locate. Sixth Street is the commercial corridor. So railroad is full up. There are no more shops. There are no more places for shops in Corona. It's, and Sixth Street is zoned to be apartments. So what you're doing is you're spraying, you're spraying Roundup over the survivors. And it's, it's nothing to get, to just build more five-story apartment buildings, just like downtown Anaheim. Thank you very much.
It's always such an adventure to follow my good friend, Joe Morgan. My name is Don Fuller. I'm a resident here in town. And like most of these people here in this room, I too have earned much of my living with cars, probably not in a way they have, but that's how I made my living for most of my professional life, was just cars somewhere or another. But that's sort of irrelevant. And what kind of business it is, I think, is kind of irrelevant. And how long you've lived here. I've been here since the year 2000. I think that's kind of irrelevant. What I see here as irrelevant is this fundamentally wrong. This is a fundamentally wrong thing to do. Each one of you up there, Mr. DeDario, Mr. Speak, Mr. Richens, Mr. Steiner, Ms. Casillas, when you ran, you ran for the office and the people came in and voted for you or against you. And they voted because they wanted you to do the right thing. Title of a Spike Lee movie. They wanted you to do the right thing. Going for this is the wrong thing. You know it. I have no idea how this abomination ended up on the agenda. If I would have been in the meeting when it was proposed, I would have said, fuck no. And it's not the right thing to do. It's a simple matter of what's right and wrong. And there is something fundamentally wrong about this. It's not going to be fixed by waiting another 10 years. It's not going to be fixed by painting up some of the buildings or putting some pretty flower pots. This is a fundamentally wrong thing to do, to tell other people what they can do with their businesses, what they can do with their lives. Try to pick up and move an auto repair shop. Try to do that. I never had to do it because I was self-employed. Try to do that. You can't do that. Try to move the AAA animal hospital, which I use. Try to move Eduardo's, which you better not, because it's only my favorite restaurant in town, right? This is a fundamentally wrong thing to do. My guess is, and this is just my guess, that this did not originate with the council. My guess is it came from someplace else, and it is a fundamentally wrong thing to do. So do the right thing. You know what that is. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Sean. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sammy Messiah. I own a business on Sixth Street, and I have been in the business for the last 35 years. I built this business with my sweat, my hard work, take time from family, take time from fun, and going to business, sick or good, I have to go to business to take care of the business and customers and my workers. And that was my dream and is my dream. I want to leave a good legacy for my kids. And a couple of days, Mr. Harvey called me and said, Sammy, there is a council meeting because they're trying to take the business away from us. I says, what are you talking about? I was not prepared for that. I came today to say one thing, and please be compassionate and understanding and thoughtful about what I said. When you work hard all your life and you have a dream to accomplish and you will get to accomplish this dream, and someone comes, says, hey, we don't care about you, we didn't care about your hard work, we didn't care about your dignity, no, we're going to take this away from you. You can do this work somewhere else. You can do this business somewhere else. How could you do that? How you can do that? How could you accomplish a business that's been doing it for 35 years and you go, start somewhere else? People knows us and knows all these people sitting here by name and by their reputation. They know them and they get used to it. They come and their eyes closed because they know where they are and what we are doing and how we honor their business. because they know where they are, and what we are doing, and how we honor their business. I don't understand that. Please make sure that you say no to this proposition. Please. That's all that I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Council members. My name is Joel Nodick. I've been a resident of Corona for the last 14 years. I grew up close to it, rode motorcycles in the hills where Corona, where Costco was, and all through those hills going back. I look at these people. These are my clients. These are my friends. And there's two points that we haven't looked at or haven't addressed in this whole topic. Nobody's talked about it. The mental health of these people, their employees. They go and they put their head on their pillow at night and think about you wanting to close their businesses. And it's just not automotive. There was a whole list of things. Where does it actually end? You know, I traveled, in my previous career, I traveled three weeks out of the month to all over the country, many other countries. But what I noticed most about going to all these other cities, and you'd ask somebody, "Hey, is there a great Italian restaurant in town?" They go, "Yeah, there's an Olive Garden." And you're like, "Man, I just kind of wanted something local flavor." You drive down Sixth Street. It's not the box stores that you drive through. Every little city, or every city, there's, you know, a Borders bookstore, there's a, you know, everything is all the same. It's all cookie cutter. You could pick yourself up and put drop you in any state and go through a downtown area of a city, and they all look the same. They're all the box stores. That's the unique character of Corona. What makes it different is these people that have spent their lives building a business that's unique to themselves. And you really got to think, as I said in the first part, the mental anguish. It's not the mental anguish of these owners. You go, "Okay, 10 years, kick it down the can." I remember, what, 15 years ago, when it was 55 years at Bear Automotive, and they were doing alignments for $55, because it was their 55th year in business. That was 15 years ago. That 10 years is a blink. It goes, and we're right back to wherever this may be in 10 years. It's going to happen quick. And it's not going to stop with automotive. It's going to keep going. They're going to kick the can all the way down. And I may not be the brightest guy in the room by a long shot, but that's just my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Woody.
I'll get there. Give me time. My name is Woodrow Harple. I'm with 63 West Grand Boulevard, Calvert Real Properties. And I'm the property owner of 1212 and 1210 East Sixth Street. We've got seven good mechanics there. They're all friends of mine now, because I take my cars there and I refer my friends to them. So I want you to think hard about this before we get rid of the hard-working mechanics in town, because they serve a purpose. And you're welcome to come to our office and talk to me. I won't stagger around too much. Okay? Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you, Woody.
Good evening, Bobby Spiegel, Corona Chamber. First, I want to say thank you to you, council, for not shortening the time for each of the speakers. We had a lot of people that wanted to share tonight, and you gave them, all of them, the three minutes. Some went a little over. Some went less. Secondly, I think that we need to bring back to what my replacement of Tim Gramlin has offered. We're here to help. The chamber has always been a partner in wanting to help. Third, I want to go back to about four years ago or five years ago, when some of you were new to the council, and you would talk to me and say, "Why do you come at the very end when there's a problem? Why didn't you come at the very beginning?" So I just want to say thank you for bringing this tonight. Because this is the beginning, obviously, because none of you knew this on Wednesday or Thursday, until Thursday night, when you saw the agenda. And I just want to extend the challenge to you. Maybe this is all about communication. Had this been just worded differently on the agenda, all of these people, they're going to be getting up in another six hours to go to work to provide income for their employees to do the things that need to be done, they would have been in bed already. So we're here to help. I'm going to say, thank God it's my last council meeting that I need to do this with, but Mr. Gramlin will be here on a regular basis. And please take him up on his offer to help coordinate and do whatever we can. There is a solution out there. And I believe someone was incorrect with saying that you're the longest citizen here. I believe Jackie was, because she was born and raised here. And if not, we'll go on percentages.
I'm just a little older, that's all. That's the only reason. She was born here, but...
Thank you. Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate you.
All right. Seeing no more speakers, let's go to my colleagues.
We do have somebody on Zoom for this item. And I also want to note for the record that we did receive written comments. I'll send those to the full council tomorrow, and they will be part of the meeting record.
All right, thank you. Let's hear from the Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, yes. This is Randy Fox. It's good to see everybody. I haven't seen many of you in seven years, I think. But everyone's aging very well. And congratulations to Bobby on his retirement, and it was good to meet Dr. Gramling. I wasn't able to stay till the end here. Just from my standpoint, I am an Orange County transplant and live in South Corona. I was treasurer and city councilman years ago. When I first moved to Corona, and even when I was thinking of connecting with the city like I did to run for office, it was the automotive history and industry that kind of, that's what gelled with me. And, you know, the first parade I was in, I was standing on a rumble seat of a Model A, and that's the kind of, I made the connection, and then getting into the Cars and Coffee, and Steve Saleen, and the Tom Day family, and all that. In other words, this, to me, from my perspective, it's cherishing our past. You know, to just deal with the automotive industry like this, like it's dispensable. It's, to me, citrus and automotive is what Corona's about. And I think trying to, instead of just get rid of it, cherish it. I mean, turn Sixth Street into Radiator Springs or something. I mean, just really, you have a good emphasis here already, a good history. And, you know, compare it to Old Town Orange, which I was involved with when they evolved from a very crummy neighborhood to being the jewel of the city. And it was a very organic, you know, thing that took place. It was a growth that, you know, it wasn't just amortizing, just putting to death, you know, the businesses. It happened on its own, and the people really rallied and did it themselves. So I don't know. I just, you got a good thing going here with your automotive past. And these guys, I think, who are really the living legacy of that in their various fields, the young-sung heroes, they should be honored and certainly listened to and valued. Yeah, it can be cleaned up. It can be cherished. You can maybe combine, you know, lubin' latte or something. I don't know. But you can, but it's just really, don't give that up. And I know several of you really do care about the history and the road race and all that. And you're having the event, which is great, that's coming up in March. So just wanted to say that. I really appreciate these guys continuing on with that automotive emphasis. And Sixth Street is really important to everybody, for those of us that have also fuel cars. So it's my two cents.
Thank you, Randy.
Good to see everyone. Take care.
Thank you. That's it, right, Sylvia?
Yes.
Okay. Now I want to bring it back to my colleagues for comments and questions. Tony, start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. So many comments. Really appreciate everybody coming out. I've had an opportunity to speak with a few of you guys. And, you know, all of the folks that came out in support of their businesses, I'm having a little bit of a flashback. Forty-some-odd years ago, my parents owned their own business, and they contracted out with a guy by the name of John at Golden West Tire, who's still in business in Fullerton. It drives me crazy, because every time my mom goes over there, "Well, whatever John says, I'm going to do." Harvey, you've got that type of clientele, so I applaud you. Sounds like all of you guys do. That's a great thing to have. And I don't want anyone to think that we were targeting automotive folks. Y'all just happen to be the biggest group of businesses on Sixth Street. No, because I wouldn't say target, because the massage parlors aren't here. Neither are the hoteliers. I think it's, you know. So I don't want anyone to think that it was targeted. And I want to clear a few things up. You know, we have, I don't know if it's over yet, but we had a grant program for people to do facade improvements that some of the building owners took advantage of, not so much the business owners, because they didn't own the building. So we had grant programs for that, for facade improvements. A lot of folks mentioned other communities, one in particular, City of Orange. They pushed out antique stores, and they continue to push out antique stores. That's what made the Orange Circle the viable community that it is. But I agree on a couple of things. One, this council is doing quite a bit. We, I think Ms. Paxton talked about it. We've got the McKinley Grade separation. We've got the North Mall. We've got the South Mall. We've got downtown revitalization happening. All of this is actually happening. It's not just talk at this point. It's actually happening. And so I agree. We should really focus on getting those done right. And I think when those are done, or far enough along, I think the revitalization is just a natural next step. And part of that is planning for that. So this was an ask to start looking and thinking about planning those next steps. Because what you don't want to have happen is you don't want to get there and then not know what the next steps are. You know, I would imagine that some of the business owners here built the business and then didn't just say, "Well, what do we do next?" You know, add another lift, or add three more lifts, or something along those lines. They were thinking about that as the next second and third step. So that's what we're doing, is we're thinking about what are the next steps when what we believe happens, happens. And, you know, there was some, there was some talk about, you know, finish one thing first. And I liked that idea. There was also an idea that was thrown out tonight that I didn't think about, but I also really like, which was leaning into our automotive history. And I think that that idea has a lot of merit. A lot of the folks that came up and talked tonight also talked a lot about some of the uses that are going on in the downtown currently that they didn't like, like a methadone clinic right by our library. And this council posed that question to our city manager. What are some of the tools that we can look at to prevent things like a methadone clinic right by our library where our children and a lot of the vulnerable members of our community utilize as a safe haven? Well, this is one of those types of tools, right? So we have to consider a lot of different things. I will also agree that this came as kind of a surprise to a lot of folks, and we needed to do a better job of communicating what's going on. And so I also like one of the things in the conversation that I have with Harvey, that I had with Harvey, that came out of that conversation, which is, you know, if you guys are revitalizing and you guys are doing everything that happens, I hope that somebody comes and offers me stupid money for my building, and I can go retire on a beach somewhere, or whatever the dream is. I hope that that happens. I hope that that happens for all of you guys, that you guys are posed with a question that somebody has offered me stupid money to leave. I hope that happens for all of you. And I hope that you guys do what's right for you. But I hope that you guys have the option. So I think where I'm landing on this is, these are all tools. And I want to know about all of the tools that are available to help move along the revitalization of our downtown. But I think the first thing that needs to happen is we need to start to build that momentum in the downtown so that folks are seeing what's going on. And we need to know about the tools that are available to us. So I'm not opposed to the idea of learning about tools. And that's all that this is, was just the idea of learning about tools. And so I think that we should do that once we're a little bit farther along with our downtown, and so people can see it. I see it. And I think my colleagues see it as well. And sometimes some of you folks don't see it. And that's okay. But we had one of the residents come up and start rattling off all the things that are happening right now. And it's not just talk. It's things that are happening right now. So that's not coming from us. That's coming from someone out there, right? And I think that it's true. Those things are happening. We're not just talking about it anymore. So we got to do a better job of communicating with some of the folks in our downtown revitalizing area. I value all of the folks that are here, because small businesses are the backbone of any community. So I don't want you to think that you're not valued. I personally value, and I believe all my colleagues do as well. I'm not going to lie. There's some uses in our downtown that are going to be a problem for a true revitalization. I don't think automotive is one of those uses. I think that some of the uses that were listed in this presentation are going to be a hindrance for a completely revitalized downtown. So I appreciate everything that you guys do, and I'm looking forward to learning about more of the tools, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you guys. And thank you for bringing some of the ideas that I didn't think about. And I really like the one about leaning into our automotive history. So I think that there's a way that we can learn about our tools, work with our businesses that are here, communicate with them. There were some great ideas that came out of it, and that wouldn't have happened if we didn't have a conversation. So thank you, guys, for coming out. It's a little bit after 11 o'clock, so thanks for hanging out with us later than any of us wanted to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be quick. What I said earlier is, I'm going to just keep it short and sweet. I don't think any of you should be run out. And amortization for the businesses that you all operate in the city have long brought, I think I've used every single one of your businesses over the years. I've lived here since 1980. My parents drug me kicking and screaming here. I walked Sixth Street. I've been all over the place in that area, and I'm not afraid of Sixth Street in any way. I do think that there are, and Harvey and I had a discussion on Friday, there are some things that could look better. And I'm fully open to have that conversation with every single one of you and to finding ways that we can coexist. I love the bear sign. I think it's absolutely incredible, and you guys invested in that out of nothing other than you took pride in the way it looked. You could have replaced it with some, you know, plastic piece of crap, and you didn't. You put something back that meant something to you and to this community, so I appreciate that. I think from a policy standpoint, I think we need to step back. There are 36 uses on this list of things that are now non-conforming. And I think we should go back and look at some of them and say, "Yeah, I agree with you, Tony." I think there's some like, you know, "I don't want to see massage parlors down on Sixth Street." And nor do I want to see a motel that gets, you know, the PD is at five times a week. I think there's a deeper conversation that needs to happen. I think that we have some current, you know, rules right now with non-conforming businesses. If we have a business that closed down, they get six months to reopen. And basically, that's a property owner that's selling to somebody else or renting that space to somebody else so they can give it a go. Right now, we give them six months. I think that number should be a lot less. I think we should give a little bit of a short release to folks that have been here a really long time and are very successful and do great work. Fantastic. You should stay there. We should work with you. I think we should find a way to fund our facade program again, so we can get folks some money. I mean, the city did this before. They did amortization for signs. They gave $1,000 for folks to change their signs out. And if they didn't do it in five years, the city came and took them out. I'm not advocating for that at all. I think there's an opportunity for us to find, and I think that Dr. Gramling said it perfectly, there's an opportunity for us all to sit down and talk about what are the goals? The goals aren't to push you out, because we don't think, you know, as Jim said, we don't think you're valuable. I've used all your businesses. Hell, I grew up across the street from Raj's. I worked across the street at U-Haul, and he would come over and give me a hard time about the propane prices. And I went over and got snacks, and, you know, like I said, I spent plenty of time on Sixth Street. So I think there's an opportunity for us to take a step back, see what we can do, how we can work with the businesses to, you know, us do revitalization together and find a way to, you know, take your investments that you guys have done in the city of Corona and really double down on going forward with something that meets all of our requirements. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me. I...
Excuse me, I, I align with Tony, Councilmember DeDario. I, I, I really feel the citizens of Corona deserve a revitalized downtown. I think it's been a long request of all of Corona's citizens that they want to revitalize downtown. I think you know it, and I think they know it, and I think we know it. I, I think in order to go forward, you have to have vision. As business owners, many of you are, as business owners, you don't succeed unless you have vision. You don't go forward unless you have vision. I, I really feel that's what needs to be done with the downtown. I do think amortization is a tool, I just don't think it's the tool that we need right now. This is where Tony and I agree, I think we need to prove our colors. I need, I think we need to start building the North Mall. I think we need to show the citizens of Corona that we mean business and we deliver a good product. I think we, we, we get momentum, if successful, from the North Mall, from the, from the street improvements, from the, the South Mall, the hub. I, I think we're on our way. I do believe that we've done more as a council, as a city than in the past. I also believe, as one who studies Corona's history, the downtown has always been changing. It, it, there's, the, the one thing that's consistent with the downtown is it's never not been changing. Sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse. Mr. Fuller, whoever thought it was a good idea to put a crooked curb in Main Street should probably be shot, but they're probably not here anymore anyways. A freeway over, a, a bridge over the freeway instead of under the freeway at, at Main was wrong. There, there's been many missteps. Putting the 91 freeway through a circle was, was a misstep. There, there's been many things that have gone wrong. And I think there's many people and many citizens that want to make it go right going forward. So I think vision is important. I think success and, and success creating success is important. With what Wes said, there's, there's some places that just don't fit in the downtown. I'm not convinced the automotive doesn't fit in the downtown. I would, I would probably want to see more options. I think, I was talking to, Harvey pretty much told everybody that he talked to all of us, right? I, Harvey and I talked about the Firestone Tire Shop on Main and how cool it looks. It looks very iconic, it looks beautiful, to be honest with you. Maybe, maybe that's a pathway forward for automotive industries is to revitalize themselves. But that would have to be studied out at a future, future time and date. So, that's where I'm at. I'd, not to use the cliche, but I'd like to kick the can down the road for the time being.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking you all so much for being here. I know you heard me say it earlier, but this is, this is democracy and I appreciate you participating in it. It's late, I know it's late, I, you know, I'm, I'm used to not getting sleep, I have a 19-month-old, but, but it's late. And I know we all want to get home, but thank you. Thank you for being part of the discussion and thank you for sharing your thoughts. Bobby, I think you're right. I think that we, we've probably gotten here through some miscommunication and misunderstanding. I, I also think it's important to mention that this is the space that the council has to explore ideas. The people's business must be done here in these public meetings. And so, you get to hear these presentations when we get to hear these presentations and you get to see and ask questions as we get to hear and ask questions. Someone said, you know, I understand that this is part of the process, exploring all the options are necessary. And I completely agree. We have asked for tools to address the sticky, tough issues that we are being asked by our, by residents to address. You've heard me mention the methadone clinic, but there's also the massage parlors. There's, you know, some motels in the downtown and so, but I, but I understand how, how this landed and I really want to apologize for that feeling. Someone mentioned the mental health toll that this takes and I, and I don't want to discount that. It does, it, I mean, listen, it, there's no, we are impact, this is our community. We are building and moving forward and there's nothing that is done that is not, we're living, we're choosing to live here together. These things have impact and so I want to apologize for the negative impacts that this has made on your mental health and on your, the stresses that it has caused. It was not intentional. And I know that that sometimes maybe doesn't feel genuine, but like, I, we are your neighbors. It's not, you know, I'm, I'm raising my family here too. I'm born and raised in the circle, like, I can't stress enough how much, like, I see you as my neighbor. So, it doesn't land flat. Anyhow, I just wanted to, to share that because sometimes people think that like, that, that it isn't the case that these things are happening before us and that we're asking these questions. But I do want to share that we have stressed on staff that we, we want to know what's out there. We, we want to know what's possible. It, it has been 40 years of oblided downtown and, and like someone else said, you know, this council's determined to be the council that doesn't kick that can down the road. And, and, and not the can you're referring to, but the can of, of, you know, addressing, you know, the stagnation. You know, we need to reinvest in our community. And so, anyway, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I know that my share, my colleagues have shared that and I, I feel comfortable saying that that's where the intention lies. You know, I wanted to get into a list of the misconceptions, but to be honest, it's, it's neither here nor there. That's part of the, that's part of the, that's part of the business, it's part of what this is, right? And so, we, you know, I choose, the way I choose to conduct this business and the way I choose to, to, to address you all, it's, you know, it's, 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 like I said, it's personal. And I understand that sometimes there's just, there's frustration and it kind of, it just, it comes one way. And I signed up for that and that's all right. But, you know, the misconceptions sometimes are, are quite a bit. But anyhow, I, I agree with what my colleagues have said, which is, you know, there are, exploring tools are necessary. There are businesses in the downtown that are probably not consistent with the vision that we as a community have been clamoring for. And so, we need to know these tools. Now, it does, is that encompassing of the automotive industry? Maybe it, maybe it isn't. Maybe there's a pathway to, you know, again, beautification, to meeting, meeting the standards so that we can all work through this together. And I'm open to these conversations with the chamber, I'm open to these conversations with the group to build a downtown that we can all be proud of. And I don't mean this in a condescending way, I, I mean it genuinely, that these are tough conversations and we're having them in an open space and that just cranks up the temperature. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm being open and honest with you when I say that I, that, you know, I, I come to these conversations wanting to find solutions. And you have my commitment, you know, to continue to battle, you know, Corona's challenges, but not battle the residents. That's not where I want to be. And I want us to stay focused on the goal. And the goal is to deliver a downtown, a thriving downtown that we can all be proud of. So, I'm in, I'm in agreement with my colleagues. I don't think that this is the tool for right now. I do want to see some more successes in the downtown before we pick this topic back up. So, I'm in agreement there. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Councilmember DeDario, you had one more comment?
Yeah, you know, I, I have to disagree a little bit with Tom. I actually don't want to kick the can down the road. I want to, this isn't the right, this isn't the right tool. We need to explore more tools because we need to have our next two, three, we need to start thinking about our next two to three steps. Because we're gonna get to, damn it, we're gonna get to the revitalized downtown and I don't want to be sitting there going, well, what's next? Right, I, I don't, I don't want to be there because that's a lack of vision. So, let's start vision planning second, third steps. And I don't want to kick that can down the road. Maybe I didn't say that clearly or in that way, but I want to be very specific.
So you want to go forward with amortization?
No, 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 that's not what I said. I, what I said was, I want to not kick the can down the road. I want to understand what our options are. This isn't the right option. Let's continue the conversation. We've got very, we've got very invested residents here that obviously, that y'all said it in a public meeting, you want to be part of the process. So, when we put things out there, be a part of the process.
I think Tony, that's, this is called the speak plan, is what we're calling it.
Well, no, 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 I'm just, I'm just, they, they, they sign, they're signing up for it right now. They're signing up to be part of the process. So when we put it out there and, and it's out there, if you're not part of the process, then y'all are, are to blame at this point forward, moving forward, you signed up for it. So, let's, let's, let's engage, let's start talking and thinking about, you know, the second and third steps. Because we're gonna get to revitalization, it's gonna be a beautiful downtown in a small nucleus and it's gonna have to spread. And there will be, there will be private investment that, that comes in and does that. But, these folks need to know what, what their next steps are gonna be and they need to be part of that process. So, welcome to now being a part of the process. Y'all signed up for it.
But I, I'm, did you say then that you want staff to develop amortization process or not?
No, 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 there are multiple tools.
Correct.
We talk about a tool bag.
I'm just trying to say, I just want to, because ultimately, staff's gonna say, where do you all want to go with this? And we need to have at least some clear direction.
Amortization, whatever, I can't even say the word at this point, is not the right tool right now. So what other tools are there? It could, what, we, we talked about, we don't want, I talked about, I don't want massage parlors, I don't want methadone clinics. I bet you some of these folks don't want those things either. Have the conversation with them, let's talk about what other uses are out there. Maybe amortization is appropriate for certain things.
So if I understand you correctly, you would like the economic department, city managers, possibly Chamber of Commerce to meet with the automotive industry and discuss it out, right?
No, I didn't say automotive industry, I said the downtown businesses. It's not just automotive, they happen to be a big section of it.
Okay, I'll amend my comments. You want all of the businesses currently in the downtown to meet with city managers, economic department and possible Chamber of Commerce?
We have to start talking, we have to start thinking about the next steps. We have to, right? Whether that's an ad hoc or whatever. That, I'm, I'm telling them they need to do something, they need to bring ideas back to us. They brought an idea, thank you. There's more ideas, figure it out. Come back to us, include the people and let's, let's do it together. Because we're gonna get there in two or three years, it's gonna be really far down the road and we don't want to be sitting here going, well, what's next? We don't. We need to start thinking about it and talking about it now. And it's gonna be scary because sometimes we come up with dumb ideas. But you have to come up with all of the ideas and have to have the conversation. Let's do it. Nothing wrong with that.
All right, thank you. All right, well, I will say that I know, know more about amortization tonight than I did six days ago. I am curious, you know, what are the different levels of amortization? Can mom and pops be excluded? Can businesses that are gonna pass their business down onto family members be excluded? What does the data show? What does our community think, residents and business community? I want to, I'd like to know all that, but I don't think this is the right time. I think we're, we're drowning right now, I feel like, in so many things going on, nine different project areas that are major. And I do want to see us complete some of these things. So yeah, we've all said it, so we can say, yeah, okay, we, we did it. You know, the, the thing that would be horrible would be if there's another recession or a pandemic and, and we've gone down this amortization, you know, that direction. And the next thing you know, something like that hits and you have boarded up businesses all along Sixth Street because of that decision that you made. So, I very much believe that let's, let's finish some things, let's get an idea if we're even gonna be successful with downtown. We don't even know that for sure because things could happen. But, but let's see, I, I hope so, I pray we will, but let's wait and see. So while I still want answers to those questions that I asked about amortization, I think those questions can be answered sometime down the road, once we see something going on with our downtown. And I did tell Harvey, we, we had a very respectful back and forth. There was, there was nothing bad about our conversation. And I did mention, I go, you know, Harvey, what I'm hearing from the residents, because I hear, that's, that's like the number one thing I hear. Corona or downtown is a shithole, clean it up, I can't even let my family go down there, blah, 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 that's what I hear. So I said that to Harvey, I did, I own that. And I didn't mean to say every business on Sixth Street's a shithole, I meant, say overall, it looks like crap. And I believe that, I do believe that. But, that kind of takes me to a couple other questions that I put together a couple days ago. Just, I think our code enforcement does a really good job in enforcing the codes and correcting violations throughout our city. But I didn't know, can we modify some of those codes that could potentially help minimize some of the clutter that you see at some of the businesses? Or minimize the crime that are occurring at some of the businesses? Is there things we can do? I don't know that answer, that's what I would pose to staff. Is there things we can tighten up? Can we also have direct communication from staff with some of these businesses that will help give property owners some ideas on how they could improve their curb appeal? That seems like that could, that could be a healthy discussion. Maybe, maybe there's things they haven't thought of and we say, what if you just did that? Then that might take away the people saying all this stuff, you know? So, I, I do, I want to come up for air, I want to hold off for a while and just see how things develop. There'll be new council members up here, but, so I, and I, I feel like, from the general consensus is we want to hold off on the amortization, but there, there will likely be at some point where we're gonna want to have answers to some of these questions as we've become successful and start, yeah, like you said, kind of start working our way out. So, is that, does that sound right? Yeah?
I think Tony and I are, are thinking about, that I, there's nothing wrong with, with starting a conversation about how to, how to make things look better. And that's not starting down the amortization road.
I know, but there's so much going on right now, let's just timeout.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that, I think it's up to staff to tell us if they have time to do that. And if they, if they don't, if we were gonna proceed down this amortization route, I seem like that would be pretty complicated too. But I'm okay with pausing right now depending on what's, what staff's got on his plate.
Well, I, I mean, this is a majority thing, right? So, I, I, I think that if staff, I agree, if staff brought this to us and then they've got the time to start thinking about what, what do next steps look like? We're not asking them to go out and plan.
Next steps are, let's get some of these new businesses open first.
I, I don't disagree, but we have a whole bunch of people here that want to be a part of the conversation and I want to strike while the iron's hot.
I love that too, that's fantastic.
And I, I just think that at some point, we're gonna have to start thinking about phase two, phase three, phase four. And it involves these folks. So, if, if we could give staff direction to start thinking about how they want to go about that process.
Mayor, if it would be helpful, any motion that the council would like to entertain to give us direction, we're happy to, to take whatever that direction is.
Well.
It might come in the form of a motion so that we make sure that we got that clearly, we want to.
Then I'll, I'll make the first motion, it probably won't be the last. But, I make the motion that we table this for now so we can, so we can prove to the community and ourselves that we can develop a nice north and south mall and postpone this discussion until after we have been able to do that. And, and, and if it's talked about again, these are the type of questions that I would have and I'd want answered. There's a ton of questions, what would, there's so many, so many. But right now, my motion is, we take, we take a chill pill and work on our downtown and we can address this down the road. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
I, I have a question.
Is there, is there a third?
There's an alternate motion.
Yeah.
Tony, you'd said about continuing the conversation and like you had mentioned like an ad hoc and formalizing. Is, is that something that you want to propose?
Yeah, I, I think that, in trying to think about it in, in the way that it makes the most sense, I would like to empower staff to roadmap what a workflow looks like, right? So, we have to start planning. Does that planning include, like, what is the outreach, like, thinking about what does the outreach look like? What are, what are the areas that we want to focus on? Do we want to go one block at a time? Just start thinking about what the next steps are gonna have to be so that they can understand their workflow moving forward, right? They could research tools, they could come back to us and say, in a year and a half and say, you know what? Phase, phase one is underway, phase two looks, could look like this, phase three could look like that. Phase three could look like that. Because I, I just don't want to be caught with our pants down when we're so far along that we're like, okay, now we've got to start thinking about what's next.
I, I just, I don't understand, like, I guess I'm not very clear about what that looks like, so.
Here's, I may, may help out a little bit. I think one of the reasons this, this popped up is that, you know, we have people that are interested in downtown. You know, we're, they're seeing what we're doing. We're, we're making strides. We're getting people and there, there's, there's interest in properties. And people look and go, well, yeah, I'd really like to be there, but I don't want to be next to something that looks like crap or something that's not maintained or, you know, whatever. So I, I, I think Tony's idea, and I think is where we are going, is if we, you know, did an, an ad hoc meeting with the chamber and a representative, you know, any businesses that wanted to contribute and then we came up with some, some ideas that we could bring back here over a period of time, not anything right away, could take time. Because again, as you, Jim's pointed out, we're not in a condition to, to pursue anything major, any of the ask or the, the ask, the idea was for us to see if there was an opportunity for us to proceed in looking at where this could go. Because I, I looked at like national cities, the way that they did amortization and they did a whole ranking of businesses and, and tax revenue to, you know, how much, you know, public services they absorbed, how many police calls came. I mean, there was a bunch of things that went into it. I'm not talking about going that far. I'm just saying.
Wes, Wes, what if we did, what if, what if we try to bridge these? What if the idea is a six-month pause, which gives us an opportunity to have more businesses go into the hub and the process for the north mall entitlement keep moving down the line?
I'm fine with that.
And when we pick it back up, we pick it back up in the form of an ad hoc and with the chamber and the businesses on Sixth Street and we start those conversations. So it's, again, it's not picking back up the discussion on amortization per se. It's picking up the conversation about, okay, we're all going to be part of this. How do we make Sixth Street better?
Yeah.
And so what are the tools before us? And then that working group can start setting, you know, benchmarks. But I think in six months, we'll be in a better spot with the hub and we'll see where things are moving with the entitlement process in the north mall.
Land the plane, Jackie. Land the plane.
That's my, that's my motion.
I'm good.
I second it.
So you already have a motion on the table.
So I will drop my motion. But I don't think six months is, I think that's too soon. I don't think, we might not even have one more business open in six months.
But I, I mean, it's six months to start the conversation, right? Six months to get this, the ad hoc going.
All right, let's hear your, let's hear your motion.
That was it? Don't make me say it again.
Say it one more time.
A minute motion is to, to pause for six months and then form an ad hoc that includes the chamber and our downtown businesses to talk about forming a, you know, working group on, on how we go forward with improving the look and the feel of Sixth Street, embracing our past. How's that?
And exploring the options.
I second it. I don't know who made the motion. It was a combination of, of the two, but I second it and I, I would volunteer for that ad hoc any day of the week.
Do you have your direction?
Vote on it.
So if everyone wants to vote on, just be clear.
Sylvia?
Yes, I'm going to need voice votes for this item.
Okay.
Councilmember Dario?
Yes.
Councilmember speak.
Aye.
Councilmember Richens?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casillas?
Yes.
Mayor Steiner?
Yes.
And the item passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's see where we're at. Bring your jammies? All right. Reports from boards and commission. We have our library board of trustees. Receive and follow the library board of trustees report update for October 28, 2025. There's nothing from planning the housing commission, nothing from parks and rec commission, regional updates. We got update from Vice Mayor Jackie Casillas on the Western Riverside Council of Governments' General Assembly Meeting on November 3rd.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I, I want to make sure that the record shows that this was not a general assembly meeting. This was a regular WR cog monthly, monthly meeting. And I just want to share that what was shared at the, the meeting is that we, the executive director.
Nice.
We have our deputy executive director taking over business right now. He's, he's running the WR cog agency. And so any questions about the agency should go to Chris Gray. And we are coming up on the end of the year, we'll be having discussions. We normally would have a discussion about the strategic plan in January and the committee has chosen to put that off for a later date. And so there's just some conversations happening with the cog about future direction and more to come when I can share more. And the next one's mine as well. So on the November 10th, we had our last, I had the last League of California Cities Riverside County Division meeting as president and it was really great to, to wrap up the year and shed one title. But it was, it was really a very quick year. I shared with the full group my top five proudest moments from this past year as president and I want to share them with you all real quickly. First, for, the first two are really the same thing. We, we had a collaborative meeting. My number one was we had a collaborative meeting with the Inland Empire and Mountain Division to discuss the importance of Prop 36. And there was a, these are joint meetings, you get all the electeds from one county and then all the electeds from the other. And it was really an incredible, incredible to see and it took a lot of, a lot of collaboration and a lot of operations to get it done. Number two is we had a very similar meeting. We had a joint meeting with Imperial Division and we talked about the importance of environmental issues around the Salton Sea. This meeting was, had a legislative update from Assembly Member Jeff Gonzalez. And so my top two out of five was the fact that we were able to get our entire group together with their entire group and there was some cross pollination there of ideas and successes. Number three is that we had a very successful lobbying day in Sacramento where we had over 15 leaders from Riverside County Division join in the halls of Sacramento to lobby for local control. My number four was that we added two meetings. We had in-person city manager meetings as well as an in-person city clerk workshop and that was a first ever. And the last thing that I'm most proud of is that our division is ending the year with a surplus and that's something that we never had before. And that is allowing us to put together more thoughtful meetings and ideally have, you know, more resources for our local electeds and our local cities as they get together for these convenings. So it was a, a fast year, a very big year and I was very, I'm just, I was honored to lead the division. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, councilmember speak. You got a SCAG update?
Nope. I will be, I'll send you guys an, I'll file with the clerk for both.
What about RCTC?
Both.
Thank you. All right, city attorneys, reports and comments, Mr. Durleth. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, just two quick comments. Despite the lane, the rain last Saturday, we had a really good bulk trash, e-waste and paper shredding event with almost 600 cars that came through our parking lot. In total, we collected nearly 30 tons of waste. So I just wanted to thank and give a shout out to our utilities team, waste management for just a great job keeping the traffic moving and a great event overall. And lastly, I just want to take a moment to welcome a new team member, Colby Cataldi, who is our new planning and development director. Colby brings a wealth of experience to the role. We look forward to Colby's leadership for the, in the month and years ahead on our team. So wanted to welcome him.
Thank you very much. Any of my colleagues have any comments?
I'll postpone until the next meeting.
All right. Just two things. One, I want to say, you know, keep former Mayor Haley in your, in your thoughts. He's, he's not, not, not feeling very well and, and so just if you have a couple extra moments and you feel so inclined, you know, maybe say a little prayer for him. And then second, I got another 19 minutes to wish my wife a happy anniversary. She got married three years ago and I want to thank the mayor and the vice mayor for marrying us three years ago. And she's a saint of a woman because she's not mad that I'm here. So, thanks.
Just one, Mayor. Last week, we had the, the veterans memorial dedication and it was hugely successful. Staff knocked this project out of the park. It, it's so many veterans showed up, so many people were happy. If you haven't had the opportunity to go by it, please do. Please pay your respects because it's a place of solemn reflection and it's just a very beautiful memorial. Thank you.
Jackie, did you have anything?
I just, I wanted to acknowledge the vet memorial too. That was really wonderful. It was very special and that was the culmination of a great team. Our, our, our in-house team, Tracy in particular, picking that up after our assistant city manager abandoned us. Just joking. He moved on to become city manager. This is a, it was, it was just a really thoughtful project and just another thing that I'm very proud that has been accomplished.
Thank you. Yeah, I got great feedback on both the shredding bulk pickup slash e-waste event and the veterans, veterans memorial. I just wanted to remind everybody, our state of the city is tomorrow night. So if you haven't got enough of me tonight, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Civic Center in the theater, please, please come. And we have one last item, future agenda items. Remember, we moved these forward to put staff to work only if a majority of the council wants to do it. The item tonight, we have a new agenda item that's being requested by a member of a council for us to consider adding it to the agenda. That agenda item is an online resource for for-profit leagues to reserve fields. And councilmember Dario, we please introduce your request for consideration.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. You know, we, the, the staff has done a great job of working with our, our everyone plays leagues and, you know, working on getting allocation. But it has occurred to me that after all of the, the, the everyone plays, which is the highest priority, teams have all of their allocations, there will be random availability. And, you know, every single one of these for-profit leagues says, oh, we'll pay, we'll pay, we'll pay. Well, let's look at a way for them to go online, see that there's something open and make a reservation. And I really, and everybody said the same thing, well, they're just going to do that and then they're going to go play. Well, we've got Rangers, right? So let's, let's come up with a way that we can charge them for it and then enforce it if they're, if somebody is trying to take the field for free. Because it, it's a great way for us to help subsidize our field programs. If they want to pay for it and there's a random Thursday at 9 o'clock that's open, let's let them pay for it. I, I think that there's a way that staff could figure out a system that can be used within our system. I've already confirmed that. And let's see if we can make this work to help subsidize our field allocations and our field uses.
Thoughts?
I, I think you, you called it. I think that the issue is, is then the Rangers are going to be running around checking to see which ones, and we don't have that many. So they would just be running around checking fields. And as somebody who spent 21 years next to Santana Park, people did what the hell, whatever the hell they wanted. I mean, there was a gate, they'd be put fences up, they would break the fences down and go play. And, and, and so I'm, I, I do see the, the idea behind it, but I do worry about it being used nefariously, especially when we can't be at all 44 parks or 43 parks. 44, 43?
34.
I don't know. There's a lot of them. More, more than Rangers. So I, I'm.
You're, you're interested in learning more? Is that what you said or no?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, I.
Alma, you interested in learning more?
Sure.
I'm skeptical on it. I, I'm not a fan of for-profit leagues, none the least. I've watched them get kicked out of Corona Parks and I watched them come back the very next week and I, I'm just not a fan of them, but I'll entertain the idea. But I hope staff doesn't spend a lot of time on it.